You strap yourself. Good morning, everybody. Glad that you're with us. We're going to call this meeting to order. This is a regular City Commission meeting of March 3rd, 2022. And Madam Clerk, our first order of business, please.
Our first order of business is an invocation by Prophet Young.
Prophet Young, we are so thankful and grateful to have you back with us here in the chambers to offer this invocation. It seems like it's been forever because it has. So, welcome back, and we're just so thrilled.
Mr. Mayor, it's an honor to be here, to be in your presence, and each of you, and to the newly elected commissioners. Just not. Before I do the invocation, with your consent, Mr. Mayor, in light of what is taking place, as we all know throughout the world itself, in behalf of Ukraine, I would like to have a moment of silence, if okay, in behalf of what is taking place there.
Appreciate that. Take a moment of silence in memory of those that are struggling in Ukraine.
And most holy God, we thank you, even as I stand here in behalf of the city, to stand before the mayor, the commissioners, and even all that's in authority. Most holy God, I thank you. From the greatest to the least, I thank you for my lot, even here in this city, to stand as one of your servants and to offer this invocation. In all due respect, Holy Father, I thank you for every given opportunity and for the work that is being done. I pray for each of these that holds the hands of the mayor and the moving forward of this city and surrounding area for the benefit of all mankind and this city and at large. Father, I pray that your mercies, your grace, and the unity of your spirit rest upon each of them as they go about the affairs and their concerns of this great city. Be thy glorified, and I will be forever mindful to give your name the praise, the honor, and the glory. In these things, I thank you, and God bless each of you. God bless America.
Amen. Thank you, Prophet Young. Appreciate you being with us today. Hey, Madam Clerk. Okay, a motion to second that we adopt our agenda. No modifications today, which is always thankful for. Commissioner Duncan Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It did come to my attention that we had had some issues with the system and people being able to see the maps with regards to the discussion that we were having with transect zones. And I'm a little bit concerned about that because I've had several community members reaching out to me who wanted to be a part of that discussion and could not access the maps. Can someone tell me a little bit about that problem?
Yeah, I followed up with that, and they were working when I checked them. And I think Mr. Persons followed up with Ms. Tanzer as well. And there was some issue with, but I don't know. Do we have Mr. Persons on, Madam Manager? Yeah, he's probably watching, because he does. But I did follow up with that issue, and the problem, I think, was not from our end or any of our software. It was from the access point.
So, the problem, are you saying, would have been on their side? Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
But I think we were having IT follow up and make sure there weren't any issues or problems as well, and I didn't hear back. So, I think the manager is...
I'll follow up, Mr. Mayor. I wasn't aware.
Okay.
Thank you very much, because that would feed into my desire to possibly pull that item from today's discussion.
Yeah, so I followed up with her, and I did not hear back because I checked it myself, and it was working, so.
Okay, so can we just hold off here? All right, thank you very much.
Commissioner Santos.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I checked when that was happening as well, and it was working on my end. You just had to zoom in a little bit more to get it to work. And I wasn't at a computer.
Fine. Mr. Persons, if you are listening, because I saw his reply to Ms. Tanzer as well as mine.
He's getting on, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, I don't know if he'll need promoted or not. Okay. Do not adjust your screen. There is no technical difficulty. Hey, Mr. Persons, welcome.
Hey, thank you. Sorry.
Thanks for jumping on. Commissioner Duncan Walker had a question about the email we got from Ms. Tanzer with her concerns about accessing the maps, especially the land use and zoning layers. And I know that you responded to her as well and were checking on our end if there were any problems through IT or anything like that. So, are you able to speak to that issue?
Oh, sure, yeah. So, we did receive the email from Ms. Tanzer. We checked the map. My GIS analyst checked it. We checked it both inside and outside of the city's network. The issue was that the map, when it's initially brought up, doesn't automatically draw some of the more graphic intensive layers, like zoning or streets. You have to actually zoom closer into the city in order for those layers to become active. So, I think that was the issue, and as far as I know, it's been resolved. So, it was more of just an experience with the map type of issue. It wasn't anything technical.
Okay. Thank you, Andrew. Mr. Mayor, I do know that I've been contacted by a number of people who apparently had that issue. At this particular moment, I'm not sure whether it is standard protocol, but is it possible for us to hear from some of the individuals that were having that problem? Because I'm literally receiving texts right now with regards to that.
Well, I think at the time we take up the item, I mean, I think that's what's appropriate.
Okay, well, here's my concern, that if there are people who wanted to speak intelligently about the issue, and there was something that was precluding them from being able to do that in terms of being able to access our system, I don't particularly like that. So, I'm feeling like I'd just like to pull the item to err on the side of caution.
Okay, thanks. Well, we have a motion to adopt our agenda with that item, and I think because the issue was not with anything with the city or anything that we could have changed, and it's been resolved and that folks that were having problems should know now how to access it. They certainly can call in and let us know their concerns at that time, but to me, this is a second reading, and we should debate it on its merits and take public comment on it and then make a decision. I don't, to me, I don't know why this would preclude us from having a debate and discussion and deliberating on whether this is good policy or not.
Okay, so we have the motion on the floor to adopt?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Do we have any members of the public that wish to speak to any items? We have two consent items, so this would be your opportunity to speak to the consent items on our agenda. Nobody in chambers. Do we have Adam with us today?
We sure do, Mr. Mayor. We have two people on the line who are interested in speaking to the agenda, though not the consent agenda specifically. Shall we take them now?
Sure.
Okay. Kim Tanzer, excuse me. Kim Tanzer, you're the first in the queue. You have three minutes.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. I'm speaking about the issue you were just talking about, and I want to say that your answer and Mr. Person's answers were incorrect. At least three other people besides me tried to get onto the system, and were not able to do that. I am very, very familiar with the use of the software that the city has, and it didn't work on any of my home computers, including two operating systems and two different browsers. And I did write back to you, Mr. Poe, and explain that I had a different operating system. I never heard from the IT people. I wrote back to Mr. Persons and explained that it wasn't a problem of me not being zoomed in enough. The problem is somehow a glitch in your system. The land use and zoning maps do not work for the public, at least some members of the public. And as Commissioner Desmond Walker said, it is very difficult to prepare for this afternoon's meeting, and I've been trying to do it for a week without that information. So, I ask that you pull the item from the agenda, make sure the system is working, and then put it back on the agenda. It's not reasonable to ask your citizens to work from memory on something that is itself a very strange proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tanzer. Our next speaker, Tana Silva. Silva, you have three minutes.
Thank you. I would like to say that I am one of the people who also is quite familiar with using the interactive maps in the city. And 13 layers of the map were grayed out yesterday. I'm used to using them, and possibly it's something about people who have city issued computers or something are able to get into it. But the layers of land use and zoning and 11 others were grayed out. So, when you clicked on the little bubble, nothing happened. So, I would just like to say that, you know, I think Kim Tanzer has a point, and I think to have this on the agenda two weeks later after the first reading and apparently there's some misunderstanding about what the ordinance is about and the confusion of it being mixed with the street fellow properties, I think it would be best to just take it off the agenda for today, make sure that whatever's wrong with the city interactive maps, that citizens can't access it, this is fixed, and that everyone has a little more time to review the ordinance in greater detail. Thank you.
Thank you, Tana. It looks like we have one caller who just called in. Give me half a second.
Sure.
All righty, that new caller is here to talk about early public comments, so we'll hold him for a little bit, and the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. Back to the commission. Commissioner Chestnut.
Mr. Mayor, do we have anything pending that is...
Wait. Before you take a final vote on the agenda, Mr. Mayor, we do have one more caller when you're ready.
Go ahead. Sorry, Commissioner Chestnut.
Timing is just a little off today, sir. And the caller dropped.
Okay, Commissioner Chestnut, back to you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm just wondering, in order to make sure that we are providing access to everyone, if there is a problem in deferring this, if we have anything pending, that would be negatively impacted?
Well, yeah, I mean, this was heard through public hearing through the Plan Board and approved. It was approved by the commission two weeks ago. This is second reading. There was no issue with accessing or using the system at any point during that time and no system currently. So, I, you know, I don't know what overriding reason would be to delay this because, you know, it's... First thing I'd say is that this is a policy decision that is completely independent of what is on the map. This would be for any future changes. So, the map is the map is the map now. This is not changing anything on the map. It's about whether we simply delete the 10-acre minimum requirement. So, again, it's the will of the commission, but right now, the motion is to adopt the agenda. And we can certainly debate the item at the time that we bring it up for discussion. And that's, I think, the reasonable path forward. Commissioner Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. I look at those city maps probably every two days or every day on my home computer. It's an issue that's just, that's been like that. It's not something new where you have to zoom in a little bit to take it to turn on, and I just did it on here where, when you're out, those layers don't turn on, but when you zoom in, it turns on. And they do that so that they can work on people who have computers that are, or computers and internet connections that aren't as robust. So, it really is allowing more people to be able to access it by kind of not having it turn on, because it could grind it to a crawl on a computer that's less good. So, I don't see, I don't think the issue is going to change because it's just what the system is, and it's been like that for as long as I can remember. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Saka.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While I don't visit the site as often as Commissioner Santos, I am familiar with it. I did it at home on my computer. That's a PC. I'm doing it here on my iPad. It works the same way. The issue is you have to zoom in. That's not a new issue. That's always been the issue. And as you said, this is a second reading. I think that the actual time for debate would have been at that first reading, and folks came and spoke on it. And there's nothing substantive or, I guess, attached to this change in and of itself. So, I don't see a reason to delay it any further. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, we do have a motion to adopt our agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I've got at least one more caller again. Both callers dropped earlier, but if you can take them, I'd appreciate it.
Sure.
All righty, Nathan Scott, you've got three minutes.
Yes, good morning, Mayor Commissioner Nathan Scott. So, I want to echo the first two callers, I believe, all ones from Ms. Tanzer. Again, I think they're expressing valid concerns that are once again falling on deaf ears of the mayor of the Gainesville City Commission. You guys are very dismissive of members of the public, Commissioner Desmond Duncan Walker and Commissioner Chestnut, again, continually advocate to listen to your constituents. But the core of this commission, the same core of the commission that rubber stamped that draconian land use change that's going to be on the agenda today for ordinance approval that's going to be protested, you guys don't seem to listen. So, I don't understand what's so difficult about listening to people that call in, your constituents, that are asking for you to take a reasonable action. There's no real time rush in honoring their reasonable request, yet you refuse to do it. It's like a commission that doesn't listen, that continues to put its own self-serving proposals on the agenda like you do for your charter amendments. But when people call in, the people that fund your initiatives, the people that are forced to pay GRU rates, the people that are forced to pay your tax increases, you don't listen to them. Neighborhoods, Tyrant Heights, suburban heights, the folks that were opposed to the Royal Park, the people that filled your chamber that were opposed to your land use change, Commissioner Ward voted for, Mayor Poe, you voted for, Commissioner Santos, and Commissioner Saka, despite, once again, overwhelming public opposition. So, I don't understand why these items can't be deferred so we can have intelligent discussion, you know, not only on the rezoning, I mean, the redistricting, but on this rezoning issue. Because clearly, people are upset. There's a protest that's going to be had. They're going to fill the chamber at 1:00 and demonstrate how, once again, how angry they are that you don't listen to members of the public. And all you got to do is side with developers. Commissioner Ward, you need to own that vote because you're running for mayor. Because everyone I'm talking to, not very happy with you. So, I hope that this commission will start listening to people. That's all we want, is just listen and stop being so dismissive and disrespectful of members of the public because you treat the public with great disdain. And this has to be the most hated commission in the history of Gainesville, with exception to Commissioner Desmond Duncan Walker, Commissioner Chestnut. You guys need to emulate them and model their behavior because there's only two that's listening on that seven-member commission that needs to go back down to five. Thank you.
You, Mr. Scott. Mr. Mayor, that is our last caller on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Just a clarification, this is not a rezoning issue. There's nothing being rezoned here. It is a policy change to allow the transect zoning to conform with every other type of zoning we have, which takes away any minimum lot size in order to administer that rezoning. It's not, there's not anything being rezoned with this particular item. But back to the commission, all in favor of the motion to adopt our agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
That motion passes 6-1 with Commissioner Duncan Walker in dissent. All right, Madam Clerk, our next item. Okay, so this is one of a few opportunities we have for folks to speak to any items that are on the agenda. When doing so, this precludes your ability to speak on the items later on, but really, an opportunity to give your comments and then go on about your day, go on about your business. So, Adam, do you have anybody for early public comment at this time?
I do, Mr. Mayor. We have Armando Grendi Gomez. I believe he's speaking on GCRNA and the Birmingham project. I'm not sure what agenda items they are. Mr. Grendi Gomez, you have three minutes.
Hold on. Wait, before you start? Wait, before your clock starts? Can you give us, you want to speak to two items on our agenda? Is that correct?
Agenda, Mr. Mayor, and I think that, yeah, can you hear me?
I can, yeah. Which two items are you speaking on?
I said I wanted to speak to two items, but they have to be on your agenda for early public comment. Is that correct, Mr. Mayor?
That is correct.
That was my question.
Yeah, general public comment is at 1:00.
Okay, well, I don't want to violate protocol. I don't want to violate protocol, so if they're not on your agenda, then I will not violate protocol, but I do want to speak to an item. So, hold on.
Okay, well, we'll welcome you back at 1:00. Thank you, Mr. Grendi Gomez. Okay, do you have anybody else?
All right.
Go ahead, Adam.
No, we do not. Floor is yours.
Very good. Madam Clerk.
The next item is ED 1210163, redistricting the city's election districts based upon 2020 census data.
All right, Dr. McDonald, Dr. Smith, welcome back. Appreciate you being with us again this afternoon, and I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, so, thank you, Commissioners, Mayor. To refresh our memory, we have our map of our current districts, and we are looking for guidance from the commission on which of the options that we've presented to you to adopt and move forward, knowing that we are going to need to make some modifications and work with Supervisor of Elections Office. And we have had some contact with them about what we need to do in order to conform the district boundaries to the precinct boundaries, which are going to change because the state legislature has drawn districts that, for the state legislative districts, that cross existing precinct boundaries within Gainesville. So, we know we're going to have to change some of those boundaries that impacts the map, the city commission map, hopefully in some minor ways. We think that there's some solutions there that will have minimal effect on whatever approach that we move to take forward. Of course, the big issue here at this point is we have no congressional map, and the House is debating that today. That's a different map. They have two options that are different from the Senate, which is different from the governor. And so, we don't know what's going to happen with the congressional plan. There could be a split of Gainesville on the congressional plan that would add yet more complexity. But at this time, we don't know if that will take place. We don't know if it will resolve itself even by early April when we have to come to you with a final map after you've given us our guidance on which option to move forward with. So, that's where we're at procedurally with the mapping at this point, and we're just looking at now your feedback and hopefully, an adoption of one of the options that we presented to you two weeks ago to move forward with the city redistricting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McDonald. So, basically picking up where we left off two weeks ago. And I will just, you know, say to my colleagues that it would be incredibly useful for us to give some direction today, some very specific direction on which map we would like to move forward with, because we're starting to kind of run up against the clock here, and we need to move forward one way or the other. So, with that, I will turn it over to Commissioner Ward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I thank you for all the effort that you all have put into this. I really appreciate it. I know that lots of people in the community have taken a look at this, as I'm sure most of us on the dais have. My concern at this point is that we have, at least as of last count, seven people already signed up to run for district offices that will be affected by this, by the changes we make, and they're for an election on August 23rd, and we can't adopt final maps. By the time we did a second reading, it would be May, potentially. I don't think that's fair to those folks who have put resources into races and the people who have put resources into their races to help them. I think it puts, I think it's bad timing. I don't think there's anything we could have done to fix that timing. I also understand that maybe some of the census numbers might end up being challenged anyway. So, my preference is that this be handled January of '23 rather than cramming it through now. As long, if that's an option, I think that's the most fair option. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to make sure I get this question out in the ether before I forget it, but have we checked to see if any of the folks that have filed to run would be affected by these changes? I mean, I think that's something that would be good to know. If they're not affected and we adopt a map, then sure, no harm, no foul. So, I think that's something we could look up pretty quickly and get an answer to. Commissioner Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. I think we should be concerned if we're making decisions based on people who are running for office and where they live. I think that's, we're supposed to be creating maps for the city districts, not for individuals who are running for office. Every other place is doing this, where the state, I mean, is adopting the maps. It's a unfortunate late process this year because of COVID. it's a unfortunate late process this year because of COVID, but delaying it, I believe, will disenfranchise voters because our, our districts are out of whack right now, and to have another election where the votes are not in line, or the, the districts are not in line, I think would, would be a disservice to the residents of our community. So I think we should move forward, ask, outline how we're kind of supposed to do on, on these years, is when we're supposed to do it. Out of the maps, I, I think map number three, I think is the most compact, and to the expert opinion, the last time it seemed like they thought that that was the most compact, and if, if they could draw maps, that's, that's what it would look like as well. So that's where I'm at, if we, we make a decision today, it will most likely be like a, we can say this is like the preliminary final maps, just like everyone else is kind of doing, and that, that should be it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Chestnut?
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I will probably wait for Dr. McDonald and Dr. Smith to go ahead with their presentation. My concern is with precinct 27, and so I'll wait for them to present, but then I'd like to come back and comment there on the option.
I don't know, were, were you going to make a separate presentation? I mean, this is basically the same that you had two weeks ago, right? So you're really looking for direction?
Okay, all right, all right. Well, I'm concerned-
Direction, and we're happy to provide any information that we can on these questions.
Thank you.
And can you respond to the issue of the population challenges? Do you wish to respond to that?
Well, let's go ahead and hear from Commissioner Chestnut, and then maybe any questions that come up in our deliberations, if you can.
I'm concerned with, thank you, Mayor. I'm concerned with what happens with precinct 27, the duck pond, and in terms of District One. I think we fought very, I think that seat is that way for a specific reason, and I'm afraid that if we change it, we might have the consequence of not electing a minority in that seat. I think when Rodney Long campaigned and worked to get the district seat, it was so sure that we would have minority representation. So I know it looks strange to have District One and jump over precinct 27 on over to Porters and the other areas, but I want to be sure that we're able to maintain that representation, so it's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ariola?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I initially was pretty critical of option three, but after diving into some of the more finer details, I, I think I could be amenable to it. My preference would be option two, if the commission would be open to that, if there's other commissioners who aren't supporting that, but I'm, I'm not as staunch as I was at the last meeting, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner DeSantis?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Chestnut, I think that's a, a true concern, but if we go to slide, I think 19, where it goes into the option three, and the, I, I, sorry, actually, the, one slide before that, where it kind of goes on the demographics of it, the district actually, my understanding, increases the black voting population from what it currently, currently is. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. For, for my edification, could you pull up the demographic breakdown of the proposed District Three? Yeah. Actually, do you have a, yes, this is what I wanted. I mean, I think, the thing I like about option three is you now have, I believe, yes, two districts that are non-white majority districts, so two districts that are, that are minority-majority districts, which is not something we, we have had for the past decade. And, and so, having two minority-majority districts, along with the compactness, and the, what I, what I kind of see is the most balanced in, in voting age population, you know, that it, it creates not only something that, that meets the criteria and the goals today, but I think will be sustainable over the decade that will be, that will have these maps. I, I think it keeps it the most consistent. You know, I think the other thing is, we have definitely seen a massive demographic shift in what is currently District Three over the past decade. I mean, there's, there's been a lot of changes, and I think it's important to, as we have historically made sure that District One is able to elect a representative of their choosing, I think District Three has gotten to that point as well, where they need to also be able to sort of have a voice that represents their specific interests. That has not been as much of a, I don't want to say it hasn't been a concern, but it wasn't, I can tell you, I was here at redistricting a decade ago, and that was not part of the conversation, the sort of southwest of Gainesville, but it's changed a lot in that last decade. So, you know, that's, that tends to be, to me, that's the most equitable district, gives the most people the greatest opportunity to elect people of their choosing that will represent their, their interests. Commissioner Saka?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you both for coming back, I know it's thankless work. So I, I still like map three, I still like the, the idea, the concept of having two minority-majority districts that, that kind of empower their, their neighborhoods a little more. I, I do hear Commissioner Ward's concern, and it's not necessarily, you know, voting the map for, citing a map for seven people, it's citing a map for those communities who might have encouraged those candidates, who might want those candidates, and suddenly those aren't their candidates anymore. So I do have one question, if the deputy clerk could, could help us out. What would happen to, because from what I recall, at least one current District Three candidate would be flipped to two if we did this. What happens procedurally with those folks?
That's-
Okay.
Catherine, are you able to answer that? Is that, that seems more of a legal, or, gentlemen, do you, like, do we have the ability to, that, that they've already filed their paperwork to?
They're not locked in, they're not locked into that seat at all. It could raise questions about their supporters and their communities that they've been reaching out to, as Commissioner Ward has mentioned. Couple just quick points, we did not take into consideration anyone's address, I couldn't even tell you who's running. I think I know a couple who are running in my current district, but honestly, I have no idea where they live, and I have no idea about the other districts, the three that are open. So, again, that doesn't absolve the concerns that you have with respect to campaigns have already been up and running, they're raising money, they're reaching out to presumably who they think their constituents are going to be, so I, I completely understand that. To Commissioner Chestnut's point, again, as you know, I was on the redistricting commission 10 years ago for the citizen commission. Gainesville keeps changing demographically. If you look at that other demographics, you will see, as the mayor just pointed out, the map that we have drawn, map number three, actually increases the black voting age population from the current district, notwithstanding bringing in a more white, plurality white duck pond area. One of the things that I think you probably are very aware of is that that precinct, from the November special election to the January runoff that we just had, your support actually went up from the first election to the second election in District 27. It went up across the whole city, with the exception of three precincts that happened to be very, very, very low turnout of the campus community, and it was only marginal in those areas. So I think, although we didn't do a full-blown racial polarized voting analysis, looking at previous elections and performance for a, a black candidate, see if that candidate would be of the community of choice to be elected, I am very confident, looking just more anecdotally at your race and some other races, that that district will perform for an African-American candidate in, in a District One, or as we saw in a citywide race. And I think Dr. McDonald just wanted to mention quickly on the question of the census data, on the first question that Commissioner Ward had.
Yeah, so we did explore that issue, we have identified potentially 500 undercount of, of, 500 people in two census blocks around the campus. One is pretty clearly an error, that it's a census block that's just to the immediate east of the stadium. The census says there are seven people in there, data that we received from University of Florida Housing says that there were over 350 students that were living in that dorm during the April I census enumeration. So that one's pretty clearly an issue. The other is 150 in another census block on, on the east side of the campus as well, and that one I don't know, because it, there are some other technical issues with the census and how they're masking individuals' identities, they could argue that that's just the statistical noise that they've injected into the data so that we can't determine who is responding to the census. So I don't, I think our case is weaker for that other 150, the 350, I believe, is, is more significant. I don't believe that that's going to change our plans, because we've got the population tolerance, and we're well within the 3% on all the plans that you've given us direction to, to follow, so if we did inject, if we, even if we added 350, that wouldn't change anything, but it's also important to understand, for redistricting purposes, the Department of Justice has said that we have to use the, the numbers that the census gave us. So even if we were to challenge, go through the whole challenge process, that's only going to affect funding to the city, it's not going to affect the, the population numbers that we're using for redistricting purposes.
Okay, very helpful, thank you.
Well, so I guess my last thing is, I still like map three, I really do. My, my concern is that we all know elections are difficult, and that even before you file, it is a difficult conversation and introspection of what you're going to do. I still prefer this map, I just, I, I wonder what would happen to those candidates who, who made a very difficult choice and we're throwing 10 monkey wrenches at them, but yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. It's, it's my understanding that they, you can, you file, then you can always move what you're running for, and this happens all the time, and that's during redistricting every, every season, there are people who are moving around offices, because districts change, especially at the state and congressional level, definitely like Orlando, Tampa, where the lines really do move all over the place all the time. So they would just move into whatever district, the money that they have can carry over as well, I understand as well.
To be clear, they're, they're not moving, what, what you're saying is that if somebody currently is running for D3 and the lines move, and now they're in D2-
They can run for D2.
They'll be running for D2, right? So not physically moving.
Yes, yes.
The lines moved around.
The district, yes.
They could, they could.
They could, yes, but, that too. But, yeah, they, they would not be ineligible to run for office, it would just be a different seat. I understand that, that's a good, good point. Commissioner Ariola, is that you, sorry, I don't have my glasses on.
That's all right, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ariola, go ahead.
Well, I don't get a sense that the commission is, is totally moving towards consensus on, on maps, I think right now we're debating the point as to whether we would make these changes effective this year. I think it's important to point out that any candidate that has filed for office has not yet qualified, we haven't reached the qualification period, so there is, there is still time, and, and anybody expecting to run for office in a redistricting year is well aware of the potential for change. So I'm definitely sympathetic, so I, I just want us to, to keep that in mind, that there's still a qualification period forthcoming where changes can be made, and, and really, I, I think really the, the biggest changes are, are manageable, I think, for any, for any serious candidate. So, having said that, I am comfortable with us making changes for, for this year's election, and I still would like to hear what maps Commissioners support, and then we can move towards some direction.
Thank you. Commissioner Duncan Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to go to page 16, please. And just to ask a question about precinct 25. Swapped between District One and District Four, so 25 would be moving into District Four?
Correct. That's correct. So east of 13th Street, both north and south of University, correct.
And that precinct, please refresh my memory, where is that?
So, so- It's that little brown appendage that's coming off of District Two in this map, so it's-
Looks like that little inverted L that is just east of-
Like a faucet coming off of District Four.
I have a reading map.
Yeah, there you go.
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to address it, precinct 25 is Satafe, that's the voting place, Satafe College, 400 building, you said 25.
Uh huh. And so that, that's, that's the precinct that the Pleasant Street community uses?
That's correct.
Okay.
That is correct, and there's been tremendous demographic changes, you're well aware of in that, that area.
For sure, and, and many of my constituents in that area have expressed much chagrin at the idea of being moved out of District One. So, okay, thank you for that information, that'll definitely be informing me. I would like to ask-
I, I, sorry, since you're asking about District, Precinct 25, this is the precinct, unfortunately, where the state legislature's come in and carved up most of, of all the precincts, so there's, this is where we're going to have to make some changes to the map if you would move forward with this option.
Mr. McDonald, if you could just speak a little bit more into the microphone-
I'm sorry.
Just more for the folks listening.
So, this is the precinct that the legislature has split most significantly that would affect our map, and so I, here I have the State House districts that were adopted, they have not been approved by the Supreme Court of Florida yet, but you can see that that L-shaped, inverted L-shaped district on its side, it's, it's split right through the middle, so we're going to have to work with the supervisor elections, if you wanted to move forward with a map that touches Precinct 25, we're going to have to work with them about how they're going to draw the precinct boundaries. So I would just say that when you give us guidance on Precinct 25, understand that there's some things that we're going to have to negotiate with the supervisor of elections.
And then, thank you very much for that, just a procedural question, I guess, what was the reasoning? I know that you kind of operated anecdotally, and you were referring to Commissioner Chestnut's most recent race, but I was curious as to what the logic or the reasoning was behind not doing the analysis of the black voters.
So, there are a couple answers to that. One, it's very difficult to do that type of racial polarized voting analysis, because you have to have individual-level results over the past several elections to look at this. I think the other thing, though, and we were not charged to do that type of analysis here by, by your commission, the other thing, however, is much more practical, and one that would throw question to all that analysis anyway, and that's because we're moving from off-cycle spring elections to an August primary election. And quite honestly, that's a concern that the commission should have, that the city should have, that the citizenry should have, that far exceeds much of what we're doing here, because we are going from an election that will have maybe 8,000, 10,000, 12,000 people turning out to vote in a citywide election, to one where we may have 50,000, 60,000 people turning out in an August primary. The demographics completely shift in terms of who is going to be turning out on Election Day, on August 23rd. It also is going to raise civic education issues of having primary ballots for Democrats and Republicans, and going down, and then looking at a nonpartisan race way down the ballot. And so there's going to be an education effort that people running are going to have to get through the fog of these statewide campaigns to be able to focus on the community issues and interests for these districts, and I, I think that that's probably going to be as informative of how- And I, I think that that's probably going to be as informative of how these districts perform as anything. And that's out of your control, it's out of our control. It has to do with who's running statewide, who's running in competitive primaries. The last thing I will add, too, is because we have closed primaries in this state, only Republicans are going to be voting in the Republican primary on August twenty-third, only Democrats are going to be voting in the Democratic primary. However, no party affiliates can vote. They're going to be voting only in the local, nonpartisan election. So again, another civic education issue because I can tell you the Republican and Democratic candidates running statewide aren't going to be targeting at all turnout to the NPAs because they can't vote in those closed primaries. It's going to be up to the candidates running who are going to be doing it. So all those things bring in uncertainty in terms of how any of these districts would perform if we were using past elections based on either the special elections or the March city elections or going back in time. So I just want to put those caveats out there for you, Commissioner, that there are a lot of unknowns. We're trying to do the best we can in terms of what we do know. And I certainly understand the concern about precinct twenty-five that is probably the most dynamic-changing precinct in the city right now. And certainly, people in the House of Representatives understand that because they have drawn a line that's coming down Thirteenth Street and then seems to carve out certain parts of District Twenty-five. I don't know for what reasons, race, development? I'm only speculating. But it's clearly a district that is difficult to come up with. So many different rationales that could be used to do it.
Thank you.
We did, we did it mostly on the corridor. Here's, here are the corridors. These make sense in, in terms of that rationale as opposed to others.
Thank you very much. Calling so far, I will express my support for map three. That's where I'm falling. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. And I think Commissioner Duncan brought up a good point on, on map two where at least option three keeps Pleasant Street inside of District One as well, part of that. So I'd like to move that we move forward with option three as the preliminary final map with recognition that small changes may be made with precinct changes.
Okay, motion of second that we move forward with map three. Commissioner Sokow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was reading and it didn't follow through. Commissioner Duncan Walker, could you repeat again which map you favored?
Three.
Three? Okay. Oh, I was, I was, thank you, because my point was going to be Pleasant Street remains on the east side of six, so three, three keeps that in one with a more cohesive, like-minded demographic. But, there, mine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Again, I, I think the biggest, again, we're making it a map for the next decade and especially because of a lot of the uncertainties that Dr. Smith just brought up, a completely different turnout level mainly. All those other things are true, too, is, you know, getting people who are focused on a gubernatorial or senate race to also focus on a nonpartisan city commission race. But the way we set ourselves up to give folks the greatest opportunity to elect people they're choosing is to, in District One, increase the black voting age population percentage and doing the same thing with District Three and creating two minority-majority districts, you know, I think gives us the greatest opportunity for a truly representative and diverse city commission, especially for those two parts of our city that really, I think, need that representation. So I, yeah, I do support this path forward. So, gentlemen, thank you. We will now ask any members of the public that wish to speak to this issue to do so. Let's give Ms. Malden a chance to kind of clean that area, so we'll start with folks that are on the phones, Adam, and then finish up with folks in chamber here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is nobody on the line at this time. Mr. Mayor, are you there?
I, I am. Sorry, yes, thank you. Thank you, Adam. Ms. Fox, welcome.
Good morning.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I, I have looked at the maps and thanks to, and I've talked to a couple of Commissioners about it, and I do have copies, and I had concern, concerns about option three. Option three, if I'm wrong, please correct me, that is the majority-minority district. So it's going to include a part of Duck Pond, which is District Four. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay. Would that not dilute the, uh, black voters electing someone their, their selves? I don't know what the demographic, demographics are, but in District Four, which is the Duck Pond, a part of it or all of it would be included in District One? Am I correct?
You are, yeah. And we'll get Mr. Smith to respond, but if, if y'all can pull up those demographics again while Ms. Fox is talking. Go ahead, keep, keep going and we'll kind of get your motion answered here.
Okay. And you spoke of two minority district, which districts are those?
It'd be one and three.
One and, one and three. I'm still not, and I don't think, in looking at this, and I don't see, I know Commissioner Walker said that she would support map number three, but that can possibly dilute the African-American voters because we have very few African-Americans living in the Duck Pond area, which is District Four. So I, I would hope that we would consider this and let us have some more community conversations before we move forward with option three or any, is there any reason we can't wait until the first of the year like the consultant talked about? Is it any reason why we can't wait until the twenty-twenty-three to, to do this? I, I'm just concerned, and I think I would like to have some more community meetings about the maps before the city adopt any of them. I'm just concerned about that merger of the Duck Pond with, with District One because certainly I don't think we have twenty or thirty people living, African-Americans, living in the Duck Pond, and that's why I'm very, very concerned because they are very strong voters and sometimes we are not in District One and we could lose, we can possibly lose that seat. So I'm very concerned, and I'm going to ask this commission to please wait until the first of the year.
Thank you, Ms. Fox.
Where we could have some more community meetings to go over the maps, if you don't mind.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. And I'll, I'll get Mr. Smith to answer. There actually is not a dilution, there's an increase in, in black voter population with, with map three.
With, with adding District Four? What precinct?
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Smith, can you explain that, or Dr. Smith, can you explain that again?
Okay. Just so others. So I've put up here the current census population for the voting age population. And if you look in the upper-left quadrant, this is the current map, District One currently has thirty-seven point two percent black voting age population. It actually is a majority-minority district in that it only has forty-three percent non-Hispanic white. The option that we've been talking about, disagree, actually increases from thirty-seven point two up to forty point five percent, notwithstanding bringing in part of the Duck Pond. And again, the Duck Pond is a racially diverse area. It is not as African-American as some certainly east of there, but this new proposed district is bringing in other parts of the city that help it increase the voting age population that is African-American. So it actually is an increase in it. The other thing that I would point out, two other things. I believe we don't have a District One race this year. So in fact, postponing this isn't going to affect whoever is running in District One because that race is going to be in a future election.
Twenty twenty-four.
Twenty-five, twenty-five?
Four.
Twenty twenty-four. So I think postponing it, which was, I think, Commissioner Ward's and not Professor McDonald's suggestion, won't affect District One.
End of the mic a little bit more, Dr. Smith.
Oh, sorry. That will not affect District One. Again, I also looked, as I said, anecdotally, not doing any full-blown analysis for the reasons I cited. The Duck Pond precinct, twenty-seven, performs very well for African-Americans who have run both, who have run citywide and who also have run for other statewide offices or state offices, state, State House, State Senate. So, again, I understand and am certainly aware of concerns, similar concerns that we had ten years ago when we served together and looked at, you know, some of the issues that Dr. Wald was having. Gainesville is changing. You can create a district that has actually increased voting age population for African-Americans without having to wrap all the way around to the bottom part of the city like Dr. Wald tried to do previously. So I, and I think this is, notwithstanding any other concerns that Commissioner Duncan Walker had, I think this district will have the ability to elect in future elections, but there are a lot of unknowns and I think it's not the shape of the district, not even the demographics of the different district. It has to do that we are changing the election system to now being in August primaries where the electorate is very different. So, and again, who knows what kind of competitive primaries we're going to have in twenty-twenty-four? But we know that those statewide races or competitive State House and State Senate races are going to be bringing people into the polls as much or more than local candidates are going to do. So you can't really predict that. I suspect African-American turnout is going to be considerably high this August primary. Has nothing to do with what's going on in Gainesville. It has to do with who's running for US Senate on the Democratic primary. Right? So again, those are the things we can't predict what's going to happen in twenty-twenty-four for those different districts.
Okay. Thank you both. Do we have anybody else that wishes to speak to this item?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Pastor, if you just give us a sec, we were going to clean it. Thanks. Thank you. You're good.
Ron Rollins, pastor of Greater Bethel AME Church. Just wanted to come and express, when looking at different options, I don't have a problem with option number three. I could, could stand behind that. I think that would work well for the city as a whole, and I think it would, would work well for my community.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? And, Madam Clerk, I forgot to ask for you for cards. I don't know if anybody filled any out or not? No? Okay, I'll, I'll be a little bit on top of that from now on, still adjusting myself. Okay, well, thanks. Go ahead, Adam.
Mr. Mayor, we may have a caller here right now.
Right on.
I'd like to call on Armando Grindi Gamas. Armando, you on for this issue? And I lost him again. It's, something's going on with his cell phone today, we keep losing him. Go ahead, you've got the floor.
Okay. So the motion on the floor is that we move ahead with map three as our preliminary final map. So there, again, I think there are some things that will happen between now and then the final congressional map, the supervisor of elections and redrawing precincts based on those adopted maps by the state. And so we'll have to wait a little bit to, to figure them out, but this should get us pretty close to where they, they are going to be. So we thank you both very much. Commissioner Sokow said it was thankless work, so I want to thank you. We really do appreciate it. And we're so fortunate to have two experts like yourself here locally to assist us with this process. It's, it's not an easy one. So with that, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all very much. Madam Clerk, I believe we've reached the end of our business.
Again, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Commissioner for the opportunity.
All right, we'll talk soon. Okay, we have reached the end of our business for this morning, so we will be in recess until one o'clock. Hey, good afternoon, everybody. We're going to call this meeting back to order for our afternoon portion. Our first order of business is early public comment. So just to remind folks, we've got early public comment, then we have general public comment, and then we have three items on our afternoon agenda. If you would like to speak for any of those, early general public comment or any of the items, just fill out a card for what you'd like to speak to. There's one on each table on either side here, and turn that in to the clerk, Ms. Kessler over here. And then for each of those items, when we get to it, she will call you in the order that the cards were received. So with that, Madam Clerk, do you have anybody here to speak for early public comment? Again, these are items that are on our agenda, but you would like to speak to now as opposed to later when they come up for discussion? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, we have no one signed up in the auditorium, so we might want to go to the phone, but I see folks are still signing apps.
Sure. So Adam, do you have anybody for early public comment?
Sorry, I was muted. I was going to say to Ms. Kessler that maybe I could turn it back to her because I have nobody on the line at this time, but I will read out the number in case folks are listening. It's one eight hundred seven four two ten ninety-nine. We'll stand by. I'll interrupt if, if somebody does jump on.
Thank you. Adam? Okay, anybody here for early public comment? I'll just, I'll wait if you are, if you're, for early public comment?
Oh.
Okay. All right, then, Madam Clerk, I think we'll just go to general public comment. So these are for anything that is not on our agenda today. You can just share whatever's on your mind. Madam Clerk?
Nathan Scup.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners, Nathan Scup. So I'm very proud that my neighbors have showed up today to, to speak on items on the agenda, following up on what the commission decided at its last special meeting. I do want to give some discussion and emphasis to that. It's not on the agenda today, but very disappointed with the draconian changes, sweeping changes that this, the majority of this commission made to the land development code that was Commissioner Ward for the record, Commissioner Hey Santos, Commissioner Sokow, and Mayor Poe. You had overwhelming opposition once again from the citizens, but you sided with the developers. We've seen this repeated pattern where you don't listen to neighborhoods, starting with the Montrossity known as a standard, followed by Suburban Heights, which you substituted your own position well outside of what was even requested by the developers in the neighborhood. And then you had the Adacity, after almost three hours of overwhelming public opposition to engage in two lengthy speeches extolling the, the evils of single-family housing. Mayor Poe, you live in a single-family house, but apparently those, those lectures don't equally apply to you. So it's, it's, the hypocrisy of this commission is just overwhelming. I mean, you're elected to serve the people, by and for the people. This representative government, and unfortunately, you don't even listen to your own constituents. Even your staunchest supporters are here criticizing you because you're tone deaf. And I hate to say that, but I mean, how many times can you come with the olive branch and ask nicely before you get frustrated? I mean, I tried, and I tried a decade ago, and I tried to warn you exactly what was going to happen if you failed to address the issues facing GRU. You would have the highest electric rates in the state. Check. You'd have your debt downgraded. Check. Mayor Poe, you remember that. You said, "I didn't know what I was talking about," back in twenty-twelve. Clearly, I was right, you were wrong. Clearly, the people are right, and you don't listen to them. And that's what's frustrating because it's not good governance. You guys are involved in so many other things that have nothing to do with core governance and good governance. I mean, look at the state audit report. Look at the, the gift card audit that's coming back before the Finance Committee. It's lack of management oversight time and time again from this commission and the mayor. And now you have an opportunity to, once again, listen to the people of Gainesville. You didn't listen to the neighborhoods opposing the standard. You didn't listen to the neighbors opposing St. Michael's from Suburban Heights. You didn't listen to the neighbors from Royal Park. You didn't listen to the overwhelming opposition that was opposed to sweeping land use change, and you gave them a consolation prize by voting against something, trying to bamboozle them. So we need good governance. Please listen to the citizens here today and, and just. Please listen to the citizens here today and just conform your behavior to match that of Commissioner Desmond Duncan Walker and Commissioner Chestnut, who actually listen.
Thank you. Adam, do we have anybody for general public comment? We're gonna kind of...
Mr. Mayor, there's, yeah, I'd like to say that we could, but there's nobody on the line at this time.
Okay. Very good. Madam Clerk? Nobody else for general public comment? Okay. If you have a general public comment, if you'll just fill out a card and hand it to the clerk, we'll call you in the order they're received.
I may have a card of general public comment. Do you have a general public comment?
These are items that are not on our agenda, correct?
I just want to say what I think of general public comment. Can I do that?
Yeah. So it's for an item that we're not discussing, right?
Yeah. I'm just talking to you about how much...
Line unmuted.
My name's Lee Malus, and I'm here just because, I hate coming here. I quit coming here because I felt we don't have a democratic process, because everybody comes in, hundreds of people come in, and nobody listens. And it does it over and over and over, and I see our city just deteriorating. The whole downtown is changing, to massive, big, giant buildings. And our generations before you guys worked so hard to keep a beautiful city with trees everywhere and neighborhoods, and all of you promised, I was, I voted, unfortunately, for all of you, because you all promised you're gonna protect our neighborhoods. You're gonna, you said everything we wanted to hear, and you did everything the opposite. You don't help the poor. You don't help the neighborhoods. You're just giving our city away to the developers. It's disgusting. It is totally, you are, I think, you've called me a nimby, especially you. You called me a nimby because I, who make twelve thousand dollars a year, don't want a bunch of fifty students living in my backyard. But you, you just don't even listen to the poor people, and you say you're for the poor. You have, I've been in, I was in wars against Pinochet, against Guatemala, and El Salvador, in Russia, and I have defended the poor, and I've worked so hard my whole life for progressive values, and you all claim to be progressive, don't you? You all claim, and you are doing the absolute opposite of what progressives want. You are giving our city away to developers. You are wrecking the city for the people who are poor and work, they can't even afford to live here anymore, because it's all for college students. I hope you're proud of yourselves. I am not. I hate coming here because you will do nothing what is right. And you know, I don't understand why you do it. Why do you keep destroying our city? What is the point? You make me sick.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else here for general public comment, for items that are not on Welcome.
Welcome. If I want to speak about new urbanism and planning in general, and...
That's fine.
Is that allowed?
Sure.
Okay. My biggest concern is that I have what I consider a golf green or a beautiful manicured lawn being destroyed by high, tall weeds. In other words, we have things popping up all over the city, tall buildings, that seem to be without plan. And I think what we're forgetting is that we could, all of you, could hold on to a concept that was developed in Miami called new urbanism. And that's a brilliant concept, because it talks about neighborhoods. And the word, I can't say that you're gonna be talking about later, but that one, the intention is a step-down concept. So, I mean, I brought a picture here, which is not very clear. I don't know how you can show a picture, but it explains how, oh, it won't work? Good. Sorry, it's not very big. It explains the whole concept of what new urbanism means, that we're not seeing here, we're not seeing it from city staff, we're not seeing the benefits and the beauty of it. For example, if you have a downtown in any city, the highest height limit they suggest was six feet, six stories. And that means in big cities, we're a little city. So we should be in our, in our center city, have a far lower height, and then it should spread out. And so this is explaining, so the protection of, for example, Depot Park, is explained by new urbanism. When the citizens say, "We want low, attractive buildings," we're talking, we are basically supporting new urbanism. And we have experts in this town that no one tries to listen to. We have so many experts, and we're not taking advantage of it. And my other big concern is that public input is basically ignored. There's no question, because there are no workshops, no discussion of plans, no discussion of visions. We saw it right there in the Milhopper area, where people were ignored, where they got some opportunities to speak, but whatever they said didn't work. And I wonder why you're serving here without serving the community and without serving the residents. I have real concerns for your service. And I think continued service is probably a big question. Developers, now these student dorm-style buildings, are now go, apparently, they're par say. Students are sick of living in a shared area with a TV and having a separate room they pay a thousand dollars for, they go people cam, trash it out, eat their food, won't behave, make a noise. Students are now, in other parts of the country, are saying, "We don't want it anymore." So why are we building more and more? Why we're building it is because this city saw upon itself to sign up for opportunity in enterprise zones, which was...
Thank you. I appreciate your comments.
Sorry, a Trump policy.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, anybody else for general public comment?
Not that I know of.
Okay, Adam, I'll check back with you one more time.
Thank you, sir. We have two callers on the line. Something happened to the bridge, so I just need to check it again. And we should be able to hear Debbie Martinez. Ms. Martinez, you have three minutes. Okay, hold on one second, Debbie. We can't hear you yet. Hold on. All right, let's try that.
Reality, Mr. Poe, no matter... Hello?
Debbie, yeah, can you start again, please? We didn't have the bridge connected right. We need you to start at the beginning.
Okay, I'll start again. Thank you for letting me know that. I'll start over. Mayor Commissioners, I'm Debbie Martinez. Mr. Poe, it is now fourteen years since you were first elected to the Gainesville City Commission, and the mess that you have caused in that fourteen years speaks for itself. You can't change reality, Mr. Poe, no matter how many hundred thousand dollar a year employees you hire at our expense to peddle your phony narrative. Who would want to work in the disreputable propaganda machine you use to bamboozle the public? Shelby Taylor, your one hundred and twenty thousand dollar a year communications and engagement director, seems to be a decent person. Your last communications and director seemed decent, and he's gone. Your equity and inclusion officer couldn't be bought off either. The gig is up, Mr. Poe. When are you going to tell the public that you're going to run for Congress and try to bamboozle another group of voters? If you're not going to make your announcement in the next couple of weeks, tell us. Otherwise, how about resigning now? I'll stay on the phone until you answer my question about your congressional announcement. Don't cut me off. I have three minutes to wait. Again, when are you going to tell the public that you're going to run for Congress and try to bamboozle another group of voters? If you're not to make your announcement, if you're not going to make your announcement in the next couple of weeks, tell us. Otherwise, how about resigning now? I'll wait.
I will not be making any announcement in the next couple of weeks, absolutely not.
I'll repeat that, I couldn't hear you.
I will, I will not be making any announcement in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you.
All righty. We have another minute or so of Ms. Martinez's time. And, Mr. Mayor, we have two additional callers, maybe even three after this. Tana, you have three minutes.
Hello. I wasn't going to speak at this time, but Lee Malus's remarks break my heart. Please, go by the property he's talking about and see that centuries-old oaks and a house have been replaced by impervious surface of apartments configured like a motel and a paved parking lot with LED spotlights on all night. The city fought him to do that. They have fought, the city has fought us in Pleasant Street about the meaning of residential conservation zoning to allow apartments, which it does not. Last month, the city commission met nine times plus the last day of January, and this is a result of a technocratic, bureaucratic shift that took place senselessly in twenty sixteen and has isolated the commission from the public and to the benefit, always, consistently of UF and developers and private interest in this town. So, especially to the four men on the commission, please resolve to use your last nine months in office to stop and reverse the harm that has been done to city government and public trust in the past six years. Until Commissioner Chestnut took office last month, the mayor was the only member who had served on a functioning city commission with orderly processes and real means of public participation in self-government. That radical shift in twenty sixteen by an inexperienced novice city manager who had no business being in that position pushed the public out and led commissioners to pursuing their own agendas, making last-minute motions without the benefit of analysis or foresight, running staff in circles to fulfill their wishes, and spending millions of dollars on new hires and pricey consultants to do what competent staff did for decades. UF and private interests have gained increasing influence over city government and resources for little to nothing in exchange. I could point out numerous examples of these changes and their consequences we're seeing already around us. They're done in the name of good causes, but that is just hollow rhetoric. I just don't have anything else to say about this, except, you know, do something. Don't just keep doing this. Bye.
Thank you. Ms. Silva, next caller, Mr. Donald Shepherd. Mr. Shepherd, you have three minutes.
Hey. Hello?
Yep, Mr. Shepherd, go ahead.
Hi. I'm Donald Shepherd, and I'm still waiting to take in here a release on the paperwork that has been sent to me about me being picked out of City Hall for putting a finger on David LaRrow. Never heard of him. He interrupted me and Ed Berauski, and what person with a right mind and possibly being a public commissioner would take and, take, oh, take offense to that? I did not push him. I did not hurt him. I did not have no intent to hurt him. And as is noted, Ed Berauski did state that this was a action that should not have taken place, and he should have waited his turn to talk to Ed Berauski, but no, he pushed his way in, then I put my finger on his chest, and I said, "Please wait your turn." And then he accused me of pushing him and kicking me out of the city commission and the manager going against the Constitution and having me removed from the meeting. That's against our Constitution of our Democratic Party to take and have this take place. This Donald Shepherd should take and be let back into city commission meetings so he can remain helping our city in the intent that which he has to take and change our city to a better city. We're not getting a better city. High Springs getting a better city, plus they're getting what we have taken asked for through media center. They're getting it. And the funding going from our CRA, which is city, it's not county, and it's helping the county develop this conventional center in High Springs, and this here should never be. We need a conventional center in the city of Gainesville, and we need a new mayor. So I'm asking for this mayor and commission to be removed from office and put a group of commissioners that have signed up for the commission office in the office so that we could go on with our lives. Beautiful location of our city is ended. Is it the end of my time?
Pretty much. You've got twenty seconds left, Donald.
Okay. I think that our sidewalks haven't been addressed, our public works is not taking, putting information out. Where's our maps for the redistricting? We haven't seen that. We've got a lot of things. Our finances are not in order, and here it's almost budget-free.
Thank you, Mr. Shepherd.
So we need to take and help our city take and balance the books. So, thank you.
All righty. Next up, Armando Grindigamas. Armando, you've got three minutes.
Thank you, Adam. So, Mr. Mayor, I want to say that I was thrilled and angered when I read today's article in The Sun about the city supporting an idea of a sports complex on the eastern side of our city. I was thrilled because I recall the effort being put in by the GCR, GCR A board last year to bring a spotlight on a potential sports complex at Ethan Waldo, and all of you know that. All of you do. In fact, I was the one who visited Birmingham. I did the market study for the Crossplex, which is a seven thousand square foot mega sports facility with an indoor hydraulic track, an Olympic-sized pool that transformed the city's underdeveloped and mostly black neighborhoods in the west end of Birmingham. And so when I hear one of the commissioners, Commissioner Chestnut yesterday, say she was trying to remember who did it, when we were in the same meeting, Commissioner Chestnut, with an ACM that used to work there, not Tony Jones, former ACM, with then-city, the city manager, Anthony Lyons, we were brought that idea in twenty eighteen. You know that. So it's interesting that we have the city's first director, along with myself, present that to you all, not once, not twice, not three times, but four times, that presentation last year and the year before last. How was that effort met by the city commission? You reduced the size of the board and cut it in half. How was it met? You ignored the entire conversation about a sports complex, and recently drove out the GCR A director. How was it met? Commissioner Harvey Ward had no interest in that project last year. Hadn't, Commissioner Ariola was disinterested. All of you, except for Commissioner Duncan Walker, and you, Commissioner Chestnut, because you all were civilians at the time, were interested. Commissioner Duncan Walker even knows for a fact that I did that presentation and did that out of my pocket, because we had a city manager that wanted to not use and not follow the ordinance, and it's still being continued. And you all want to act like you're doing something and care about the black community. That's because some of you all are running for mayor. You were disinterested in East Gainesville, and you weren't, because Commissioner Ward wanted to present a competing idea with the coppers idea. So you weren't interested, and I cannot sit by and listen, and you rewrite history about GCR A in Waldo. Not one of the commissioners up there, with the exception of Duncan Walker and Chestnut, raised the issue until this time recently, but you all had no interest. Those two do have an interest, but Commissioner Chestnut, kudos to you for raising it, because we should do something on Ethan Waldo. So simply because you wanted to level, you wanted to level that area and bring soccer field, what black folks do you know are playing soccer in East Gainesville? Stop the madness. Gainesville, you control seventy million dollars, you haven't followed the ordinance, and you didn't care. And some, two of you up there are running for mayor and have been disinterested in black people places and spaces. And I'm not gonna sit up here and let you all support and prop up white supremacy anymore. It's enough. You've done nothing, been about nothing, Commissioner Chestnut.
Thank you, Armando.
Desmond, speak truth to power.
Thank you. All righty. Our next speaker would prefer to introduce themselves.
nothing, been about nothing, Commissioner Chestnut. Desmond, speak truth to power.
Thank you. All righty, our next speaker would prefer to introduce themselves. Sir, or Madam, sure, you have three minutes.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead and introduce yourself.
This is Jolie Beatty. Hello?
Joe, you're on the line. You have three minutes.
Okay, this is, this is Jolie Beatty, and I am calling specifically to address this to you, Mr. Mayor. You have repeatedly not waited the 45 seconds. There is a delay when people call in, and you frequently say, Adam, is there anything, anybody on the line? And when he says, no, not at this time, you say, we'll move to a vote. And that does not give people who are calling in time to get in, and you go and take the vote, and we can't comment, or you cut it off. You need to be aware of the delay, and I am not the only one. I've been cut off numerous times and not allowed to get in because you've taken the vote by the time they answer my call. But I'm not the only one. It's happened to numerous people, and I think you need to pause and wait the 45 seconds to make sure somebody isn't calling in. Sometimes it's not evident how long your conversations are going to go on and when you'll be taking citizen comment. So that's number one. Number two is that I would like you to direct Adam or whoever controls the Zoom meetings to, when we are speaking on the phone and you don't have the pictures, please go back so that we can see the city commission as we're talking to you. And so that's my comment for today, my request, and I guess it's under the mayor's control, but I think the other commissioners, if you agree, you know, somebody can, you can step up and also take a vote and direct the mayor to do that. So just be aware, if you are really wanting citizen input, you can't just ignore this 45-second delay. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jen. All righty, we've got one additional caller at the moment. Oakleyanna Carabella. Oakleyanna, you have three minutes.
Hello, thank you. My name is Oakleyanna Caraballo. Thank you for your time today. I am calling to voice my concern on ordinance 200877 about spot zoning and allowing it in town. I think it would destroy the character of our town further. I do not believe that more density is desired.
All right, Adam, I believe that caller is on for an item that we have on our agenda in a little bit, not general public comment.
Fair enough. Oakleyanna, if you could just wait for that agenda item to be called and bring us back. Actually, we'll keep you on the line. We'll get your comments in just a little while. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, that was our last caller. For your service.
Okay, thank you all for sharing your thoughts. We will...
I'm sorry, we do have two additional.
Oh, okay. Our time for general public comment is going to expire in two minutes. Is there a desire to waive our rules and extend for how long? Okay, so motion, waive our rules and extend for two more speakers. All in favor, say aye. All opposed. That motion passes unanimously with Sacco absent. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Sharon Bauer.
I didn't read the article in The Sun today, so I don't know what is going on at Eighth Avenue in Waldo. But two years ago, I was at a meeting where you talked about your plans to demolish the MLK Center and Citizens Field to build a sports complex using millions of dollars of CRA money that was intended to fight blight on the east side of Waldo Road. Now, one of the problems, one of the challenges that our neighborhood faces is that for 100 years or more, the terms East Gainesville and east side were two very clear and ambiguous geographic designations. East Gainesville, since the city was founded, was across the bridge from downtown. Anything east of Sweetwater Branch, anything that had east in its address. When the city expanded north of Eighth Avenue, Boundary Street, and east of Waldo Road, the part of East Gainesville on the east side of Waldo Road became known as east side. So the problem is that our neighborhood, which is on the west side of Waldo Road, we are 90%, I'm sorry, 75% white, and the east side is 90% black. That is the part of East Gainesville that is need of development and that has blight. What keeps happening is we are having development cram down our throats that we don't want and don't need because we have many thriving businesses. You are taking money intended to help those black people, our black neighbors on the east side of Waldo, and giving us development that we don't want or need. And people don't know about this because we have been asking since that meeting two years ago, we asked the previous city manager to please hold meetings in our neighborhood. My neighborhood's immediately south of that is what the Prazer calls Duck Pond area, or east of Duck Pond. Then there's Fairfield addition to the west, Duval to the east, and Carroll Estates to the north. We have repeatedly asked that the city meet with the neighbors and learn how opposed we are to this before you proceed with it. So I hope what I'm going to see in the newspaper is that you're going to build something maybe on Hawthorne Road will benefit east side instead of putting it in our neighborhood, because there was a food giveaway recently at MLK, and traffic was backed up on narrow, winding Eighth Avenue through the historic district for blocks. People couldn't get out of their driveways. They couldn't get out of their streets. So please don't do this to us without a workshop to hear us. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Gary Gordon.
Welcome.
Thank you for extending the public comment, comment time. My name is Gary Gordon. I think I'm going to add to the comments that will probably fall on deaf ears for the majority of the commission. Today, there's a 10 o'clock in the morning meeting. There's a 1 o'clock meeting, and I understand there's a 7 o'clock meeting to deal with Archer Road and 34th A development. There's meetings all the time. You're requiring citizens to be full-time commission watchers, commission participants, in a way that most people who work for a living can't do it. I happen to be retired. I could be at all three meetings, although I chose to watch the one at 10 on TV. When I served on the commission, we had city commission meetings, Commissioner Chestnut will remember this, every Monday night. They ran roughly from 6:00 to 11:00. Sometimes they ran later. Everybody knew that the city commission was meeting once a week to do business for the people, with the people. Now, you need an incredible computer calendar program just to keep track of all of the items and all the times that you have to show up, and you're making citizens work too hard to participate. And that's on top of when we do, we're not often heard. But pretending that we even were heard, you're making everybody work too hard. You need to return to those once-a-week, Monday-night meetings and eliminate these general policy meetings. You need to eliminate these meetings that occur at 10:00 in the morning, like the one this morning on redistricting, which although Mayor Poe kind of dismissed it as pro forma, was anything but pro forma. I appreciated Commissioner Ward's suggestion that you hold off until 2023. It was, in my opinion, a perfect suggestion instead of throwing the city election into the mess of what is going to occur in August. I don't think you'll reconsider your meeting plans and the number of meetings you have. I think you like it the way it is, and that's unfortunate. The community was a very productive, very participatory community, and the commission used to get a hell of a lot done and not have to take a whole business day to do it or several business days during the week to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Okay, thank you all for sharing your thoughts with us. We appreciate that. We're going to go on with our business discussion items. Madam Clerk, our next item, please.
Next item is BD 2, item number 210267, Discussion on Broadband Initiative.
Okay, thank you. Madam Manager, do we have anybody from the staff to...
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. This item is a discussion on our broadband program or initiative. This item has been in the discussion phases, actually, before this commission, probably starting in 2017, when it was actually being discussed, probably starting with GRU. But this item has been in discussion for a while. We've had six digital access committee meetings on it, starting in February of 2021. Today will be the fourth commission meeting that the item has been discussed. There was a meeting, a joint city-county meeting, where this item has been discussed, and it's been before one general policy committee meeting. So in all, we've had about 12 meetings around broadband, and I just wanted to put that, you know, out so that we understand that it has been discussed quite a bit. Magellan Advisors is the consultant that will speak with the commission today to talk about the business model scenarios that they were charged to develop and discuss with the board about the best way forward for the city if, in fact, broadband is to be provided. They will discuss three different business model scenarios, one around a scenario called the amenity scenario, the utility scenario, and a scenario that would involve the public-private partnership, P3, approach. They are available, Mr. Mayor, at this time to go through their presentation. They are pretty much ready to provide whatever direction the commission provides for them today. They will go back, refine that, and then submit a final report to the city in terms of how we go forward if that is the decision of the board. So today is discussion, and they would expect direction from this commission to go back and finalize their report.
All right, thank you very much, Madam Manager. So we'd now like to welcome the representatives from Magellan to give us their presentation, and then we'll have some deliberation.
Great. Can everyone hear me okay?
We sure can.
Great. Thank you so much for the introduction, Ms. Curry. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Courtney Violet. I'm the chief operating officer here at Magellan Advisors. With us today, we also have David Brevitz, one of our senior consultants on our team, who have also worked on this project. As the manager mentioned, we are here today to present to the commission. This is our, I think, fourth presentation to makeups of the commission through digital access and general policy committee meetings. Also, as the manager mentioned, we are really here to provide the information that we've been asked to go ahead and analyze and to model and to look towards you as the city commission to provide us some direction as to where this program goes from here. I just want to really remember or remind everyone why we're here. City Commission, several years ago, a few commissions ago, created objectives and a vision and goals for broadband in the community of Gainesville, and the primary objective was to ensure high-speed fiber internet services were available to all residents and businesses at an affordable price throughout the community, to close the digital divide, and to also support a number of other goals that you had outlined. Those are bulleted here. Some of those include increasing the number of successful, sustainable, and small businesses within the community, to reduce the poverty levels in the city of Gainesville, to ensure that everyone has fast, reliable, and affordable access to a community broadband, to support a diverse local economy, to attract new business that's consistent with the vision and targeted businesses that the city wishes to attract, and then finally, to support a successful minority-woman business enterprise program within the city. We think that high-speed, affordable broadband does all of this, just as you did several years ago when you laid out this vision and these goals. And really, this is why we're here, to help you understand what a program would look like for the city of Gainesville. We started our project last year in really early summer. We did review your previous consultant's report from CCG. That was also a broadband study. We were hired to come in and provide a fiber-to-the-home business plan so that the city can take action if it so chooses. In addition to reviewing the CCG report, we did do an updated market analysis within the city of Gainesville and surrounding areas. As you all know, AT&amp;T and Cox are the two primary incumbent providers within the city. They do offer a wide array of services throughout the market. Some of those are copper DSL services. Some of that is, a lot of that is cable service provided by Cox. There's also fixed wireless, and there's also some fiber-in-the-home pockets. What we'd like to point out here in this slide is, as you look at the Cox and AT&amp;T offerings, we've identified the price tiers for services. We've also identified the speeds that they're advertising within the market. One thing, as you can see on the left side under AT&amp;T, there is a somewhat symmetrical fiber offering that's available within pockets within the city. It does have a fairly competitive price, and that's $60 to $75 per month price range, but it does also have a few caveats, including price increases after 12 months, data caps on some of the services, as well as overages, overage costs when those data caps are exceeded. AT&amp;T services were available at five out of eight of the addresses that we analyzed. From a Cox perspective, Cox is providing a cable service. This is primarily a hybrid fiber coax system that is pretty ubiquitous throughout the city of Gainesville. It is capable of delivering up to gigabit download speeds. It is an asymmetrical service, so they are provisioning the services to maximize your download experience, and the upload experience is limited. In these cases, Cox advertises up to 30 megabits per second upload. There are data caps on the Cox services, and again, there are overages if you exceed those data caps. And Cox was available at most of the addresses, or all the addresses that we analyzed. A couple of the addresses had a higher cost than others, which was interesting. So one thing we want to point here is, again, while high-speed broadband, you know, is available throughout the city of Gainesville, there are a couple of caveats here. You know, one, the price you see or that's advertised, it's not your final price. Two, if you're a heavy data user, you know, many devices in your household, you work from home, heavy streamer, again, you may be subject to data caps and overages in your bill, which, again, adds to your bottom line and can increase the cost of services. We also wanted to point out that Grucom is obviously a provider within the market. Grucom has been providing its GatorNet service to end users and the student housing communities, really as a rental amenity for many years. Best effort internet services for businesses are fairly readily available throughout the community. Anything that is fiber optic related generally is a ICB, which means an individual case basis. Fiber, dedicated fiber offerings are not readily available in the business market. Generally, there are potential for special construction costs and other costs that can be passed on to the customer in order to connect to a fiber service within the business community. Again, Grucom operates under the same fashion when there's an interested party. Again, generally, there's a cost to construct, to connect a customer. That cost will get passed along to that end user. We then began to look at the data and the makeup of the city of Gainesville. You may have seen, you remember this map before. This map has not changed in several months, but we utilized several, several different data sources to create priority areas throughout the city of Gainesville. We used housing and urban development data focused on mode of moderate income households. We looked at household and various census block data that's readily available, latest census data. We pulled FCC maps. We also pulled NTIA maps, which is through the Department of Commerce. And then we also worked with the city to really identify the areas of the city and the neighborhoods that are a priority based on, again, those attributes and the data sources I just mentioned. We were really trying to identify those at-risk neighborhoods, at-risk populations, and worked to prioritize, really based on census tracts. As you can see, we came up with five priority areas. The first one is highlighted in The first one is highlighted in kind of an aqua-green. There's over 12,000 units within this area and nearly a dozen public housing facilities. Second location in orange included over 10,000 housing units. Area in yellow, which is centered around US campus, over 35,000 total units. Green to the west, over 12,000 units, and in the gray to the north and to the east, over 1,000 housing units. These are total housing units inclusive of MDUs and everything else. As you may remember from previous reports, and as you'll see in a minute, our analysis focused on really the single-family home portion of the community, as there is some complexities in serving MDUs. We then began to provide a high-level design of what a fiber-to-the-optic network would look like throughout the city of Gainesville. We did utilize data provided by Grucom, which included its existing assets, its pole lines. We looked at its existing backbone fiber and other assets that it's deployed to date. This is really an incremental build off of what Grucom already owns and operates today. So we did model two different scenarios, as the manager had mentioned. We also analyzed P3 or public-private partnership opportunities. But from a modeling perspective, we really identified two different models, or were asked to identify two different models for this project. One of those was an amenity model, as the manager mentioned, which included fiber being run and connected to every home within the service area, and that would include a fiber drop connecting every home and providing a baseline level of service, again, as an amenity, something that the city of Gainesville provides. And we'll talk about the structure of that model here in a second. We also modeled the utility option, which is very much, you know, how Grucom operates today, where there's a customer that has a need for service. If Grucom can fill that service, right, they expand the network, connect that customer, and that customer then pays for its services that it utilizes. Generally, under the utility option, you know, you are not estimating 100% of connections, right? You're actually forecasting what those connections can look like year to year and varying uptake based on what you think you can succeed. The costing here, on the right-hand side, is what we see as the total capital cost to construct this network, which includes 681 miles of new fiber construction, both aerial on Grucom's poles, as well as some underground. We did include a 20% contingency on those capital cost estimates. As you all probably know, material and labor costs for all types of construction are very volatile right now. Pricing for conduit, as an example, has almost doubled in the last about eight months. And so we did think it was prudent to include some contingency within those cost estimates. We also looked at enhancements to buildings and points of presence throughout the community that would be required to stand up a network. We looked at CEI services, such as engineering and construction management inspections, network equipment, both initial new systems required, as well as refresh, other general equipment that's necessary to stand up a utility, and then also your premise drops. We highlight this box, or we put a box around the premise drops, because this is focused on the amenity model, right, where we're connecting 100% of your single-family households. Under a utility option, your premise drops budget is going to be less. If you only connect 40% of the households, right, your premise drop budget is 40% of this number. So we've estimated the full CapEx for a citywide build-out is around that $140 million number today. The three options, again, that we looked at, just to reiterate those before we kind of dive into each of the slides, was amenity. The concept included the city-funded network build-out, connecting every residential premise with a 50-meg baseline service. This was a concept that was a bit out of the box last year as we started to look at how something like this would be structured. And I think at our last meeting about a month ago, we did report to the commission that we don't have any case studies of cities that have done this yet, especially here in Florida. There are some across the country that have done them in neighborhoods and small pockets, creating kind of, you know, districts, like you would have fire district for maybe a rural portion of Latua County. But since then, we have found an article recently from Wakulla County, Florida, and they are moving forward with a special assessment to fund broadband expansion, and they have done it on a number of neighborhood-by-neighborhood areas where the neighborhoods or the homes have opted in, and they will be assessed, a special assessment, to fund the broadband infrastructure investments that are required to connect them to a provider, and they will be assessed over a 10-year period through a separate assessment. The reason this is important within this model is it's a different funding source than being, you know, within the actual broadband enterprise itself. You're funding the capital expansion from a separate set of funds, not tied to revenue generation, and therefore, things like capital cost recovery, for instance, aren't necessarily in your monthly recurring charges for internet. So it's a bit more of a complex concept. It was interesting to see a county here in the state of Florida that is going through a special assessment process, which is really how the amenity concept was envisioned when we started this last year. Again, the utility version, the city or the utility would utilize municipal or revenue bonds to fund the expansion of the network, essentially building a fiber-to-the-premise or a fiber-to-the-home network across the city of Gainesville that generates revenue. That revenue and that service would fund construction of the network, and it would also connect customers that have signed up for service. So again, this is not an everyone gets connected. You get connected when you request the service and you receive a bill for that service at the end of the month, which pays for things like operations, debt service, renewal and replacement, and everything else that goes along with running a utility. From a P3 or public-private partnership perspective, again, this is a fairly new concept over the last several years, but the idea is that the city partners with a partner within industry. So this can be an incumbent provider. This could be a regional provider, maybe not operating in Gainesville today, or this could be an entirely new entrant, and the city partners with them and shares in certain items within that business, such as perhaps there's participation in the capital expenditures from the city's perspective. We see many cities and counties using art money right now to fund public-private partnership and expansions with industry. The city could take on part of the O&M. The city or GRU, Grucom, could lease part of its existing assets or its existing fiber infrastructure. The city can generate revenue, right, or the city can push all the responsibilities off to the partner and not seek any part of that revenue. There's a lot of different ways to structure a P3, as I'm sure you can imagine, and it really depends on, you know, the partners that are out there and what they are willing to do. We are not, I'm not going to go through all the pros and cons of each of these. These were taken from the previous presentation where we spoke to a number of these, but we wanted you to understand the pros and cons with each of the models that we are digging into. As far as the outcomes from some of this modeling, I'm going to focus from left to right of the slide. We modeled the amenity and the utility model through our financial tool, and we've developed outcomes or outputs to support, you know, your deliberations. Both under the amenity and the utility model, it does require about 681 miles of new fiber that is built out across the five priority areas. On the amenity side, we modeled about 32,000 households, again, excluding MDU and, you know, campus residential buildings and whatnot. We only focused on the single-family home and the residents within Gainesville. On the utility model, we also incorporated your business community and modeled business services as part of that scenario. As we look at the amenity offering, again, we modeled about 50% of those taking the amenity or the free service. We assumed that another 50% or the other 50% would take a paid service, right? 50 megabits is barely above the definition of broadband today. As you review treasury guidance and all of these other funding opportunities that are coming out, right, they're charging 100 meg, you know, plus, and so we assumed about 50% of your subscribers would pay for something higher than 50 meg, and you would also be able to cell phone service on top of that. As you can see, within the amenity model, total CapEx is just over $120 million. There is zero total debt that is tied to the broadband utility because, again, we assume funding through a special assessment or some other funding source. The amenity model does require about $8 million in working capital until you generate free cash flow over the first few years. And again, after 20 years, one of the metrics we look at is what is the free cash or cumulative free cash that's in the system and available over that 20-year period? And so with about 50% of your subscribers actually paying for a paid service, there's about $30 million left free cash in the utility after 20 years. As we look at the utility model, we identified a breakeven take rate of about 45% residential, 10% business. The total CapEx is about $106 million. We did assume a contribution of about $9 million from ARCA. We believe that's what we've been, the guidance we've been given over the last several months. Total working capital is higher in this model, so it's about $25 million in working capital. And again, this is a breakeven scenario at 45% residential, 10% business, generating about $8.4 million in free cash flow cumulative over that same 20-year period. We did not model any financials for a public-private partnership, but we did think it was important for you to understand at least how these could be structured. And we had provided a number of case studies in our last presentation a few weeks ago that aimed to really help you understand how some of the cities that we've worked with have structured P3s. In some cases, again, there's shared costs, as you can see here, under a city-funded partnership. The city is really funding a lot of the capital expense and even some of the operations and maintenance of the assets over term. And under that type of scenario, right, your partner is leasing those assets from you. You're generating revenue from leasing those assets, possibly generating some revenue from a revenue share if that's part of the deal. Under a partner-funded partnership, where you're really just looking to attract somebody into the market, but you want, you know, you want to defer the cost and push the cost and the risk off to them, you know, they're not going to provide the city as much say or control within the project. They're not going to provide the city revenues. You know, obviously, they're using all of their own funding. They're taking on all the risk if they're on their own, and so therefore, the partnership really becomes slighted, right, to those who have the most to win and the most to lose within these structured deals. We did want to dig in a little bit to some more of the financials and the models, just so you understand some of the assumptions around these. We're going to start on the utility concept. We were asked to model residential-only, and we did that. I think you may have remembered on our last presentation, the breakeven scenario, as we look at just the residential-only deployment, was about 60% of the residents. This didn't include any, you know, business market or any business uptake for services, but as one of the council commissioners mentioned during one of our previous presentations, you know, it's clear that if you're building a ubiquitous network throughout the city, that the small, medium businesses and enterprise businesses are going to benefit from that. So we did run this residential model only. You can see the pricing that was incorporated in this model, about $75 a month for a gigabit service. This is a symmetrical gigabit, so gigabit upload, gigabit download. There's also no data caps, no overages, so you can basically eat all you want, and your bill remains consistent. Again, targeting about $75 a month for a gig. We did include a residential or a voice product, which would provide a double-play offering, so you have a package for internet and voice services. And as you can see, that voice package is about a $15 a month addition to your internet package. As we added in the business services impact to the model, we added in about 7,600 businesses within the market. Now, as I mentioned before, we've modeled this as an expansion of or a bolt-on the existing operation at Grucom. They're already serving businesses in some cases, and they're serving enterprise and even some small, medium businesses. So there is a portion of existing business passings that they already serve, although it is a small fraction of the total businesses available within the city of Gainesville. But what's important here is that you can see, as you add in business uptake, and so we've assumed about 10% of your businesses would subscribe, that's about 770 businesses, it does reduce the number of residential subscribers that have to take service in order for you to breakeven. And that's how we get to a 45% residential, 10% business uptake, and under that model, again, it generates about $8.4 million in free cash flow over the next 20 years. You can see as you vary that and as you grow and add additional business uptake, again, revenues and 20-year free cash flow continues to grow as you have more customers paying into the system. And again, the amenity concept, probably the most complex to explain, again, was meant to be just that, provided as amenity by the city of Gainesville, where every single-family home gets a fiber connection and a baseline level of service. We modeled that at 50 meg, assumed 100% of connections, so everybody gets a connection. And again, just to reiterate, all initial CapEx to build the network was assumed to be paid through some other funding source, a special assessment, or through grant funds. No CapEx or debt service would actually hit the broadband business model. Assuming 50% take a free service and 50% subscribe to something higher than free, as you've seen here, again, we are able to still breakeven and provide free cash flow over that 20-year period. What I would add here is, you'll notice that your one-gig internet offering is about $30 less than under the utility model, and that is directly tied to the fact that this model doesn't contain debt service, where revenues, right, would be paying the debt back. This debt service is tied to a special assessment where the city collects this and, again, pays the infrastructure investment portion. So there is no capital cost recovery or any portion of the network from a recovery perspective baked into your MRCs. In many ways, through the amenity model, you know, your residents are paying for the infrastructure investments, again, over that 10-year period through a special assessment mechanism, and that reduces the monthly recurring charges for not only that 10 years, right, but really for in perpetuity. We took the case study slides that we provided in our last presentation, and we thought it was a great way to convey the story really against some timelines. And so on the left side of this slide, we have fiber-to-the-home case studies. On the right hand, we have P3 or public-private partnership case studies, same case studies we presented to you before, but we thought the story was a little more meaningful as you had it charted out across a timeline. So from a fiber-to-the-home perspective, you know, cities have been deploying fiber-to-the-home now for decades, and as you look at the city of Ocala, really getting started back in 1995, you know, you'll notice that that really parallels the city of Gainesville in many ways. We'll remind you, the city of Gainesville through Grucom became certified by the PSC in the mid-to-late 90s. The vision by the city and GRU at the time to build telecommunications and begin providing that as a service was very visionary 20-plus years ago. That status still follows you today, as the city of Gainesville has been an active telecommunications provider since then, providing and growing its lines of service. As you can see here, again, in 95, the city of Ocala started really to connect its SCADA operations and to replace, you know, old copper network that supported its SCADA operations. It then began to expand, connecting community anchor institutions throughout the city of Ocala. Again, very similar steps and process that Grucom has taken. About five years ago, the city of Ocala began to expand into residential services, and again, today, you know, they're serving about 2,500 residential subscribers in four neighborhoods across about 850 miles they've deployed. City of Palo Alto, another city we're working with, began the same process around 2000. They've had a dark fiber leasing program for the last 20 years, and that fund has grown to about $30 million over that 20-year period. So they have taken their free cash they've generated over that 20-year period. It's grown to 30 million, and today, they are in full design for fiber-to-the-home deployment, and they will be completing that design this year in 2022. Chattanooga, another, you know, great story. Obviously, they got started early on. They've been providing service for about the last 10-plus years, and again, just last year or two years ago, they reported they have connected more than 100,000 customers on their network. So great things happening. Lots of cities are going down this path or have gone down this path, while there have been some that have had been some that have had issues and even a few failures here and there. We do see, again, that many of the fiber-to-the-home providers that are out there today in the municipal space, ones we've identified here and hundreds others, are providing services today and are really having these same deliberations as to how they expand and continue expanding within their communities. From a P3 perspective, this is a fairly new concept. We've been working in P3s for about the last five years, and a P3 is a public-private partnership. In 2018, the city of Rancho Cucamonga, California, this is in Southern California, signed a P3 agreement with a company named Inyo Networks. Inyo is now providing residential and business services throughout the city of Rancho. Within that agreement, the city of Rancho Cucamonga, which is an electric utility as well, funds all CapEx. They funded the construction of a data center, they fund all equipment, and they light that equipment. The partner manages and oversees the entire network, handles all operations as it relates to sales and marketing and customer management. And through this partnership, Inyo Networks provides the city with 50% gross revenue, gross revenue share on every dollar they generate from the data network. So the partner provides 50% of gross revenues on data and internet services to the city. The partner keeps all revenues that are generated from voice and video services, which they originate. City of Lakeland, just down the south to you, recently entered into a P3 agreement with Summit Broadband. They too developed a fiber-to-the-home business plan over the last five years, city of Lakeland, through Lakeland Electric, and they were approached about two years ago now by Summit Broadband to partner. Lakeland leased access to all of its existing fiber optic cables. It also built out a couple of new segments and enhanced the few segments that were lacking. And for that, Summit currently pays the city about $144,000 a year for lease of access to those facilities. However, they will also, they will pay a 10% revenue share once the revenues in the network grow and the revenue share exceeds their lease payment. So again, city of Lakeland is pretty hands-off, is leasing their assets to Summit, and Summit is the provider within that market. Last one, we pointed out was the city of West Des Moines, Iowa. They recently signed a P3 agreement with Google Fiber. Again, city of West Des Moines is funding the entire CapEx, all conduit construction boxes, and they are making conduit system available for lease, not only to Google Fiber, but on a non-discriminatory basis to any and all providers that want to utilize those assets. So we think this is helpful, or we hope this is helpful, you know, laying how some of these cities have approached this, really over the last decade. And as you can see, this is a program. This is not a one-time investment. This is really a program that, when you embrace it, again, you need to fund it, operate it, and really make sure you have a sustainable enterprise for the duration. We thought it was important to just discuss some of the funding options review for any of the projects you take on related to broadband. You know, obviously, municipal revenue bonds are out there and available. City finance and city legal and others, obviously, need to get involved as you begin to look at how you would finance a project if it goes down that path. Special assessments are another something that is very common within the state of Florida and others. We didn't get a ton of time to spend with finance to talk through how special assessments would work in the city of Gainesville. However, Waculla County did publish a benefits document that outlines how they are assessing their homeowners and what the benefits are to the properties that will receive that special benefit. That can be used, I think, as an outline really for the city of Gainesville or any other local government in the state of Florida where a special assessment may make sense. We did provide that documentation to the manager and her team as well. State of Florida is gearing up to begin processing and providing grants for broadband infrastructure. There is, I believe, a minimum of $100 million that the state is going to make available through DEO to fund broadband in the state. That number will likely be a lot higher than 100 million, but we are waiting for details as they're slowly creeping out of DEO. And then obviously, there's just a ton of visibility on all the federal programs that are currently available. As we saw over the last couple of years, CARES funded broadband, we had EDA and other programs fund broadband. Today, you know, we're looking at what's out there as it relates to ARPA. You know, obviously, the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery fund was established last year. All municipalities, local governments received their first tranche last year and will receive another this year. That funding is available to fund broadband and other capital investment, other capital projects related to water and other infrastructure. The other item that we have our eyes on right now is obviously the 1.2 trillion funding that is coming through the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. There are lots of different funding programs that focus on broadband, on digital equity, and have numerous programs that have been developed through different agencies of the federal government that will be releasing details in the very near future. We do expect some of these, for instance, like the BEED program, which will have about $42 billion to fund broadband equity, access and deployment. They should release the first notice of funding here in May, so just within the next 60 days. So these programs are forming, we're going to start seeing guidance here come soon. And, you know, just like every other city and county and local government, city of Gainesville should figure out how it's going to position itself to maximize funding into the city. We did want to talk a little bit about digital inclusion as it relates to, you know, engaging the community and what the city can do today to ensure its neighbors have access and are connected and take advantage of any program that's available. So first, you know, we do believe the city should have a campaign to communicate all and any opportunities to its neighbors and to make targeted investments when necessary. We did communicate with many stakeholders throughout the community, and obviously, the city is part of conversations ongoing as it relates to things like broadband and digital equity. The city should continue its work with library and Elatua schools, they have the same issues, same at-risk populations, and again, should establish some consistent messaging as to how you're going to organize and communicate around these items. We do also want to point out, and this was brought up at the last meeting by one of your incumbent providers, there are subsidy programs out there today, like the Affordable Connectivity Program or the ACP, which was signed into law several months ago, that do provide a $30 monthly subsidy towards broadband services. This program is available today to any, any person within the city of Gainesville that meets the criteria. There are also subsidies to fund devices if a family or household does not have or cannot afford a device. These are programs that are available, and, you know, the city should be messaging and creating communications around these so that your neighbors understand and take advantage of every opportunity available. As I think the incumbent said, there is an opportunity for a low-income family to receive free internet service when you're paired up with the subsidy programs the federal government has enacted. We also think the city has a role in developing and supporting programs that build digital skills, right, for all age groups and ethnicities of your population, and that you continue to make targeted investments where appropriate, deploying free Wi-Fi at your facilities and your sites and important public spaces throughout Gainesville, and to fund fiber and wireless systems that provide fast, reliable and affordable internet under the right model, again, where Beyond fiber-to-the-home, we did model a few other alternative deployments that we think the city could consider. Obviously, looking at limiting the deployment to perhaps only a priority area that's most in need, focusing your efforts or your funding only in that area that has a demonstrated need, perhaps as a pilot project, and then expand, you know, the, expand as opportunities arise. We also talked a little bit about a wireless deployment, again, that's possibly, could be structured to focus in on a priority area, again, where demonstrated need is. This could be a fixed wireless broadband solution that would provide, you know, a limited access service. This isn't meant to be a gigabit service that is comparable or competitive with anything provided in markets today, but more of a lifeline, a basic access service that, you know, really could eliminate the need to deploy MiFi devices at your library or your schools for low-income households. These wireless deployments we see are, are happening throughout the United States. San Antonio Independent School District just announced last year that they are deploying a private LTE system that is structured to provide, again, last-mile access into the school district. We think in these types of solutions, a partnership with Gainesville Library or Elatua Schools makes a lot of sense, and again, that it is very focused on areas of demonstrated need. And then lastly, the concept of a special assessment for broadband improvements. We would just point to the, again, Waculla County example. Under this, you know, under any special assessment within the state of Florida, as you may or may not know, properties must receive a benefit, and those benefits must exceed the amount of the assessment. The assessments must be fairly and reasonably allocated to properties in proportion to the special benefits, such as per equivalent residential units. The county of Waculla stated in their study that high-speed fiber increases value of property by 3% to 5%, or more than $5,000 per home, which is how they arrived at their benefit. I believe they are assessing about $1,300 or $1,400 per household, right, over that 10-year period. Cities and counties can utilize this special assessment, in fact, many use it on a regular basis. City of Long, or the town of Longbode Key just a few years ago, used the special assessment process to underground all of FPL's facilities on the island. Again, assessing a private benefit or benefit to every, every property that was assessed. From a perspective of what would a, you know, wireless overlay look like, this is really a focus area, looking at priority one area. In this case, you can see we identified about seven towers that would be required to serve over, you know, the 13,000 residential premises in this area. As you can see, wireless deployment is generally much less expensive than a fiber deployment. However, the components generally have to be replaced more regularly. Most wireless components have a seven- to 10-year life cycle, and so you'll have a renewal and replacement schedule about every seven to 10 years on major components. But again, this is a way to provide a wireless internet service as more of a last resort in an area of demonstrated need, perhaps. Much different cost structures, both from a capital and operating perspective. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Dave Brevitz to discuss any of the regulatory issues we reviewed during this project. Dave?
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. The area we've been discussing fiber-to-the-home is characterized by, it's under a regulatory regime, and as we know, 25 years ago, GRU was granted a telecommunications certificate by the Florida Public Service Commission under the regulations that pertained at the time. So Grucom has been providing telecommunications services, internet services since 1996, or for 25 years. Subsequent to that time, the legislature passed a law which restricted the provision of telecom services by cities, counties and municipalities. It's a section known as FS 350.81. That law did exempt cities that were already providing telecommunications at that time from many of the most onerous provisions of the statute. So GRU and Grucom is, at this point, exempt from certain provisions of the FS 350.81 with regard to business planning and certain other obligations. This was a conclusion that we've reached and that CCG had reached in its report as well. So you can see there are, it's bulleted out in two sections. The waiver provisions or the exemptions provide relief from the most onerous obstacles such as a very, very structured series of public hearings and so forth, mandatory disclosure of business plan items unlike what any other provider would have to do, specific voting requirements, formal annual review requirement. So given the waiver and exemption provisions in FS 350.81, GRU and the city is not obliged to follow those procedural steps. But there are remaining provisions that, in my view, would be adhered to by the city anyway is good practice. And those requirements are basically proper accounting, separate books and records, properly allocate costs, use an enterprise fund, keep your operating and capital budget separate, and provide for review of financial results after four years of providing the service. So that, at a high level, is the regulatory regime that applies. Yeah, go ahead, Court, next. And so there are certain issues, concerns and risks that we're here today to have the commission consider, and those items include the legal memorandum that GRU and the city attorney's office had previously provided on this. I think you have a copy of that. There is a risk factor potentially that if Grucom was to begin providing fiber-to-the-home, that might trigger applicability of ad lorm taxes. Financing source, where's the money come from? Courtney mentioned that a little bit ago. And then the consideration about GRU's existing debt, what GRU's views on expansion in fiber-to-the-home is. And what we view as being critical is that it needs to be included and implied that the staff reorganization plan created by Grucom and the voice services business plan need to be implemented to provide a proper foundation for embarking on a fiber-to-the-home Court?
Thanks, Dave. So just to reiterate kind of where we've been and where we are today, we did meet with the Digital Access Committee back in January 10th. We met with city's policy, the policy committee, January 27th. We are here today presenting to the commission as a final presentation and really to determine next steps. And as the mayor, the manager had mentioned earlier, upon conclusion of today's commission meeting, we will go ahead and complete all documents and deliverables and submit those to the manager here within the coming weeks. We're really looking for the commission to, you know, obviously deliberate this a bit and provide us feedback. Our goal is to understand what your vision is and what the city of Gainesville should do as it relates to developing a broadband program and digital inclusion policy. Some of the questions that we have and some of the direction that we look forward to receiving from the commission include thoughts and decisions on the type of infrastructure and the type of business plan that makes sense for the city of Gainesville, whether that is a fiber or wireless option, whether that is a public-private partnership or something more direct like the utility or amenity model. We think there is obviously a discussion that needs to happen around what Grucom's role is in this, as well as what the city's role, general government's role is in this. Obviously, once some of those decisions are made, a final business plan, you know, we even recommend a survey of the neighbors before any major decisions are made take place. And then, again, depending on what those decisions are, the city may need to begin to take certain processes under 350.81 if it so chooses. Finally, you know, based on the decisions the commission makes, an implementation plan would look like this. You would essentially move into design engineering and permitting for a system or a solution. That process would allow the city to finalize its cost, to finalize its funding strategy, and to develop shovel-ready plans. City would release RFPs for construction contractors, implementation contractors to begin construction, and then upon construction commencement, the city would implement its business plan and begin providing services once available. Mayor, that concludes our presentation for today. Dave and I are here to answer any questions you may have. Dave and I are here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you both. I appreciate the thorough presentation, and we'll first turn to Commissioner Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. First want to thank Magellan, advisor, and all the staff working on this. I also want to thank a lot of neighbors who emailed the commission too with their support for the city moving forward with a, with a city-run internet. I want to start off with some excerpts from an op-ed written by myself, Commissioner Ward, and Commissioner Areola that we wrote a few years ago while serving on the Digital Access Committee. Starting here, "There was a time when having electricity or telephone line connected to a home or business was a luxury, but both quickly became necessary tools in 20th-century life, commerce, and education. Here in the 21st century, robust, affordable broadband internet connection is no longer a luxury. As with electricity and phones, success in any endeavor now often depends on your ability to connect with the rest of the world from your desk at work or your kitchen table at home." Later in the op-ed, we wrote, "What will success look like? Imagine Gainesville a place where every child can complete their homework from their kitchen table instead of having to arrive at school early or stay at a library late. Imagine Gainesville a place where entrepreneurs and existing businesses flock because the tech infrastructure is already in place and ready for them to use. Imagine Gainesville a place where every family's connection to the world is as robust and complete as any other, no matter their neighborhood. That's the goal. That's what the most connected city in America looks like. What would failure look like? Failure would look like not trying. Failure would be the cost of all the children whose education needs we are unable or unwilling to meet and all the businesses that never considered locating in our city. Not every city in America is willing to do what it takes to be connected at the level that is necessary in the 21st century. Your city commission has made the priority of achieving success in this regard, and we believe Gainesville has the potential and the will to deliver that opportunity for success to all of our residents." That was written a few years ago, and I think one of the kind of telling things was COVID happened a couple of years after that was written. And we saw a lot of those concerns come true, of children being educated and people being left out of an internet connection. While I, so moving forward, while I believe, I think, a city-run internet, a total citywide rollout is the best approach, and we're probably, us bringing around $63 million in revenue or in profit over that time. I know there are some commissioners who have concerns about, about that, and I think there is a good compromise, a middle ground, where we move forward on the priority one area that is mostly in District One, and where it is, where the help is most needed. And that priority one area, move forward as a, as a utility model. This would allow us to pilot a residential rollout using the ARPA funds that are already dedicated, and this would produce little risk, since it would be the federal funds building the infrastructure, and that's where larger risk is, is that initial outlay of dollars. This will bring in money to the city, helping to reduce the needs that we have, the utility and on property taxes. It will lower the cost of living substantially. According to studies, it could save around $419 a year. That's a lot of money for a family. That would, that would be the same thing if we wanted to lower electricity rates by 27% for families. It's also something our city neighbors have asked for in neighborhood surveys. They, they don't want internet monopoly. They want a city-run choice for internet connectivity, and they want to be able to, to have that. I think this pilot would allow us to, to start moving forward. A future commission could decide to, to move forward for this whole city, but at least would give us the ability to help our residents start the process and also help building revenue for the city as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the three words that I have consistently used since 2017 about broadband is that I want it to be robust, affordable, and universal. I don't mean 85% Gainesville has access. I don't mean 90%. I don't mean 88%. I don't mean 99%. I mean 100%. I mean, everybody should have access to this, and it's a utility at this point. Used to be nice to have internet, but you can't, children can't do their homework, kindergartners can't do their homework without broadband. And I'll promise you that the kid who is doing homework on mom or dad's cellphone is not achieving the same result as the kid who's doing it on an actual computer. We know these things. So what are we trying to achieve? What I want to achieve here is universal first. That, that's my, my goal. Just trying to be as transparent as possible here. I'm less concerned with, with a business model, with, with trying to compete with anyone. I want to make sure that everybody has access. The priority one area is absolutely where we should be looking. And I'll tell you, I'm, I'm very interested in, in something that we got sidetracked on, got sidetracked from and stopped talking about a while back when COVID came around, which was the wireless systems. That really does provide universal access. Wireless systems in public housing, apartment buildings, wireless systems in neighborhoods who don't have access otherwise are some of the most cost-effective ways to achieve that universal approach. I'm also very aware, and I'm just putting a lot of different ideas out here, I'm not interested in doing a, putting a motion on the table, I just want to put ideas out there. We know that we have $9.6 million set aside, put on a shelf from ARPA for this, for broadband. What we don't have, other than through a substantial piece of set aside for nonprofits, is housing money. So I'll tell you right now, I think we should move a substantial piece of that $9.6 million to housing. Part of the reason for that is that $9.6 million doesn't move us very far down the road toward robust, affordable, and universal broadband. We can take some of that $9.6 million, $3 million, let's say, and do a lot of good with a wireless approach in priority area one, priority one area wireless overlay. Maybe a little more robust than the slide, which is slide number 15, I think. And then have $6 million to do some real good with housing as well. Those are some of my ideas. I absolutely want us to pick something and get moving on this. We, it's been a conversation for nearly five years. We need to achieve something with this. The problems haven't gone away. There are private services that, that are serving lots of people. GRUCOM served lots of people already. There are some people who aren't served. There are a lot more people who are not served well. And there are programs, yes, there are very complicated programs that, that could help some of those people who aren't served well, who are unserved. But we don't need complicated programs, we just need access. And that's relatively simple to provide with a wireless solution. So I'm interested in hearing what everybody else has to say, what some of the, what proposals may be made. Those are thoughts that I have right now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Chestnut?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On this issue, I think in 2018, 2019, I believe staff did a report, I think it came from GRU, and they did not recommend GRUCOM taking on and becoming the internet, having a city-run internet. At the end of my comments, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to ask for our charter officer to respond as to their recommendation. I think this is too expensive a venture when we are trying to focus on our areas of expertise. This is not our area of expertise. We have in our community Cox and AT&amp;T who do this, this is their application, they do this on a daily basis. Instead, I would like to see us concentrate our efforts on affordable housing. I applaud each one of you for your commitment to affordable housing and look forward to working with you on that. On Tuesday morning, I had the pleasure of participating in the Affordable Housing webinar, which was very, very interesting. You'd be interested, Mr. Mayor, they used two words repeatedly, transect and density. So now I know why you appointed me there. But while listening to them, I heard other cities talk about how they were using their ARPA funds, and everybody is going, using these funds for affordable housing. Let me just share with you. St. Petersburg is putting 44% of their ARPA funds into affordable housing, that comes to $20 million. Sarasota is putting 30% of their money into affordable housing, that comes to $25 million. Manatee County, $15 million, that's 19% of their funds. So I would be very pleased if we committed 27%, 28% of our funding to affordable housing, because if upper guidelines are so flexible, we will be able to help so many people, we need that entire nine and a half million dollars to help people in our, to help neighbors in our community. It is difficult to use broadband if you do not have a house, if you don't have a roof over your head. Broadband doesn't matter. This whole proposal eerily, eerily, sounds a bit like biomass. So there are two concerns that I have, that's GRUCOM taking this on and the funding source. I think we need to work with existing partners in our community, and while it may be politically correct to pilot this in District One, I think what is more politically correct for District One is to provide housing. And that is where I'm committed. So if there's a motion coming forward, I will not be supporting it. I will, we're not allowed to have substitute motions, but I will put a motion on the floor for the nine and a half million to go to affordable housing. Mr. Mayor, could, could, could our general manager comment on staff's recommendation?
Sure. Real quick, and before you do that, Mr. Cunningham, I want to really be careful here. This agenda item is about broadband initiative, not ARPA funding, and so I want to, if we're going to be making decisions about where we put our ARPA funding, I want that discussion to be something that we notice and agenda and let the public know that we're discussing that and that we know that we're discussing it. So I, if, I want to keep focused on broadband. We can either support something or not support something, but I don't want us to go down a path where we're making recommendations for something that's not on our agenda today.
All right. And so the reason I did that is Magellan mentioned ARPA funding and using that money, and it's also been mentioned up here.
And so I think we can, we can certainly have a conversation about whether we want to use ARPA funding towards this or not, but not sort of outside those brackets.
I got you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cunningham?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner. So from a, from a GRU perspective, thinking of the utility options, speaking of the utility option, and I think, I think it's important for us to know what, what would be the objective of the commission, be very clear on what the objective is. With that objective, we'd want to engage in the discussion. So, you know, Magellan did this report, if we moved forward with the utility option, we'd want to make sure we have financial analysis, legal analysis to address. I mean, the Magellan, Magellan folks mentioned those concerns, which are concerns for GRUCOM moving forward. So, you know, the leagues, there's some legal issues that I think would need to be clarified, and the city attorney's office can weigh in on those. But then also the debt at GRUCOM would, is a real concern, something we need to think about. And then just looking at the financial elements of penetration rates and all of that to determine whether it's a good option to pursue the utility option. So all of those things are things we'd want to engage in much more deeply before we would want to move forward with the utility option. And our business services officer is here, Louis Walton, as well, if there are any additional questions, as well as the city attorney's office.
Thank you. Commissioner, did you conclude?
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sacco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, everyone who's worked on this. It was long before my time. So we've constantly talked about GRU and especially GRUCOM needing a revenue stream. This is a creative solution to that, not at the onset, but it can bring revenue. So I think investing in the utility is a good thing, because investing in the utility is investing in our community, while also providing a vital service. As Commissioner Ward said, this internet is not really a choice, it's, it's a necessity. And I will disagree with one thing one of my colleagues said. Internet does matter, even if you're not housed. Oftentimes, a lot of folks who are houseless or in transition, they need internet to find homes, they need internet to find resources, they need internet to find jobs, and that is, is really one of the hardest things, which is why a lot of our houseless community used to use the library so often, it gave them an access point to pull themselves out of their situation. So internet is, it's right up there with like food and water at this point, and I kind of hate that we got to that point, but it's here. To that end, I, I don't dislike the wireless overlay, I think it's a creative idea. Based on the map we were given, I'd, and this is too into the weeds, like, I would like to move it around a little, just to, to get better coverage from what it seems like, but I do think it, it covers a lot of areas that we know need better access, that we know need that investment, that we know need whatever assistance we can give them to move forward. That's it. So I like that, and I think based on just the model shown, if Courtney could tell me, the model shown is estimated only at half a million, right?
I'm sorry, that was for the wireless deployment in priority one?
Yep.
It was substantially less, yes, over half million in CapEx. There were some assumptions around there, around tower use and stuff like that, but yes, over half a million in CapEx for the priority one area.
For the, for the build-out. So, yeah, so just put it out, and then estimated by month is 16,000.
As, right, as our estimate, yes.
Given, given the parameters we, we put into the, the estimation machine, I don't think that's a bad investment. If we use whatever funds we have available now to build this out, it is a small cost thereafter that is a huge benefit to the community. I think that's something worth looking at. As for citywide, I agree. $9 million is not a lot to do all of this. I'm also hesitant at the idea of a special assessment or taking on any debt at the moment. I, I, I want to be conscious of that. To that, I really like Commissioner Hay Santos' approach of a priority one pilot. We can see how it works. Worst case, we improve the infrastructure. That is the absolute worst case, we improve the infrastructure. Best-case scenario, we improve the infrastructure, people have access, it works, it builds revenue, and we see that it can be successful, and we can use that as proof that this can work and move forward to build out the rest of the city. And ultimately, as Mr. Cunningham said, it's going to require legal analysis, it's going to require financial analysis, it's going to require everything. But when we have five, six different proposals up here, I'm not going to ask staff to do five, six different proposal analysis. So I think if we pick one or two and say that's what we, we want you to look at that, they can come back and we can, we can decide the way forward. But I think we need to give them one or two options to figure out today, and ideally with consensus, because otherwise we're just going to keep stalling, and that's not helping anyone. So for whoever does choose to put forward a motion, I am very much in favor of the wireless overlay, and I'd be in favor of a pilot in priority one. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Santos, do you mind if you, if we hear from Commissioner Duncan Walker and myself before you? Okay, Commissioner Duncan Walker, yes. Okay, Commissioner Duncan Walker, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too, I've heard, I believe at least one, possibly more of my colleagues express some concern about the debt, and we certainly heard that from our charter officer with regards to that. And I'm wondering, Mr. Cunningham, if it would be you or if it would be someone else, or if the complete analysis would be necessary to kind of speak a little bit more to how this project at this particular level that we've been discussing today would impact our debt over at Grucom. Is that something that you can provide just a little bit insight regarding at this moment?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I would say we'd want to do more, some more in-depth analysis to provide that. I wouldn't want to do that live right here.
I can understand.
We do have a significant amount of debt service in Grucom, and so we're not at a place at this moment that we'd want to take on additional debt in Grucom.
Right. And so a lot of work clearly has gone into this well before I came to the commission. Coming, however, one of my concerns has been the debt at GRU, period. And so for me, today, it's really hard for me to make any kind of decision without more information. That in-depth financial analysis would really make me more comfortable with being able to even comment or speak intelligently on anything that we even have here before us. I need the analysis. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Everybody, for the tremendous amount of work that's gone into this, and for good reason. The status quo is not working. And I hope that's something we can all, at least for a baseline, agree on. There are families, many, many families in our communities that don't have access to broadband, meaning they don't have access to the basic tool they need to learn, to do their work, to have opportunities to work from home, all of those things. And so it's, it's a critical need in our community, and the status quo is not working fast enough to address that critical need. It's working, and I, you know, there are programs that exist today that didn't exist two years ago or four years ago, but it's not closing the gap at anywhere near the pace that is necessary. So what do we do about that? I mean, that's really the question that's being put before us today. What do we do about that? And we were presented with a lot of options. So let me kind of go through, let me peel away the options that I don't think are realistic at this time. I don't think doing a citywide implementation is realistic. I haven't heard anybody that really has suggested that we do that. I'm not even sure that a full sort of fiber in-ground-to-every-home option is realistic using ARPA funds. In fact, and I, and I get Commissioner Hey Santos, the attractiveness of using ARPA funds because they're external, right? And so they're one-time, they're external. The risk of using them is relatively low, except for, and I think this is the point the Commissioner Chestnut brought up, the opportunity cost. What are we giving up to do that? And Commissioner Chestnut, if you go back and look at my original ARPA funding recommendations a year and a half ago, wasn't that long ago, but it feels like it. The bulk of mine is in housing, because I see that as the critical need as well. And, and so I'm, I'm simpatico with you on that, that approach towards what we, how we sort of direct our sort of balance of our funds. But we, A, I want to keep this moving forward, and B, I do think we have an opportunity to close some of that gap in our most underserved areas with a minimum of investment. So I'm willing to move forward with that wireless option, and I think that would be an excellent opportunity to collect data and see what the usage is and see how it's benefiting folks in schools. I would want to work with the school board and see, you know, are we seeing assignments turned in more timely? Are we seeing, you know, progress being made in critical areas? And sort of track that. That's important to note. And so I think there's an opportunity there. And again, that's a relatively small sum and a small rollout time period that I think would, you know, immediately help a lot of families that desperately need it. Beyond that, I do want to keep us working towards a universal solution. We are going to keep leaving people further and further behind until we have that. So I think there's a couple options moving forward, and one of them is a special assessment. Now, a special assessment is clean and elegant. We use it for a fire assessment. We use it for solid waste. It reaches a lot of households to provide a key service. My problem with it is I, I don't know if we would be able to design it in an equitable manner, meaning designing it so it's progressive in nature. And I'm looking at the attorney because I, your immediate reaction is sort of my gut instinct, which is special assessments don't work that way. If we wanted to design something that was truly progressive, so folks that were able to shoulder more of the burden, including, you know, many folks that already have high-quality internet, that were able to do that, and the folks that need it the most were able to get them that without a huge burden. And to me, that seems more probably like being funded through ad valorem. But I don't know those things. I, that's the part I, and I think if this commission gave direction to bring back options for a financing mechanism for universal broadband that impacted our lowest-income residents the least and our middle and upper, upper-income residents in a proportion that they were more readily able to absorb, that's what I would be interested in seeing. So that's, I think, where I am today. I, I, I'm supportive of moving forward with the Priority One wireless pilot approach, and I'm okay using ARPA dollars for that, because I think it's a relatively small amount that it will benefit a very large number of families. So that, to me, seems reasonable. And I want to keep moving forward with the bigger citywide deployment, because we, cities have done this effectively. We're not on the bleeding edge of this. So we have a lot of experience from which to pull to make sure that this works well for Gainesville, and I think it can be a revenue positive. Well, we've shown that there, that it can be a revenue positive model. It's just how we fund it and finance it on the front end that I'm not confident in having an answer to how we best do that. And I want to continue that research to, to get to that point. So yeah, I, I think that we have a lot of opportunity here, and hopefully we can keep this moving. Okay, Commissioner Santos, back to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, while it sounds good, fiber is the future. That's why everyone is building fiber. Cox is moving towards fiber, AT&amp;T, every single entity out there that does internet is building fiber. Fiber is on glass, and it runs at the speed of light, and until physics change, until we can do something faster than the speed of light right now, that is kind of our capping out. And that's why they're building it, because it's future-proof. Wireless, I think is a good extra, but it, it creates, there's a lot of issues with wireless. Connectivity, people will, because it doesn't reach everywhere. We have a lot of trees in Gainesville, and wireless does not like trees. It will create a lot of complaints, to the point earlier, you have to replace it. It will become a tarter, and there's no revenue from it. So using that as the only option, I think, is not a good path. That's an add-on that we want to do, is like an extra amenity. I think that's a, it's a good step, but I think it will create issues if that's the only path we go down. I don't think it will be the savior that I think some, that I think it might be. Two, us having, Commissioner Chestnut, you brought up experience, and us coming in. City of Gainesville's been doing internet to places for decades. We brought internet to UF, the county, the school board, businesses, multiple businesses I've worked for have used GRU. And to be honest, we are the most revered internet provider in the city. One of the, you look at apartment complexes that we serve, one of the biggest things they market is GatorNet because of how robust and how good the internet is. So I think we are a leader in that, and I think we have decades of experience in being able to revive that. You brought up biomass, and I do want to say that that was a private-public partnership. It wasn't the city doing it. And I think that's where we, we fail, and I think that's where the risks are much higher when we do private-public partnerships, because you don't have that control. And that's what happened with the biomass, it kind of got a troll, and we had to buy it out, and why it was so expensive. We had built that ourselves, it probably would have been a third of the cost. And also, even the fullest build-out of this, it would be about fifteen times smaller than the biomass plant. So I think it's a very different scale. Talking about debt, I think that's a very real issue. If we use ARPA funds, we don't have to create debt. It will automatically, the second we build it, we will be making revenue. New revenue will be coming in. And that revenue could be going to utility, or right now, the other utilities, electric, is subsidizing Grucom. So by bringing more money into Grucom and making them cash-positive, which if we don't, if we use ARPA funds, that automatically means the other utilities won't have to subsidize Grucom, which means that they don't have to increase their rates as much. So it is by bringing in revenue to Grucom, it reduces the rate pressure on our electric utility, which I think every single one of us has run on trying to keep rates down. And this is, I don't see any other solutions out there that actually do that, other than increased property taxes or drastically cut services. This is a way for us to reduce electrical rate pressure, be able to provide services. And by doing the Priority One area, it could be twelve thousand homes. That's a lot of people that this would touch. And so I'll put forward a motion and see where it goes. So I would move that we have the consultants work on the business plan for the Priority One area as a pilot, with a future option to kind of expand it citywide for a future commission. And the Priority One area, we just would use the max of the ARPA funds and not take out new debt. So whatever kind of area would be used with that. And then we also would do the wireless as well in Priority One.
Second.
Okay, motion is second to go ahead with a Priority One business plan with a further option to expand at a later date, use ARPA funds to fund that, and include wireless in that area, Priority One area as well. All right, back to Commissioner Ward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate what everybody's had to say on this very much. Everybody makes good points. I am not prepared to, to use, and this is not new. This is where I was when we first started talking about ARPA money last summer. I'm not prepared to use nine-point-six million dollars of ARPA money on this project. I am very interested in moving forward with Priority One area wireless overlay. I think that makes the most impact with the least dollars, and it keeps the conversation moving as well. So I can't support the motion, and I'd be happy to put forth a different motion for the wireless overlay if this does pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sacco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to agree with Commissioner, obviously with Commissioner Hey Santos. Wireless will have a continued cost every month. It is great to have. It is convenient to have, but it doesn't solve the problem. It is, it is a great supplement to what we need. And as you said, Mr. Mayor, you know, this is, this is a faster turnaround. We can get this up and going and help people now, but that's the same as a Band-Aid. It's going to stop the bleeding, but it's not going to fix the problem. The problem is people need high-quality, fast internet at home, wherever they call And for many reasons, we've seen where those priority areas are, and they're on the east side. We are constantly dinged, I'm going to use that word, for not investing in the east side economically. This is a huge investment in the future economic development of families on the east side, of businesses on the east side. This is what people ask for, and I get it. Housing is important. I was a housing attorney. I get it. But given the lack of material, given the rising cost of material, the rising cost of labor, I question how much actual help we could do to the housing situation with whatever amount of money we take away from broadband. I sincerely doubt, I wish it could be done. But here we have the opportunity to make homes, one, more attractive for people, two, more valuable to the, for those families who are there. It truly builds up those neighborhoods. Because it's one thing my Realtors, I was like, make sure, check out your, take out your phone, make sure the internet works here. Take out, come by and test it out, ask the family, look at the bills before, anything that's a public record, come look at it. Because if the house is in a terrible area where I can't get signal for anything, well, I'm going to have to get internet. Who's the only internet that I have here? Is it Cox, is it AT&amp;T? What's my option? Those are real choices that people have to make when they look for a home. If they have, and I've actually tried GatorNet, it is great. If they have good, reliable, already packed into their neighborhoods, that is something that will keep families there, that will help families stay there. And if they want to leave, will make their homes much more attractive. It's, it's a kind of investment in those families that will help them, but as Commissioner Hey Santos said, will also then bring in revenue. It's whatever you're paying now, you can keep paying that and have better quality. And I hear you on trying to find a way to do an ad valorem, but I agree with you, probably can't do it that way, because that was scolded once for asking. This is an opportunity we're not likely to have again. The other funding options for broadband are pretty unlikely to come to a city the size of Gainesville, because it is intended for rural, vastly underdeveloped areas, and for all of our needs, Gainesville doesn't qualify under that. I hear you on opportunity. This is an opportunity, and it's a good one, and it can do a lot of good. I hope my colleagues can, can see the value in that.
Thank you. Commissioner Chestnut.
Thank you. I've enjoyed all of the comments. I think that we are really delving into this issue and trying to address a problem for our community, although I cannot support the motion. Mr. Mayor, would you suggest, and what I'm interested in is getting the information from GRU. I can do another motion after this one, or?
Yeah, I, I think if this motion does not pass, I think it's likely there will be another motion.
Okay.
Because I think there's a desire to, A, do something, and B, get some information there.
Get some information. Thank you.
Commissioner Ariely.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. From, this letter brought back a lot of memories from January of 2018. Everything felt a little bit different then. But my opinion has not changed on what's going to be my final deciding factor on how we go forward with this, and that's going to be a business plan. If we go forward with, with this, we have to have a business plan that's actually going to work. There was, during our GRU budget hearing, I believe it was last month, there was a fairly, fairly stark position for Grucom that by fiscal year '29, you know, our CFO, our CFO told us...
our CFO, our CFO told us, we, we have to do something about Grucom now because by fiscal year '29, we're looking at some serious red. I think in the slideshow, it was like $27 million of red by fiscal year '29. Right now, it's not even close to that. I think it's like one and a half. Um, so something's got to be done. Uh, it is a valuable fiber network that has been serving the city for decades, has been world-class for decades, so um, I'm comfortable moving forward. I want to see the business plan. I want to know exactly what we're going to be offering through the business plan. And so until we have that, I'm not going to uh, I'm not gonna make a final decision. Secondly, I just want us to keep in mind that when we're talking about all of the community's issues, when we're talking about housing, we're talking about broadband, let's not get into an either-or. We have the funding, we have the ability, and I think we have the political will to tackle those issues. So I, I don't think that it's an either-or choice, especially here today. So um, I can support the motion, I, going, going any further beyond that's gonna depend on what comes back in the business plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jose Santos.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. And um, I think Commissioner Ariely brought up a good point. I mean, this is what, we're asking for a business plan back. That's, we're not making any final decisions and I think the business plan will come back in like a month or so. It's not, it's not very far out that they're gonna come back with us. Um, if we don't like the business plan of, of doing it, then we can reprioritize the ARPA funds. I mean, it's not like this is locked in, this is getting back a business plan and what would it look like with that? Um, and we can make a decision at that point. I, I think it's, I guess, can I ask the, um, Magellan, how long until you probably will get a business plan back?
Uh, Commissioner, we need a few weeks to wrap it up. We've been waiting for some direction uh from, from you all and from the manager's office and I think we'll have that by the end of today.
So um, a few weeks of, of waiting. If we want to not move forward with it, but let's have all the information in front of us of what it actually will look like, the numbers, and if we want to report, reprior, reprioritize the ARPA funds, we can do that, but I think it, this gives us a chance to actually have all the information. I do want to um, kind of make, on the, on the motion that uh, that we, we might pare down the priority one area just to include 9.6 million if necessary and not add any new debt. Um, so that would not increase debt to the utility, um, but maybe pare it down a little bit and that would give us a true pilot without putting uh the utility at risk and really just a benefit. I don't know if the secondary is okay with that portion of it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Cunningham, you wanna, uh, I saw your lot, but just get you in here real quick um before Commissioner Ward.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just wanted to comment, uh, so GRU Finance, we've not been involved with the business plan or any of the discussion. We, we would really like to be a part of that discussion, so just Magellan going off and doing that, I think it would create another step. So I mean, we would love to be a part of evaluating that with them and coming back. So that's all.
Without objection, we add that to the motion? That Magellan work with?
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're supposed to, yeah. Sorry.
Okay. Um, and while we've got you, uh, Mr. Cunningham, you, you mentioned to us you were gonna bring back uh some options for Grucom. It seemed like in about that same timeframe, am I still correct in that?
Yeah, so we still have not, Mr. Mayor, we've still have not gotten the report back from the broadband group, so we're waiting to get that report, evaluate that report and then bring back uh ideas and options. So I'm not sure when that's supposed to come back, we just haven't got that report yet from the broadband group.
Okay, it, it would be helpful for me to consider all of that.
All of that.
Sort of under the same gaze. Um, okay, Commissioner Ward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, could we restate the motion real quick?
Sure, it's to um, move, move forward with uh asking Magellan, working with city staff to bring back a business plan for a, for the priority one area, uh, which would be a pilot project. Um, and uh, max, ma, max out the area to be considered at, what, 9.6 million dollars, which is the amount that's sort of been set aside in ARPA, 9.6 million?
Overlay.
Okay, whatever that number is, but not, to not go above ARPA available funding um and then to include the wireless um deployment in that same priority one area as well.
So, thank you for that, Mr. Mayor. I, I, I'm willing to look at the business plan. I'll support for that, but don't expect that I'm going to support 9.6 million dollars for this when we, we have not specifically addressed housing. Um, I remain very interested in the priority one uh area wireless overlay and I'll tell you, there's some other things that I would like to see beyond that, but I'm not trying to muddy the waters here. Some of the greatest areas of need in our community are our neighborhoods like Phoenix and Pine Ridge, which consistently get left out of every conversation about poverty unless we're talking about them specifically because they're in different parts of the city. Nothing we've talked about today helps them at all. Um, wireless could help them because wireless wouldn't have to be only on the part of our map that, that we're looking at here. Wireless could very specifically help both those very dense communities very quickly. I don't want to add that to any motions today, but again, don't expect that, that I'm going to be willing to add my vote to 9.6 million dollars of broadband-only funding, mostly because it doesn't fix the problem. The number we need is inevitably bigger than that to run fiber to the home a, a, and then we would not have addressed housing. So I'm willing to support the motion to look at the business plan, but don't take that as a promise that I'm gonna be willing to vote for 9.6 million dollars of broadband funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Santos?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And just to clarify, there was also the portion of the um, of the business plan, so they would be the original pilot for priority, priority one area and then also if they wanted to expand later to do the whole city. We're already paying for it, so let's, let's get it to the.
Okay, thanks for the clarification. Commissioner Chestnut?
Commissioner Jose Santos, would you consider modifying your motion and remove the 9.6 million from that motion? Okay, well, I'm so sorry. Thank you.
It's sort of the Gretzky, you miss 100%, 100% of the shots you don't ever take, right?
Try it anyway.
Gotta ask, gotta ask. Okay, um, looking forward now to hearing uh from members of the public uh on this item. So Madam Clark, do you have anybody signed up for the broadband?
Yes, Nathan Scott.
Okay.
Yeah, overhead with streaming video and if they want to jerk things around, maybe I can make my point. Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners Nathan Scott. So with respect to the consultant's report, I have uh many concerns. Uh, this is a study was performed by UPenn in law. Of particular note is the footnotes, um, if you can zoom in on the highlighted portion. Um, the consultant's report mentioned Chattanooga and claimed it was a great story. Really, that's an interesting perspective based on this footnote. If you look at footnote five uh at the last uh sentence, projects that had their bond rating cut include Chattanooga. That wasn't mentioned by the consultant, nowhere in the consultant's report. You had Marietta, Georgia sold its system into loss, Provo, Utah, Danellen bankruptcy, Quincy, debt, 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 but none of this is in the glowing consultant's report, which means you're only getting a one-sided perspective with all due respect. What also concerns me was that the consultant um seemingly made conclusions of law uh with respect to section 350.81 Florida statutes, which the Florida Public Service Commission has jurisdiction. Uh, that also concerns me, particularly if the person's not a member of the Florida bar because um I don't think that advice could be relied upon. I think you have Ms. Bennett here, you have the city attorney. Uh, certainly ask for their advice in terms of what was presented. Um, again, the fact of the matter, and I think this speaks for itself, but the fact of the matter here is that Grucom is practically financially insolvent, okay? You've seen that the liquidity numbers, you've seen the reserve targets, it can't cover its own general fund allocation and it's subs, being forced to subsidize internet for houses that earn excess of $155,000. Um, it's not a good idea to burden the utility with this. With respect to breaching the digital divide, efforts should be focused on historically disadvantaged and marginalized neighborhoods in our community, Duval, Lincoln Estates, Lincoln Heights, Porters, Pleasant Street and East Gainesville, who've been neglected by the actions of the city commission. I have concerns about the free wireless internet overlay. Are we gonna do this for some, but not all Gainesville residents? You know, how is that equitable? What's the recurring cost to taxpayers? Um, as I have repeatedly suggested to this commission, the $32 million in ARP money uh should have been used to build affordable housing rather than squandering it on limited, uh, rather than squandering limited taxpayer resources, which is once in a generational gift from the federal government uh on broadband. I mean, you guys should really focus on this and I was glad to see the Commissioner Chestnut wants to reprioritize the 9.6 million dollars that was earmarked for this broadband uh back to affordable housing. You guys claim constantly you have a crisis. Use that money to solve your crisis and prioritize your spending and that's the problem with the city commission is you have grandiose ideas, but you, you squander money and now you want to tax us for affordable housing too. So you have, spend money wisely that you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Adam, do you have anybody uh on the line for this item?
We do, Mr. Mayor. We have at least three people at the moment.
Okay, I'm gonna kind of alternate here, so go ahead and let's take our first caller.
Excellent. Uh, Tana Silva, Tana, welcome back. You have three minutes.
Thank you. I so agree with Commissioner Chestnut, specialists including the professor at Public Utilities Research Center, as well as Nathan Scott, who should know what he's talking about and does, say, don't do this. City broadband isn't what commissioners are imagining and projecting and have spent five years talking about. Um, it would be a boondoggle for GRU and raise utility rates for everyone thereby having lower-income people subsidizing higher-income people. The private sector is nimble in ways that government can't be. I didn't like GRUcom, when, Grucom, when I had it years ago. I got out of it and I wouldn't use it again. I live in Pleasant Street and they, I do have Cox and the GR, the Grucom s, rates estimated for Hartwood are 55% higher than I pay Cox. The idea that it would produce revenue against private providers is pie in the sky and it's years in the future, if at all. City broadband is unnecessary and would only further encumber a city and utility struggling under reckless decisions. At best, city-run broadband might be feasible here if this city government had shown any capacity to manage its assets well and were in good financial shape and showed accountability and care with public assets and resources. Billions of dollars have been wasted on attempts at government-run broadband. A dogged insistence on city broadband has tied up resources and meetings for years in areas that already have internet service. That's not to even begin to figure what will happen in two years, much less 20. Using millions of ARPA funds, uh, dollars on someday maybe broadband is unjustified given the actually urgent needs now, much less looking at upcoming one-time funding. Use that on real needs, including vast GRU deferred maintenance burden for really essential infrastructure of wastewater and on uh changing septic as close as Spring Hill to uh sewer system. That's, I mean, that, that's a neighborhood right by Depot Park that's still on septic and has no natural gas, only propane. So funding and discount through already available and more are to come in ways to expand service through existing services. A lot has changed since commissioners insisted on pushing broadband years ago. Schools and state agencies have been pushed to provide internet to students in the past two years and the rhetoric that has propped up commissioners' insistence is the same baseless talk of launching into some big new venture to help the poor. Further burdening GRU would have, again, lower-income GRU customers subsidizing higher-income GRU customers and now the mayor is saying higher property taxes too. The lasting residents and businesses in GRU service needs are utility expenses, taxes, assessments and public debt. Thank you.
Thank you. All righty, next up.
Hold on, hold on, Adam, we're gonna alternate.
You're right, you're right. I, I forgot.
Next in the auditorium, we have Brian Eastman.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Commissioners. Brian Eastman, I am the founder of Connected Gainesville, which launched right out here in 2017 to advocate for affordable, high-speed broadband internet to everyone's homes in our community. And uh, it's been a long number of years we've seen, um, you, you guys have heard from hundreds of, of residents that really care deeply about this issue and want to see the status quo changed here in our community, which Mayor Poe, you spoke to very eloquently that our status quo is not working right now. According to the report by CCG that came to you all, we are paying some of the highest prices for triple play for broadband in the United States that they had ever seen uh as they were going across the United States. And the Brookings Institute made very clear in a recent report that the main reason for the digital divide is not so much access, but cost. Cost is what keeps working families out of being able to access broadband and the impact is tremendous upon the students and the families that do not have access to it. About a .43 lower GPA on average for students that have high-speed broadband versus those that only have cell phones, significantly lower college acceptance rates. Um, it, it's destroying the people that are on the other side of the digital divide, destroying their lives before they even have a chance to get out of their households. And that is why residents have been calling for this change for many, many years. Um, your neighbor's survey that came out that you guys do yearly showed this is the third highest issue for people. 76% Gainesville residents said that it is either very important or essential to make broadband available throughout Gainesville. Um, most of the folks that I see up here, uh, actually now, everyone that I see up here has uh ran on this issue when they were running for office. We have elected pro broadband candidates, folks that have talked about this issue consistently and um, that's why, you know, we've, uh, we just put up a quick link on, on social media telling them to contact you all about this vote and we've seen over 100 people have emailed the commission to talk about it. Um, this is something we have consistently asked for. It is something that we would like to see at least moving forward on the business plan, but really to use ARP funds to begin moving forward and connecting people to take that first step into municipal broadband, cause Commissioner Ward, uh, you said this problem is not going away and it isn't. I remember five years ago when we first started this discussion, um, there was a lot of talk, maybe a 5G would come in and that would change everything. Perhaps we'd have satellites that could connect and beam down internet. And five years later, we're essentially in the same place we were back when we started this. Um, we're uh, and if there's a time to get it done, it is right now. A slide that Magellan came up with that was uh, kind of got glossed over, but they showed that there were billions in dollars of grants that are currently available, of competitive grants, to begin working on this. So um, we have the ARP funds, but we also have lots of competitive grants and money that we could utilize in order to begin this expansion. We just need to take that first step into telling staff, this is something that we as a city want to do, this is something that we as a community want to begin moving forward on. And once you do that, staff can continue to go forward. So thank you, I hope you vote yes on this.
Adam, back to you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, Debbie Martinez. Ms. Martinez, you have three minutes.
Um, yes, thank you for taking my call. Um, details do matter as Mr. Nathan Scott outlined in his, outlined in the consultant's report and with his comments. I agree with um Ms. Tana Silva's comments as well. I especially want to thank Commissioner Cynthia Chestnut for all of her comments about this broadband issue and highlighting Cox Cable's expertise. Having city commissioners getting involved in this risky and costly project surely does look and smell like another biomass boondoggle. Why do city taxpayers always have to be the one holding the bag every time the city commission majority wants to gamble with taxpayers' money using Mayor Poe's um terminology, the so-called closed gap on national and global problems? Once again, I hear the city commission majority wanting to unnecessarily stretch city staff sin. Every time the city commission goes down one of these rabbit holes under the guise of just wanting to get a little more information from staff, almost always ends up in going all the way. City commission, city commissioners' grandiose plans like this almost always end up in a financial disaster that hurts the lower-income people the most. Thank you for taking my call.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Mayor, everybody?
Next we have, I think it's Jane.
Next, we have, I think it's Jane Burn.
Jane, are you out in the lobby?
I apologize if I am not pronouncing the name.
Yeah, she spoke earlier during public, general public comment, but I don't know if she's still here. Want to call the next person? Yeah, go ahead.
Shall I, Thomas?
Yeah. Welcome. Oh, gotta reset that bad boy. All right, so I just had a few comments. One thing, there's some discussion about the Wi-Fi overlay versus actually running fiber. I'm, you know, I'm a big internet person. I SSH and supercomputers all day, that's what I do with my life. So I'm a big internet person, but the issue with the Wi-Fi towers is you put those things up according to the current protocols, those protocols change a lot faster, right? So you have a kind of a two-moving-bullet problem where you have the towers, which are emitting the Wi-Fi signal, and then you have the devices which have to catch them. And likely, the current, I think the current cutting-edge protocol is Wi-Fi 6, is that right, Adrian? So we're at Wi-Fi 6, probably the netbooks that those kids are using, that they're getting from their schools, those probably aren't Wi-Fi 6 compatible yet, eventually they will be, but then there's a different protocol. So it is a quicker fix, it is cheaper, but it's cheaper for a reason, because it's going to become outmoded faster, such as something to consider as you're sending directives back and trying to narrow your options, right? Is consider how quickly these options would become outmoded and consider the future-proofing. One thing that I did want to mention, it went by kind of quick, but the Affordable Connectivity Program is an FCC program, and it applies to anyone who makes less than 200% of the poverty level, which is actually pretty, you know, we're at 40% poverty level anyway, so that's going to capture a lot of people. And it's a $30 a month discount plus a discount on a device. So Cox starts at 20. Brian mentioned, I think, that it's not, it's not availability, right? It's not that there isn't internet there, it's cost. Well, this would give them 30 bucks a month, which would at least get them on like the base level, probably not going to be great for Zoom calls, but they could at least do their assignments. So, and then all the city needs to do is just worry about publicizing that. I think that that's a great program to publicize, which is a much lower cost. And yeah, well, that's about it, I guess. But yeah, I appreciate this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Adam, back to you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Rachel Ianelli. Rachel, you've got three minutes.
Hi, I'm Rachel Ianelli. I'm calling in to say that we cannot afford this. You're spending the money of the people, specifically to Commissioner Hae Santos. You mentioned that broadband will save households money. Never once, through, you know, several children and all kinds of household changes, have I brought new technology into my home and lowered my overhead. That's just outrageous. None of my friends or family, who are business people, students, parents are bemoaning the fact that they don't have access to broadband, so I don't know who y'all are talking to. The other thing, for Commissioner Sacco, and also Brian Eastman, who's running, you want to talk about meeting on the east side? Could you be any more tone deaf or pandering? I assure you, Commissioner Sacco, you don't get it. The east side is not bleeding because of a lack of broadband. Y'all need to get your priorities straight. Thank you for listening to me.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
Kim Tanser?
Thank you. I didn't intend to speak on this issue, but I had some experience studying internet possibilities a few years ago in an architecture studio, working with Mr. Cunningham in a sort of Skunk Works group. What I learned was that there's wiring to all of these homes now for AT&amp;T and Cox, and as I recall, to add GRU comm fiber optics would be renting the poles that exist or putting up new poles. So, and if that happens, the people who prefer AT&amp;T or Cox can still get AT&amp;T or Cox. So unless you persuade 60 or 65, or whatever the break-even point of the people is to switch to GRU comm, you've got all three services in the neighborhood. So I think that's something to consider, and we also, of course, have cell towers, and we have decent coverage throughout the city. It's provided by providers like AT&amp;T and others. I think the problem is a money problem. When I tutored in Gardenia Gardens a few years ago, the kids loved to use the computers in the public spaces, and my sense was that they did not have access in their apartments, and I think that is a real problem. That's where the gap is. What will close that gap is, as others have said, using the resources that are available to subsidize internet for people who are low-income, to provide devices, and that includes computers as well as routers probably, and in some cases, to help families with digital literacy issues. So I think this is a money problem, not a hardwiring infrastructure problem or a new cell system problem, and I hope that you'll use some of the ARPA funds to pay to get people that serviced if they need it. One place to start would be to look at kids who are on reduced lunch programs and to reach out to those families and to give ARPA money directly to them. Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk? I'm sorry, Adam, got it backwards.
Thank you. Okay, it looks like Darlene Pofallo is here. Ms. Pofallo, you've got three minutes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Darlene Pofallo, with regards to what is being spoken right now, first of all, I agree with Commissioner Chestnut, that there's a lot more need out there, but I also believe that maybe if the city commissioners drop their costs for electric, the GRU bills to these people, and the ones that need the money, will spend less money for GRU. I can tell you my rate with GRU personally, when I bought $150 last month, and I'm sure there's a lot of people out there that are having the same problem. I think you should look at the GRU bills that you're charging these people, but also we can't afford this right now, but if there's other ways that we can help them, as Commissioner Chestnut said, I think that is the way to help, first of all, for affordable housing. Thank you very much for your time, Commissioners, on all you do. Bye.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
Amy Fantastile?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Commission. Just want to set the record straight on a few things. First of all, again, with the highest price, let's do our research and quantify. We talked about internet. We're talking about connectivity and internet, and as I shared with you last time we met, we have free service available through federal assistance and lowering our rates to $30 that's matched by the American Connectivity Program. That makes it zero. The Gainesville Housing Authority, every unit, every unit is connected to our network now. It is not an access issue, as this woman so eloquently put it. Everybody has access. It's adoptability and affordability. So our families, you could use your influence so well with our families to say, "What do you need? I need a computer. I need to know how to hook up. I need to, what to go to next." It is not an access issue. AT&amp;T, GRU, Cox, all of us have networks out there. We don't need to build another one. We need to know how to use the one we have. I would respectfully disagree with you that GRU is preferred. I again don't know where this research comes from, but I would tell you, we have quite a lot of very happy customers with our 99% better reliability. So I just, I just have a hard time, you know, when we're working so hard to be a good community partner. I would also throw out to you, instead of wireless, think about bulk. We are already wired there. For $9.6 million, you could provide years of active service for internet to those units, years of it, without any debt, and you could do it tomorrow. So let's get creative. This is what we're talking about on a partnership. Let's get creative and find a solve for our community, instead of creating more issues for our community. Remember, again, we're all connected. $9.6 million doesn't go as far as it used to. So I would love to work with you all again on how we can move our community forward. I think there's some great solutions out there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Adam, back to you.
Sure. Last speaker on the docket right now is Armando Grande Gomez. Armando, go ahead, three minutes.
Thank you, Adam. So, Mr. Mayor, I think where we needed to start discussion is, number one, is dispel a myth. Not all black people are poor, and not all white people are wealthy. And to the last speaker, I think she was talking about public housing and 9.6 million providing, not all people, or especially people of color, live in public housing. Get out of here. I mean, there is an infrastructure issue. I don't disagree with Commissioner Hae Santos, but I certainly understand the point, at least one of the only salient points up there, Commissioner Chestnut is making. We do not need to spend all of our ARPA dollars toward this. And as I've said to Mr. Eastman before, as well as to Commissioner Santos, we need to look at all federal dollars, which there are plenty. We need to be flexible in how we fund this, number one, but let's not kid ourselves. I'm not sure what Ms. Tanser was talking about. This is an issue nationally. The president says it's a utility. People in rural areas need access to broadband. People in many urban areas, not just Gainesville, many urban areas need this. It is a utility. It is an infrastructure issue. Heck, you can even ask Ward Scott, because he talks about it all the time, people in rural areas needing access. So I don't know what you all are talking about. Commissioner Santos is not wrong. This is not an either-or issue. It's simply, I think, what we're looking at, Commissioner Santos, is not taking all these dollars and making them and stretching them. At least Commissioner Chestnut is talking about affordable housing, but that's also a misnomer. We need to talk about all types of housing. And Ms. Silva made a misstatement about Hartwood. Hartwood is not being funded by GRU. It's not being funded to have access. And the truth be told, Cox is not putting in infrastructure in East Gainesville, or to one of your people said earlier, she doesn't look at east side or East Gainesville. Commissioner Chestnut and all of us, as black people know, anything east of Main Street is East Gainesville. Nobody says that crap. So I don't know what some of these people are talking about, pie in the sky, but don't make it an either-or issue. We can talk and chew gum at the same time. This is a utility issue, but we need to take our ARPA dollars, and I never thought I would agree with anything Rena Elisa Sacco says, but she is correct too. We need to do this. We need to do this because it is important to people to have access. So I agree with Commissioner Santos, but Commissioner Santos, we need to be flexible in our funding, sir. So reach across the aisle, reach across to Commissioner Chestnut. She's asking, saying, "Let's look at this together," not either-or. Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, it's you.
There's no one else signed up in the audit.
Okay, thanks for sharing your thoughts, y'all. This is clearly both an important and complicated issue, as evidenced by the hundreds of hours that have gone into this to get us to this point, and I want to thank the committee and staff especially for that work. I'm going to go and support this motion. I too want to see the business plan. I'm not committed to the funding source, but I need to see, you know, what it looks like to actually get this in homes, and then remain open to how we fund that ultimately. So with that, we'll move to a vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
That motion passes 5-2, with Duncan Walker and Chestnut in dissent, and we'll get this agenda for further discussion once. I'd like to combine this with the GRU comm analysis, if we can, and talk about those two issues at once, so I'm going to leave that up to you, Mr. Cunningham, to try to time this as well. Now, if it's looking like one's going to take months longer than the other, let me know, and we'll get to them in a timely fashion, but otherwise, if we can talk about those in unison, it would be helpful. Commissioner Chestnut?
Mr. Mayor, were you getting ready to move on to a different?
I was.
Thank you. So when will, do you know when we will schedule the meeting on affordable housing?
Well, it'll be part 317, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So around the corner, yep. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Next item is SR1, item 200877, text change. Delete the 10-acre minimum transect rezoning requirement, ordinance number 200877, and ordinance said the City of Gainesville, Florida amending Section 30-3.14 of the Land Development Code, Chapter 30 of the City of Gainesville Code of Ordinances, to revise the additional criteria for applications to rezone to a transect zone, providing directions to the codifier, providing a severability clause, providing a repealing clause, and providing an effective date.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. This is the second reading of an item that we heard at our special meeting last week, so we'll start off with Commissioner Ward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this item was, had been discussed by the Plan Board, by staff. It had not come forward, for whatever reason. It just hadn't become a priority to come forward. It fixes some things, I think. It offers some opportunities, but I'm not going to vote for the second reading ordinance because it was originally attached last week to a specific land use change. That land use change failed, and I voted against, voted for this to facilitate a process going forward, but voted against the land use change. So I kind of see this as it stands, as moot. The concept has merit, if it's considered on its own, I believe, and if proper presentation to the community has happened. It seems to have not been represented accurately by a whole lot of people. There are actually multiple possible transect zones, ranging from predominantly low to medium density, low-height residential areas to high-density tall development, just like any other zoning district. As applied in our Land Development Code, transect zones actually apply more strict development guidelines than other zoning districts, but again, they come in a variety of densities. The transect zone that was applied for in last week's meeting was a high-density transect zone. That would not be appropriate in most of our city, and it wouldn't be applied where it is inappropriate. The change being contemplated now in front of us this week would not speak to specific transect density zones, but rather to the availability of applying those zones and the stricter guidelines that come with them and a broader use. Regardless, it was attached to a project that is no longer before us, and to me, it doesn't make sense to move forward with it right now because not enough understanding of what a transect zone is broadly available right now. I'm not going to vote for it. We should have a broader discussion about the concept of transect zones outside the context of one-owner's land use petition. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. I think more than any other time, there's been a lot of, I think, misunderstanding of what this does. This makes the transect zones the same as every other zoning district that can be, there is no like a minimum acres for rezoning for any other zoning district. This is not spot zoning. If this was spot zoning, then every other zoning district we have would be spot zoning because you're allowed to do it on a quarter acre or 100 acres. Spot zoning is when we get to the actual rezoning, and I've heard that this will allow a 14-story building in the middle of a single-family neighborhood. That probably would be spot zoning. It would not be allowed under state law. But that's not what this does. It doesn't allow a 14-story building in the middle of a single-family neighborhood. It allows us to do rezoning, and I think Commissioner Ward said well, there's all the way from three-story, very small-scale buildings to 14, but you wouldn't put a 14-story downtown zoning in the middle of a single-family neighborhood. It does create architectural standards. I see there's probably not four votes to move this forward today, but I would move that we not move this forward, but ask the Plan Board to start the process over and to look at it again.
Okay, that motion dies for lack of a second.
Actually, I'll second that.
Okay. Okay, so the motion is, in essence, to send this back to the Plan Board for further discussion and consideration.
To stop this one and to restart with a new, not with copies, not with the private-initiated one, but one that was originally moving forward earlier.
Okay. Commissioner Ward, you are good with that?
Yes, specifically, we can have a broader discussion about the idea itself, not as part of a specific plan.
Okay, so I'm going to try to be as specific as possible for clarity of the clerk. The motion is to deny the ordinance, and a two-part motion, one, to deny the second reading of the ordinance, and part two, to refer this back to the Plan Board for further discussion and consideration. Is that accurate, gentlemen?
Okay. Commissioner Sacco?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So last week was not the first time we ever talked about transect zones. Pretty sure my first month here, I heard transect zone more times than I can count. So I asked, "What is it?" And Mr. Persons was kind enough to provide me the Giant Zone Land Use Development Code book. It is enormous, but I kept hearing about it. about it. I needed to know what it was, because it's my job, so I went and found out. If I was someone who wanted to know about it because I was interested or concerned, it is available online. It is available to be printed if you ask politely, and I think pay a certain fee for the printing process. This is not a new thing that we invented yesterday because it was a whim of some outside applicant. It was something that existed. It was a condition on the process that was arbitrary, and no one could remember why it even existed. I understand wanting to send it back to the Plan Board. You're going to get the same vote. Like, you're just going to make them do the same work again that they've already done. And there are staff that's going to have to help do that work, but more so there are volunteers who are going to have to have the same discussion again. I can understand the merit of sending it back for reconsideration. It's, I don't see it changing. And Mr. Persons, if you may, if you would, could you come up, please?
Okay, Mr. Persons.
Thank you.
Hi. Mr. Persons, you're our senior planner. Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Again, I've asked you this a couple times, layman terms. What is the benefit of a transect zone?
If you give me a second, I actually grab my, I actually have the definition, because we actually define it in our.
I'll allow it.
You can take the attorney out of the courtroom.
Sorry.
Not the courtroom, out of the attorney.
I'm allowed to ask direct questions here.
So the city's Land Development Code actually has two definitions, one for transect, and then one for transect zone. And so I'll read the transect first, because I think that's the general terminology, and I think what, I think one of the earlier speakers had shown a graphic, and I think that's what that's really kind of referring to. So a transect means a geographical cross-section of a region used to reveal a sequence of environments. The cross-section can be used to identify environments that vary by their level of intensity and intensity of urban character, a continuum that ranges from rural to urban. So I think in that graphic that you saw, which is a very, you know, very famous Congress New Urbanism graphic, which shows that transition. As it relates to what we're talking about, which is actually transect zoning here in the city, the city defines it as transect zone, or a T-zone, means one of several zoning districts in the zoning map based on the principles of the transect. Transect zones are the equivalent of other zoning districts, except that, in addition to the usual building use, density, height, and setback requirements, they include standards pertaining to the design and form of development. So I think, as we talked about last time, transect zonings are essentially zoning districts in the city. However, with transect zones, there are a whole host of additional form requirements that are more prescriptive than we have in some of our other conventional zoning districts. Things like our commercial zoning, our mixed-use zoning, if you've heard, like, planners talk about MU1 or MU2, or general business. Those are our conventional zoning districts that we've had for a long time. But a transect zone is that same type of zoning district, except for has all these other design requirements to come along with that.
Thank you, Mr. Persons. So it is the zoning we already have at any, at most levels, with extra benefits to the community.
Yeah, I would.
Or enhancements to the community and the space.
I would, I would say that, I mean, it has, those additional form standards are intended to reflect the urban character of where those things are being placed, where those zoning districts are being placed. So yes, there are, I mean, one could argue that there are benefits that come along with that. However, you know, benefits are a little bit fuzzy, you know, depending on your perspective.
Okay, that's fair. I had another question when I lost it. Thank you, Mr. Persons.
Sure.
I don't, I don't see this ordinance, I see it as inoffensive. It is deleting an arbitrary requirement. It doesn't harm neighborhoods. Spot zoning will still be illegal. Our Plan Board, and hopefully our attorneys, or hopefully whoever applies, already knows it's illegal and doesn't bother to try. And then we have a million ways to catch it before it even comes to us. This, I see this as a benefit, and I don't want to waste staff time by making them do this all over again with the Plan Board. It's already been done. You're going to just have to drag it out. And I get that it was attached to another set of application. I get that. My fear is, you do this alone, and without something to be upset about, a lot of people won't pay attention, because it's on its own. And then we'll be accused of doing it behind closed doors and not telling people. I just, we did it. We heard how people feel about this. We explained what this works. I'm not going to vote to send it back to the Plan Board. My vote would be to approve it on second reading. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chestnut?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sometimes when you take a second look at something, you see it differently, and that may happen, in this instance, it may. Commissioner Ward used the word robust. I'm wondering if we can advertise this differently, so that the public knows and is aware, and that they come to the Plan Board, that they participate, but that we get that public participation that perhaps we didn't have before. So I don't know how that would work.
Yeah, I think, Madam Manager, we can work with our communications folks to make sure that we get the word out a little bit more broadly. And I think all of the seven of us can play a part in that, just to make sure folks are aware, and maybe, you know, help drop people to the discussion that didn't participate the first time.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think we can do that. Thank you, Madam Manager. Commissioner Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm not sure I was clear. I appreciate everyone's comments. And what I want folks to understand is, if we go back and have a good, robust, public discussion about this on its own, and it just doesn't make sense, and it isn't something that works, and again, what we're talking about is changing, removing a 10-acre requirement. That's what we're talking about, Joe. If we go back and we have a good discussion about it on its own, not attached to a 14-story development, so that it gets muddy, and everybody still says, no, this is garbage, we don't want to do it, I'm okay with that. I have no problem with it. But I, I feel like it's something that could be good and useful to do, and we should have a talk about it, unattached to a project, so that we just talk about what it is. And I think that's what this motion does. I hope that's what this motion does. That's my hope for this. And if we go through that, and, you know, it's generally not something that Gainesville wants, okay. But most of the emails that I've seen about this, most of the communication that I've received, talked about how this is forcing a 14-story building on everybody. Well, that's not, we shouldn't think about it like that, because we killed, we didn't accept the 14-story project, or the zoning that would have allowed a 14-story project, because there wasn't even a project attached to it. So I'd like for us to just have a conversation about, not today, but about the idea, the concept of it, so that we all have a better understanding. And my hope is that through that process, we all become better at understanding the Land Development Code. That's what I would hope we do. Now, is everybody going to be an expert? No. There's a reason that people get masters and PhDs in planning. It's complex, and people have lives and jobs, and not everybody is going to become an expert in planning. But we can talk specific concepts through to a point where people who are interested have an opportunity to have good input on it. And that's my hope on this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So the motion is to deny the ordinance on second reading, and send it back to the Plan Board for further analysis and discussion, including a more robust or active public outreach leading up to that discussion. So now, Madam Clerk, I'll turn it over to you, for any members of the public to speak to the motion.
First to have Nathan.
Or the topic, sorry.
First to have Nathan Scott.
Welcome back.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Poe, Commissioners Nathan Scott. So I'm sure Ms. Tanzer can speak, and others can speak more eloquently than me on land issues, but I'm going to take a stab at it, because I was here with them at the special meeting. They're very intelligent, knowledgeable people. You had a room full of people that was in overwhelming opposition to the things you did, and you didn't listen to them. So I think that the ordinance should be denied. I'm not in favor of sending it back to the Planning Board. I think the Planning Board, with a former city commissioner on there, that aligns with a land use attorney and some other folks are actually part of the problem. I mean, clearly, people are not happy with what's coming out of the Planning Commission and the City Commission, but you guys don't seem to acknowledge that. I think the, there's a statement made by Commissioner A. Santos, not Coffey's proposal or something. I thought that was funny. I got a couple chuckles in the back of the room, because, I mean, we see what's driving a lot of this. It's not, it's not the citizens, because you don't listen to us. I heard another statement about benefits to the community. The community overwhelmingly told you that they were opposed to your land use changes, that they were opposed to your transect, and you did it anyway. And, you know, Commissioner Ward stating, oh, we need to have another good discussion. Well, when there's overwhelming opposition to the Land Development Code changes that were made by the City Commission, that you didn't listen to before, from hours upon hours, it went after midnight, you didn't listen. You didn't listen to Suburban Heights on St. Michael's. You didn't listen to Royal Park. You didn't listen to Neighborhoods on the Standard. And it's just like, you don't listen, because the only ones you want to seemingly listen to are the developers. So again, Commissioner Ward, you didn't listen to all those citizens that came. You clearly voted to have sweeping changes to the Land Development Code, draconian changes, as did Mayor Poe, Commissioner Sacco, and Commissioner A. Santos. And I think that's part of the problem, because you're hearing an overwhelming, resounding no, yet your mentality is, let them eat cake, we're doing it anyway. I think we need to vote for y'all out of office, to be honest. I mean, I wish we had a composition that was more inclusive, and more like Commissioner Chestnut and Commissioner Desmond Duncan Walker, because, hey, listen, look at the racial division on the votes, even on the last vote y'all just had, on broadband. Look who's in dissent, and look who keeps pushing these fiscally irresponsible proposals. I mean, you had a good, great suggestion to use money to fix your affordable housing crisis, but no, you want to keep rolling the dice and going down the path. So please deny this, but this doesn't need to go back to the, to the Planning Board. That's just wasting resources. You've heard a resounding no. Acknowledge the no. Thank you.
Thank you. Adam, over to you.
Sir, we have at least two callers on the line at this time, versus Tana Silva. Tana, you've got three minutes.
Yeah. Sending this back in the same circle doesn't do any good. To say that people are just discovering transect zones shows that the commissioner doesn't know the background. The people who spoke up two weeks ago aren't stupid or misinformed, and it's so dismissive to keep saying anyone who disagrees with an ordinance is misinformed. This ordinance didn't go through any level of public participation. It is spot zoning. The staff report says it is spot zoning. It's not, it's not a matter of so-called educating the public. Some commissioners clearly could learn more themselves. You heard from planners and architects, along with many others, who with a lot of other people, spent a lot of time in 2014 and 2015 in meetings, large and small, site visits, conversations, emails, and numerous hearings by the Plan Board and City Commission, sometimes block by block and street by street, on form-based codes, transect zones in central Gainesville. That was before the senseless radical overturning of governance in 2016 that pushed the public out of decision-making and ushered in a costly, technocratic bureaucracy of spin and buzzwords and disorder. Here we are, six years later, with the commission considering an ordinance initiated by private property owners that throws out the entire concept of transect zones. It is the opposite of planning. First, some people on the commission, the city, some people on the commission, the city has more than enough, sorry, the city has more than enough apartment and mixed-use zoning to last for decades to come. The transect zones are where commissioners and new urbanists and proponents say they should be, in central areas of Gainesville. This ordinance would splay them out across the city's nearly 64 square miles. For what purpose? The city has ample mixed-use and apartment zoning already, and it has been and can be adjusted as needed in an area of the city, not property by property. Second, unhinging transect zones to apply to any property of any size only introduces unpredictability to all property owners, residential and otherwise. The ordinance would unleash a flood of piecemeal rezoning petitions, starting with South Main, Depot Avenue, and the Power District, disconnected from the existing transect zones. In fact, the string fellows opposed inclusion of that area in 2014 and 2015 hearings, so the city didn't include the whole area. Preceding that also, the city had enthusiastic public participation in planning Power District and South Main that have been shelved. Already, the commission majority's so-called accessory dwelling unit ordinance allows three-story triplexes in all residential areas. And third, and most importantly, upzoning puts properties further out of reach of most owners. Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, back to you.
Next is Sharon Bauer.
Ms. Bauer, if you're out in the lobby, you're up to speak, but we'll go ahead and to our next speaker. If you come in, we'll just get you next. So go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Lee Malice, or Malice?
Lee, if you're out there, come on in. Go out to the next.
July Thomas?
Welcome back.
All right. So there's a point of confusion here on the 10-acre limit and why it exists. So just to cover this, first of all, the size of a downtown city block are square blocks. We have square blocks, and we have rectangular blocks. So square blocks are one acre. So 10 acres is meant to be a collection of 10 blocks. The reason for that is, if you go and review SMART code by DPZ, who developed the idea of transects, is that a transect is meant to be a collection of zones. The irreducible unit is a transect. The reason why we have a 10-acre limit is because you're supposed to consider the transects altogether. The idea here is to deal with zoning on a neighborhood basis, right, and consider the neighborhood as a whole. So one common refrain last week was you kept going back to the idea of, how is a developer supposed to get 10 acres in our urban core? How are you ever going to collect 10 acres? And I think it sort of shows the way that planning is currently being carried out in the city, which is that we're thinking of developer first, and we're letting developers take the lead and tell us how we should be zoning, and how we should be planning, rather than thinking community first, and putting planners first, and proceeding from there. So we need to decide what we want our neighborhoods to look like, right? Proceed neighborhood by neighborhood. And the idea of a transect, as you set it up, you don't necessarily call for an immediate change in the usage. A key part of a transect is that you allow it to mature over time. And over time, there's a process of reiteration through which the buildings are produced and reproduced, and feedback is taken, and you allow a neighborhood to develop over time according to the future vision of what it's going to become. So I would encourage you all to start to sort of think about planning in different terms. Think about yourselves not as working with the developers, but think about it in terms of you representing the people and making the developers work uphill, rather than making the people continually come out here and work uphill against you and the developers, because it's sort of backwards from the way it should be working.
Thank you. Adam, back to you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Pastor Michael Rayburn. Mr. Rayburn, or Pastor Rayburn, I'm sorry. I've got three minutes.
Thank you. Yeah, I came in person to speak, so you both have got a card with my name on it. But you guys rearranged the agenda and buried this to make it harder for public comment, because, once again, you're not interested in listening to what your citizens have to say. You're treating public comment as something that you have to get through so you can continue to do what you want to do. But you guys have got to really But you guys have got to really rethink this. You're not listening to us, you're not listening to urban planners, you're not listening to your own staff, you're not listening to anyone. You're just ramming through this overdevelopment. You're allowing gentrification to take place. You're, I appreciate Commissioners Duncan Walker and Chestnut and Ariola who voted against this last time, and I would just say to anyone running for office this next term, how you vote on this is going to affect your outcome. Voting for this is not going to help you because throughout the city, people are angry about overdevelopment. They're angry about gentrification. They're angry that you are not listening to us or representing us. You need to vote no on this if you want to have a political future in this city because people are very upset. I'm hearing it widespread across the city. No one is happy with the actions that you've been taking. So please vote no on this and leave transect zoning as it is in the 10-acre block, as July was just saying. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, before I go back to you, I just want to make sure everybody knows what they're voting on. The vote, I mean, the motion is to deny this ordinance on second reading, so a no vote would be to vote in favor of this passing this ordinance. A yes vote is a vote to deny it. I want everyone to be clear on that. I, based on Pastor Rayburn's comments, I think there's confusion. I also want to point out that this is the first time in my addled memory that we had no modifications to our agenda whatsoever. So there was no changing the agenda. We had, at adoption agenda, no modifications from the point it was published a week ago till today. So we did not change anything whatsoever. Okay, Madam Clerk, back to you.
Gary Gordon?
Welcome back.
Thank you. I want to thank Commissioner Ward for his initial remarks because I think they spoke very well to some of the confusion and some of the actual issues that came up the last time this was before you, which was less than two weeks ago. I'm torn about supporting the motion that's on the floor because I'd rather see the thing just killed instead of sent back to the Plan Board. So I don't know if Commissioner Ward is willing to go back to what he initially said rather than agreeing to support it going back to the Plan Board. Whether or not the people in the room a week and a half ago or now know the reason for the 10-acre, there is a reason for it, and it's easy enough for you to do the research to find that out rather than just saying, we don't know why it's there, it must have been arbitrary. That's, that's not good government. That's not good thinking. It's not logical thinking. It's not even, it's not, it's a little bit maybe creative thinking, but not in the right You are just voting on deleting the 10-acre minimum, and in this case, it would be sending it back to the Plan Board. The phrasing that Mayor Poe just said is a little bit off. If you vote yes, you're sending it back to the Plan Board. If you vote no, you're not supporting the change. You're simply voting against sending it back to the Plan Board. So it would still be before you if this motion were to fail. It's, you know, it's not a bilateral thing. So if Commissioner Ward would reconsider, and I swear, when you said that at first, if it were protocol, I would have walked over and shaken your hand for that remark. And he knows and I know that we don't always agree on things, but I thought it was, the remarks were just right on target. So I don't know if you'll reconsider and say, let's just not do this at all. And you're also in the middle of doing the whole land use and zoning anyway. So there's no pressure to even be working on this right now, one way or the other. Don't, my, my suggestion is, don't send it back for the Plan Board. If there aren't the votes to kill it outright, then I guess send it back to the Plan Board, and we'll have to drag ourselves out to the Plan Board meeting and drag ourselves back here to say, keep the 10-acre.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Adam, back to you.
Okay, sir. Next up is Armando Gómez. Armando, you've got three minutes.
Thank you. So I think, first off, another good place to start with all this is, Mr. Mayor, if I understood you, it's like opposite day, yes means no and no means yes, correct? Because you said if you vote no, blah, 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 and no means yes and yes means no. Is that correct, Mr. Mayor? For this?
He's currently out, but yes.
The motion is to deny the ordinance.
Okay. So I think if you, if the goal is that you're wanting to have this development, whether it be 10, 12 stories or what have you, I think it's probably going to be imperative to not only just look at the entire landing and zoning, but maybe look at where you're articulating and the boundaries of what you define as the urban core. Because this was, this discussion came up with the GCRA Advisory Board as well, and I do remember Ms. Silva coming out and giving feedback. But Lynda Dixon and Carrie Bush also spoke eloquently. We had a very robust discussion on this very matter, and I believe Carrie Bush once worked with planning and knows Mr. Persson, and she's also a planner. So to, I think another question that should be asked of Mr. Persson is if we're going to have these kinds of developments and what's going to be designed as the urban core, many downtown businesses are expressing to you, we do need to have more residential development in our urban core. We absolutely do. How that's articulated, how that's defined is important, too. Now, I think that was July Thomas, who was speaking earlier, whoever was speaking so fast, I could barely understand them, but whoever that was was speaking so fast. And I don't know, is it Pastor Rayburn? I don't know Mr. Rayburn. But, you know, this, the word gentrification is so widely used, and, you know, development for many parts of East Gainesville would be a vast improvement. So this thing about just gentrification, gentrification, unless we really know and defining narrowly to defining what gentrification is, we should just be using that term just readily because we just do it, well, anytime we have redevelopment, it's going to gentrify somebody. That's not always true. It's not. And so we do need to have development, but it needs to be articulated in areas it needs to be articulated in, especially if we're trying to improve our urban core, especially in densely populated areas. But I do recall at the last meeting, too, somebody bringing up the Arlington Apartments over there near the power plant, near John Kelly, about how it was good. I think it was Paula Straight and whatever her name was. She was bringing up how it was good, it was bad, it wasn't there, it didn't need to go there, but it's there. So you all might need to reconsider what, what boundaries are for the downtown urban core because clearly that's needed. Are you going to include parts of Main Street, Passageway Museum? That's probably going to be needed to do that. And I think it was Commissioner Ward or Commissioner Santos, I don't forget who it was, that Mr. Gordon was thanking or giving praises to, whatever. Good job, because we do definitely need to have denser development downtown. It is needed, but it is where it goes, not just anywhere.
Thank you, Armando.
And we need to have public participation. That's extremely important.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
Shane Byron? Thank you, Commissioners, and I appreciate you almost throwing it out, and hopefully you will. I think the bigger issue is, I live south, is suddenly we found out that East Gainesville were included in it and shouldn't be. And suddenly we found out that downtown as a zoning category goes all the way down to Southwest 16th. Something really wrong here because you've got, basically Depot should be the dividing line because you've got a beautiful park that has potential for really lovely housing and development, and I mean housing for people, homeowners, not just renters and highrisers. And then all the way there could be really, really pretty, and then you've got the Power District, which I went to the very, very beginning meetings on that. We had lovely visions. We had consultants coming from, actually, they're now defunct, but coming from Atlanta. We had lovely visions of a community, of people sitting on doorsteps, of looking out with their kitchens to the street. I mean, all of this was really lovely, and it's all got thrown away. So suddenly, is development going right near, south of Southwest 16th, there's suddenly going to be some, could be some massive highrise in the middle, right amongst trees, on a creek, on a city park? So what happened to our vision? I would love all the zoning to be changed. I really would. I'd love to go back, people to go back to the drawing board and say, what do we see for our city? So we have potential to have lovely homes and developments in all kinds of places, but this idea of transect zoning, I think it came about from throwing out special area plans. We spent god knows how many, excuse me, how many days on working on special area plans all over the city, and they got thrown out by the City Commission. So special area plans are where all of this transect zoning and downtown, all this zoning came from, is we had protected areas that citizens spoke about their community, what they wanted to see, and we, it's all gone. So please come back to thinking about neighborhoods, creating neighborhoods, creating housing that can be affordable, where people want to live and buy. So I just ask for you to throw it out, even reconsider what transect really means because it's a contorted term when you think about what a transect should be, a downtown going out with gentle slopes. So, and not a downtown that's defined as half, a big chunk of the city. So thank you, I think I've got 32, oh, I can see my seconds. But anyway, I really appreciate you listening to us. I think it's very important that the citizens be listened to. I know that committees were thrown out. I was able to participate in city government very actively, and now, after a certain person was in office or manager, they all disappeared. All the citizens' input disappeared. So you're stuck with everything. You don't have a filter where citizens go through and look at it and talk about it before it gets to you because it's you and staff.
Thank you very much.
So, thank you very much.
All right, Adam, back to you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Doreen Pofala. Doreen, three minutes. Doreen, you out there?
Yes.
All righty, you've got three minutes.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear. Sorry, sorry, sorry. I, it's crazy, but I am totally confused with what the mayor was saying. A yes is a no and a no is a yes. Things should be a little bit more simpler, I would think, for people that are not knowing exactly what you're trying to do. And it sounds like this might have, should have been a workshop or something like this. And my only question would be, Commissioners, is when you're building these things, are they local builders or are they out of town or out-of-state builders? Thank you for your time. Bye.
Thank you, Doreen. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Cindy Gordon?
Welcome back.
Well, first of all, since so many excellent, more knowledgeable people have already spoken, I can keep my remarks short. First of all, I would like to acknowledge and thank Desmond Walker, the commissioner who started off this morning by recognizing that there had been a technical problem with the interactive map and that some people who are very knowledgeable on these issues were having trouble being able to work it. And Ms. Walker requested that this item be just rescheduled or thrown off the agenda for today. She's a commissioner who actually listens to the people, and I thank you for that. Also, this is another example of this commission perpetually listening to the developers instead of the people. It seems to me that the, it appears anyway, that the procedure for designing Gainesville is that the developers take the idea to the staff, who then takes it to the commission, who then volleys it around and sees what they can do to make the developers happy, and that the community is only listened to in a very ancillary cursory way. That needs to change. I appreciate Ward's motion to table this and bring it back for a later day, preferably because this transect zoning opens the door to spot zoning and increased density that would tax the infrastructure that provides no transit plan and that does not guarantee affordability. In fact, by a long shot, transit zones, transect zones in other towns have shown that rents increase within the transect zone and adjacent areas. So this provides nothing that the city needs. Ideally, it should be scrapped today, here and now. If not, please run it back to staff. Please break it out again later with workshops. And by workshops, I don't mean a dog and pony show where the developer comes with an infomercial to the citizens and has them look at that, but a genuine workshop where we tap on some of the expertise that exists at UF, that exists in the community, that exists in this room today. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Adam, do you have anybody else?
Yes, I do, sir. The next in the queue is Sharon Bauer. Sharon, three minutes.
My turn?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I laugh every time Armando calls me racist for saying that I live in East Gainesville and that there are two East Gainesvilles. Because he's a newcomer, and I've lived here since 1966 and have won awards from the Library and the Matheson for my historical research. I want to, I too want to thank the three managers, the three, I'm sorry, Commissioners who voted against this last time. And like Tana, I spent many hours in meetings back when we had a city manager, a professional city manager, a credentialed, experienced city manager who valued citizen input. There is a reason for the minimum, and if you don't get that, well, that's on you. I don't know if you're reading the letters to the editor in The Sun or if you're just reading their editorials, their pro-development editorials that praise you, but from the letters, it's pretty apparent that people are mad as hell and they're not going to take it anymore. And so we were kind of sure that Commissioner Ward would change his vote today. We did not expect him to say he was changing it because we're ignorant and we don't understand what a transect is. Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
Jim Tanser?
I need my glasses. I'm hoping that we can have, thank you. Thank you, first Commissioner Ward for reconsidering. I want to use my three minutes to explain in the briefest terms I can what a transect is and why it's important that you understand that before moving forward. From this model code by the Congress for New Urbanism, this is a natural transect, and that's the model that they use to model urban design as well. You see, it goes through a transition over space, across space. In the New Urban Code, this is a cross-section of a generic city going from natural to rural to the most urban, which in the New Urban Code is no more than eight acres, eight stories high in any case, and only in the most dense cities. This is the, and every city in a New Urban zoned, every portion of a New Urban zoned city has these transects. It's not, I think one of the problems we're having is everyone, or many people seem to be focusing on just this one, but all of these transects should be in a zone, in a city that's zoned for new urbanism. Also, from the transect, the model code, they cite, just as an aside, that typically only large towns and cities have urban core zones, which would be as many as eight stories. They don't mention more than eight stories in any code. The model code also points out here that in this most urban area, you would have only eight stories maximum. This is our zoning code. You can see that we have nine urban transects plus downtown, 10, whereas in the model code, there are only three urban transect zones. So we have greatly expanded from the CNU model code. This is our own code, and just as an example, you'll see that the art is similar. That's because CNU urges that people take the art out of the model code and apply it here. This is the city of Miami, which models the urban code. You'll see that every single part of the city is in one of the transects, and the densest is this purple, whereas the least dense is here. You never see any of this little purple in here. That's what we're trying to do with, with the zoning requirement that you're voting against today. The map I tried to create was a similar map of Gainesville. The map I tried to create was a similar map of Gainesville. The Miami map came up in less than five seconds. This one never came up for me. But what you can see is that the city of Gainesville is only looking at the very densest kind of zoning, which is incorrect. That's not how transect zoning works. A transect, everything is in a transect, and what we have here in Gainesville is not working that way. If you were to pass this today, a random parcel of less than ten acres is spot zoning. It has absolutely nothing to do with the way transects work.
Thanks, Ms. Tanser. Appreciate it.
And I would be happy to talk with you all at detail about it. It's not a three-minute discussion.
Thank you very much. Uh, Adam, do you have anybody else on the line?
I do, I have at least two people, sir. Uh, the first of which is Monica Cooper. Monica, you've got three minutes. Hey, Monica, you out there?
Oh, Monica Cooper, that's, yes. My name didn't come up, um, on my phone. Yes, hello, this is Monica Cooper. I think that the speakers today have been so excellent explaining why you should vote against two zero zero eight seven seven. And I agree that I would rather it not be sent back to the Plan Board, because from what I'm seeing, this is spot zoning, which is what we don't want in Gainesville. So please vote against it, scrap it. Um, we need more time. I feel like you guys are, probably have a hard time sitting there, listening to the speakers, because everybody is so extremely frustrated with the speed at which you are trying to change our city. And I wish that you would take everybody's advice to slow down. Planning is a process. It involves public workshops, input from regional and national experts, the public being invited. That's how we'll cre, create the Gainesville that we want. And, and I think that you can agree that the size of a plan directly correlates to the time needed to make that plan. And you need to look at the ripple effect of your actions if you do approve this. Um, I would like for you to, uh, look at the fact that it would be really great to be a commissioner who had the humility and the, uh, maturity to realize that maybe you don't know enough to make such a huge impactful decision. Uh, and we would really thank you for that, and that will give you some time to really learn about what this is. I think right now, you don't know what you voted for last time, the commissioners who voted for this. Um, please vote against two zero zero eight seven seven. These speakers are fantastic. They're also extremely frustrated. Don't send it back to the Plan Board. Listen to your citizens. We voted for you. You work for us, not the developers. Um, you're elected officials to represent us, the citizens of Gainesville. So I was on the DRB for seven years myself. I know how things used to be run in Gainesville, and I would really just urge you to slow down. Vote no. Thank you so much. Bye.
Thanks, Madam Clerk.
Next speaker, please.
Robert Mount.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mount, if you could lift that mic up a little, just so folks at home can hear you.
Yeah, I'm gonna put this down for the overhead. I'm not sure, I show up.
Oh, he'll get you.
It's, yeah, there we go. Uh, I first encountered the issue of spot zoning as a law student over fifty years ago at the University of Florida, when the law school was right across the street from the standard and the, what became the gas station. You know, the SAE fraternity sold their house because with, due to the spot zoning rezoning, the value is at least ten times more, and, uh, they sold it to American Oil Company for a gas station, which we've lived with this, in this community for many, many years. So that was spot zoning, that was well before comprehensive planning. But what we have in the comprehensive plan, and this goes back several years, there was a staff report, for example, in twenty fourteen, which among other things said, "There are areas around downtown that are appropriate for higher density and intensity development, and this is reflected by the existing zoning and by the proposed," which was then eight transect zones. At the same time, there are many nearby single-family neighborhoods and historic districts that should continue to be protected by the city's land use, zoning, and development regulations. Therefore, compatibility between those neighborhoods and adjacent high-density and intensity development needs to be addressed within the new land development code. Well, they did that in the criteria for rezoning. And my view is that although this was presented as a, as a package to the Plan Board with proposals to, for downtown zoning for the stringfellow properties, if they had followed all of the, uh, criteria, they might not have approved that. You know, among them, I'll have to read it. "Compatibility of permitted uses and allowed intensity and density with surrounding existing development, the character of the district, and the suitability for particular uses. The proposed zoning district of the property in relation to surrounding properties and other similar properties. And more importantly, down below, the proposed T-zone shall provide a logical extension of an existing zone or an adequate transition between zones." I don't think those running for mayor want to be defined by their vote on spot zoning, but that's exactly what this is on a grand scale. Please vote no against the ordinance.
Hey, Adam, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Doesn't look like there's anybody else in the queue right now.
Okay, thank you, Adam. Uh, Madam Clerk?
Paula Stamer.
Hey, Paula, if you'll just give us a moment. Ms. Molden will clean the area. Or not? Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you for letting us speak. I am opposed to the proposed ordinance, which would remove the ten-acre requirement. I'm not opposed to you moving this along, either kill it or send it back to the Plan Board. That's fine. But don't approve it, please. This proposal could have devastating effects on Gainesville and utterly change our tree city to asphalt wasteland. There's been very little public vetting on this, proportionate to the scope, potentially, of what kinds of changes could be implemented. And it seems minimal effort has been made to explain to the community the rationale for this sweeping change, a change that is antithetical to the city's history of sensitivity to the goals of careful and responsible urban planning. It also seems like a breach of faith from the commission to your constituents in a town that has traditionally taken an appropriate amount of time to consider any kind of zoning or land use changes on this scale. We've really not had the time to thrash out the pros and cons, and I don't doubt that i- in some areas, there may be, uh, positive reasons for, uh, allowing the kind of change that's being contemplated here. But there's been a lot of rhetoric, but precious little substantive evidence to warrant this ordinance. What's the imminent necessity? What about the potential adverse impacts on existing neighborhoods and our infrastructure, especially water and power? We already have overbuilt the city with rental properties, anyway. Supposedly, um, the vacancy rate is about seventeen percent. What are the expectations that you see that would, um, accommodate this kind of change? Are we going to have empty buildings because the population doesn't rise as quickly? As I understand it, UF, and I don't know about Santa Fe, have been talking about limiting, uh, the size of incoming classes. So we may not have, uh, the kind of residency that would support, that would fill up this sort of building, um, and wouldn't, um, be able to service any commercial activity that was initiated because of it. Most importantly, we haven't had-
Thank you, Ms. Stamer. I'm afraid your time has expired.
Oh, excuse me. Send it back or kill it, please.
Thank you very much. Um, Madam Clerk, do you have anybody else?
I believe that's everyone we have, unless Lee Malice or Malice is still here.
Yeah, Lee Malice.
Lee, you out in the lobby? Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I have two more callers.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Adam.
Okay, next one up is Ms. Norma Green. Norma, three minutes.
Good afternoon. I'm calling to ask you to vote no on ordinance two zero zero eight seven seven. We don't need, for example, a fourteen-story apartment building in a single-home community. Split zoning is damaging to the city, to Gainesville. Consistency in city planning is important. Community, the community has clearly stated their opposition. Listen to the public, to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Norma. Uh, Mr. Mayor, should I take the next call?
Please do.
All righty. Dave Williams, you have three minutes.
Consistency in city planning is important.
Ms. Williams, can you turn down the volume on your streaming?
We have clearly stated our position. Consistency in development to our community. Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Good, good afternoon, Ms. Williams. Please shut your, um, streaming down, please.
Yes, good afternoon. I was there earlier, but I had some eye problems in my eyes, so I had to come home. I have been calling in because I'm concerned about what's happening with our city. Okay, is that better?
Yes, ma'am. Um, go ahead, you've got three minutes. Go, go ahead, Ms. Williams, you have three minutes.
Like I said, I was there earlier, but I had some eye problems because of the light, so I had to come back home. But I'm calling in because I'm really concerned about what's happening with our city. And I want to thank Harvey Ward for, uh, changing his vote, changing his mind and changing his vote. And I know that, because you're running for mayor, uh, I thank you for changing your mind that I will not vote for you as mayor. Um, I'm not encouraging anybody to vote for you for mayor. Uh, I'm also calling in to say thank you to, um, Commissioner, uh, Desmond Duncan Walker and Eppards Commissioner Cynthia Chestnut for, um, standing up and making it real clear. Sometimes people forget. Sometimes people forget. Sometimes people forget. I have the folks in the Vades and in Portis Quarters and living in Duval. You all at this point seem to keep us in mind, and we really do appreciate that. Uh, I'm also suggesting that we not send that back to the Plan Board, not send it back to the Plan Board, not send it back to the Plan Board. And I'm not saying bring it back, I'm saying kill it. Kill it, kill it. That means we should not come back to the city commissioners. Um, the other thing I wanted to say was to thank all the people who came to the meetings and sent emails, made phone calls, um, you know, because they too are really concerned about what's happening in the city right now. They see it, sometimes they don't understand. And I think if we had more workshops, if we had city commissioners who would really listen to us and follow our instructions instead of developers' instructions, this would be a really, really beautiful city to live in. So I really just want to thank the social justice activists, the people in the community who really want to see progress, and they represent the community, they do not represent the developers.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Thanks for calling in. Appreciate you got, got a chance to talk.
I think we're out of time.
And we need to be done a different way.
Adam, do you have anybody else on the line?
Two more people, they keep coming. Um, Rachel Iannelli, Ms. Iannelli, you have three minutes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Sure can.
I'm here for Rachel Iannelli. Thanks for, thanks for having me again. I'm getting my three hundred dollars worth of two phone calls to the commission. Excellent. Sorry, Armando, I might speak fast. I, my apologies, I had a time. I wanted to, um, remind people that at the special meeting on the twenty-second, Commissioner Ward hinted at the inevitability of unwanted development. Um, there was about, that's a three-hour march. We were saying that he was in favor of U-seven zoning on South Main Depot Park, Howard District area, um, and that is two hundred and ninety residents per four-point-two acres, uh, with up to six stories. I, I have a problem with that. Meanwhile, in contrast, um, just another example of, of just this sort of schizophrenic nature of, of the development in Gainesville, the Kennedy Homes, a fifteen-acre site that had two hundred and seventy units on it of affordable housing, stolen from us, was replaced with thirty-three units that, it's now called Hartwood, that are going for about three hundred thousand dollars a pop. Um, clearly, Commissioner Ward and, and others are recklessly in favor of this piecemeal upzoning that's untethered from community input and the evolution of the overarching vision that transects allow for, okay? Do not send this back to the Plan Board. Kill this touch change now. We have four ringed-up commissioners sitting here right now attempting to make sweeping changes to the land development code. We may ask ourselves, why? It's a logical question. Why? Why now? What are you doing? We are watching you, okay? Thank you for listening.
Thank you. You, next caller up is Kristi Anashaw. Kristi, you have three minutes.
Hello, Commissioners. I'm Kristi Anashaw, a forty-nine-year resident of Gainesville, Florida. I think it would be extremely wise of you to send this project back to the Planning Board for reconsideration. Take time to make a plan to fully inform yourselves and your community. You are obligated to your voters, taxpayers, and neighbors to make sure that they are fully informed so they, that they can make an informed decision and be able to advise you so you can vote on behalf of your citizens and not others who might wish to develop this city in a manner that the vast majority of your neighbors would not appreciate. Thank you. Goodbye.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. Mr. Mayor, I think that was our last caller.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, did you have anybody else? All right, uh, thank you all for sharing your comments and thoughts with us. We'll move back to the commission. Commissioner Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll try to be, uh, brief. I'll point out a couple of things. Uh, first of all, I, I heard, and I don't remember who it was, and I'm sorry, um, someone uh, referred to a concern a- about downtown zoning going all the way to Sixteenth Avenue. That's not the case. Right now, uh, south of Depot, between Depot and Sixteenth, is, um, is industrial in, in south of downtown, which is, I swear it is. That, that's what we were talking about changing last week. Um, it's, and I don't think anybody wants the future of that chunk of our city to be industrial. I, I could be wrong, but nobody is ever going to be upset, "I love these warehouses." Now, people have come and said, "We need to have a different place for these uses and, and make a different, have a different plan for what's going on in, in that area over the next couple of decades." And that's something that I'm going to bring up at the, the next commission meeting, as discussed earlier. Um, I would point out that sending this back to the Plan Board does not guarantee that it comes, that when it gets considered there. I think a logical thing to do would be to consider it with other changes to the land development code that, that the Plan Board will be considering in the next few months. I think that would be, would make sense to- I think that would be, would make sense to consider a number of things together. And again, separate from zoning petitions and land use petitions. So that it's just a, we're talking about policy at that point and only about policy. And I really appreciate a lot of the conversation here this afternoon that has been removed from some of the heat that sometimes comes with these discussions. And I think, again, removing it from the concern of a particular piece of development makes that easier. We can talk about it in a, for what it is, instead of what it might do. Not that we shouldn't know about what it might do, but so that we're not making a decision, a policy decision, based on one item at a time. Really like us to think about policy as what we're trying to achieve instead of we're going to stop this one thing or we're going to let this one thing happen. Anyway, thank you all for bearing with us this afternoon, and thank you all for your comments. I appreciate it.
All right. So we have motion on the floor to deny the ordinance on second reading and refer this back to the City Plan Board for further discussion and analysis, including a significant public engagement and outreach effort on our part. Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote.
Commissioner Sacco?
No.
Commissioner Chestnut?
Yep.
Commissioner Duncan Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Aye.
Commissioner Ariola?
Aye.
Commissioner Jose Santos?
Aye.
Mayor Poe?
Aye. That motion passes five...
Five-two.
Five-two, if I'm correct? Okay, thank you. So thank you all for participating in discussion. Stay tuned, as they say. We are going to go ahead and go into recess. We will reconvene at 5:45. Good evening. Welcome back, everybody. This is the evening portion of our regular City Commission meeting, March 3, 2022. We'll call back to order, and our first order of business this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance. So please stand if you're willing and able for our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and please be seated. All right, Madam Clerk, let's go and start with the item that we didn't get to this afternoon.
Okay. So not early public comment?
Oh. Yeah, let's go. Yeah, we can start with early public comment. That's fine. Yep.
Early public comment.
Okay, nobody in the chamber here for early public comment, I presume? You're welcome to, gentlemen. Every much the same right as every other citizen. Okay, Adam, do you have anybody on the line for early public comment for the evening portion of our agenda?
Part three. No, there is nobody on the line at this time, but I'll read the number. 1-800-742-1099. Give it a couple more minutes, and then we'll move on to other. 1-800-742-1099.
Thank you. And per Ms. Beatty's request, I will just give this another hot second. So, Adam, I'm a social vegan. We were talking about veganism at dinner. I'm a social vegan. I am avoiding meats.
I won't tell you what the protein is in my salad.
I'm a social vegan. I'm avoiding meats.
The protein in my salad does not come along.
Okay, if anybody was on the line, they're gone now.
Well, no, no, you're right. You have a couple of people on the line and being screened, so bear with me.
Okay, sure, thanks.
Something out of this, yeah.
Yeah, so again, this is for early public comment.
I've got Bethany with me in the evening, and she is already busy. All right, we do have at least one. Debbie Martinez, you are first up, and you have three minutes. Debbie, welcome back.
Yes, thank you. I tried to call in earlier, and for some reason, your folks said you're in the queue or whatever you call it to turn down your device, which I always turn down my device before I call in, but then I never got called. So I was calling on the item about the high-rise development and the transect, you know, the zoning changes. And my comment was just to kill it. Don't send it back to the Plan Board because this Commission for over four years have put citizens through holy hell. And you're just putting them, you're just trying to kick the can down the election road to the, you know, to the next election. And that's just making the citizens, our residents, suffer that much more. So that's why I was calling, and that's what, that's my comment today, is stop, you know, kicking the inevitable down the, you know, election road and just kill it. Don't keep taking it back to the Plan Board. It's as though you're trying to wear these citizens out. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie. We've got a couple more people being screened right now. Bear with me, Mr. Mayor.
And Adam, if we can just remind the screeners to make sure that it's for one of our items on the evening's agenda, early public comment.
I just typed Bethany a quick note, and hopefully that issue won't arise again. All righty. Our other folks are for SR1, so I think we are good to go. Proceed, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. So, Madam Clerk?
Our next item is going back to FR1. Item 200731, text change, amending the land development code relating to the right-of-way vacations. Ordinance number 200731, an ordinance of the City of Gainesville, Florida, amending the land development code, Chapter 30 of the City of Gainesville Code of Ordinances, relating to vacating city right-of-way by amending Section 30-3.41, right-of-way vacations, providing directions to the codifier, providing a severability clause, providing a repealing clause, and providing an effective date.
Okay, thank you. Is that Ms. McMullen I see?
You're muted.
Yeah, we are. We see your efforting.
Mr. Mayor, if Ms. McMullen can unmute herself, I can share the presentation if she's having trouble with the screen sharing.
Okay, yeah. Ms. McMullen, if you want the clerk to share your screen, she can do so. So just you can give us a thumbs up or... Oh, there you go. The checker at the grocery store asked me if I wanted my milk in a bag. I told her to leave it in the carton. I want it in the bag. I want it in the carton.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, everybody. I think that's funny. So I apologize for laughing.
Well, you have a better... All right, welcome.
Sorry about that. My computer was frozen, so I was sitting there trying to type to the clerk like, oh, my computer's frozen. But yes, if the clerk wouldn't mind sharing the presentation, it just seems to be causing issues on my end for some reason.
Sure thing.
Thank you so much. All right, so good evening, everyone. So sorry for the delay there. Again, my name is Brittany McMullen. I'm a planner with the Department of Sustainable Development. So this amendment to the land development code was initiated by the City Commission in conjunction with the City Plan Board to address review criteria when considering the vacation of rights-of-way. Next slide, please. So when we talk about vacating right-of-way, what we mean is that there's a platted street or alley that was drawn in or platted at the time that an area was being planned for development. And when it's vacated, properties on either side of the street or alley get back, so to speak, that area of the street. So just trying to further explain what that terminology is. I know it's not very straightforward to talk about vacating rights-of-way. So there are many instances where the vacation of right-of-way is appropriate, including the cases where the street or alley was never actually developed. So right-of-way vacations or street vacations are reviewed by staff as well as the City Plan Board, and they're ultimately approved by the City Commission. So there are review criteria that the Commission and staff in the Plan Board are asked to look at when reviewing these requests. So the key issues with this change that you're looking at now are addressing the criteria for projects which do not include commercial uses, addressing criteria for single-family properties to vacate what we sometimes refer to as paper streets or alleys, which are those that were never actually constructed but were platted at the time that the lots were platted. This can present issues for neighboring properties, particularly single-family homes and homeowners that have to maintain these rights-of-way that never got developed. But for instance, cannot extend their fence to include these areas, so it can be hard to access at times. And lastly, the last issue this deals with here is addressing the idea of requiring payment for the vacation of rights-of-way. So next slide, please. So here we have the text that is proposed to be changed. The new text is underlined for you here. The first change addresses an issue that's been present with requested right-of-way vacations that are not related to new high-density mixed-use development. So as I mentioned, there are other situations in which a right-of-way would need to be vacated, and the existing language in the code has been problematic for approving those. So this new language clarifies that the specific review criteria in Number 2C applies to improved streets that are a budding property located within the U-4 through U-9 transect zones or any property in a mixed-use district. This makes sense because of the criteria specifically asks if the vacation is to support a new mixed-use, high-density development. And I would like to add that this language specifically on the U-4 through U-9 transect zones and mixed-use zoning was added by the City Plan Board when they reviewed this text change. So let's see. The next change deals with the addition of the word "improved" for an improved street. So it's also important here because it eliminates the issue with undeveloped or paper streets, as I mentioned before, that's been occurring adjacent to single-family homes and things of that nature. We've also seen examples of rights-of-way located within and adjacent to city parks, for example, that were platted but were never developed and have a need to be vacated so that the land may be used for different purposes. So lastly, we were asked to look into the possibility of applicants paying for city... Or paying the city for vacated rights-of-way. So in working with the legal department, we did determine that there is a possibility for the city to obtain payment for vacated rights-of-way in addition to requiring the applicant to relocate or paying the cost to relocate the public facilities, infrastructure, and utilities that are located within that vacated right-of-way. So this language was added in at the Plan Board level as well and is suggested for your review and approval this evening. So I know this is all a little bit technical, and I'd be happy to show you an example of what a platted alley looks like on paper, if you're interested. It's not all that exciting to look at, but if a visual might help, I may be able to do that if my computer complies with me tonight. So I also wanted to note that this text change requires a change to existing language in the comprehensive plan. So that's on your agenda this evening as well. And that language basically mirrors what this code language says here, aside from the cost payment item, which would just exist in the land development code. So next slide, that concludes my presentation. Staff in the City Plan Board do recommend approval of this change, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you, Ms. McMullen. I appreciate that. Over to Commissioner Sacco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. McMullen, do you want to try the visual demonstration?
I'm sure. I mean, it's not so much of a demonstration as just as, it just shows you on the map sort of what a plat looks like and what a platted alley looks like. But yeah, let me give that a try and see.
If you can, it's helpful. If you can't, it's okay.
Okay. Let me see here. I had all of the maps pulled up and ready, of course, and then my computer froze.
It's fine, Ms. McMullen. You're fine. It's okay.
And well, in the meantime, while you're talking, I'll see what I can do to pull it up.
Oh, I was going to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move ordinance Number 200731 on first reading by title only.
Is there a second? Motion second that we adopt the proposed ordinance on first reading by title only, seeing no further lights. Adam, we don't have anybody here to speak in chambers, and so I will turn it over to you.
We have somebody in screening right now. For those who are listening and do not have the number at their fingertips, the number is 1-800-742-1099. And just on tracking, this is SR1. This is not SR1. This is first reading.
Yeah, FR1. This was left over from this afternoon's agenda.
That's what I thought. The current caller is here to speak on SR1. I think we're okay to proceed.
Okay, very good. So, Madam Clerk, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Sacco?
Aye.
Commissioner Jose Santos?
Aye.
Commissioner Ward?
Aye.
Commissioner Ariola?
Aye.
Commissioner Chestnut?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan Walker?
Aye.
Mayor Poe?
Aye. That motion passes unanimously. Next item, please.
Our next item is SR1 210331, quasi-judicial rezoning of 5.89 acres of property located on the 3,041 through 3,155 block of Old Archer Road. Ordinance Number 210331, an ordinance of the City of Gainesville, Florida, amending the zoning map atlas by rezoning approximately 5.89 acres of property generally located in the 3,041 through 3,155 block of Old Archer Road, as more specifically described in this ordinance, from mixed-use low-density and residential multifamily to planned development, providing land development regulations, providing directions to the city manager, providing a severability clause, providing a repealing clause, and providing an effective date.
Okay, this is the second reading of this proposed ordinance. Commissioner Jose Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. I move ordinance 210331 on second reading by title only.
Motion second to adopt the proposed ordinance. Adam, it's over to you.
Sure. And this issue and code number is?
SR1.
That's what I know. Okay. With that, Tana Silva, you have the floor in three minutes.
All right, thank you. Real quick, I want to point out that Gary Gordon was correct this afternoon in saying that the agenda was changed after Monday night, so broadband discussion replaced transect zones as the first item after 1:00 p.m. I just wanted to point that out. Archer Place PUD, again, practically all the questions that I had remain. First, the environmental traffic and stormwater impacts appear to be overlooked or understated. Almost six acres of trees will be clear-cut except for one on the backside. Twelve houses and duplexes will be demolished, and the property will be covered with concrete and asphalt, adding to stormwater runoff. Twenty-two hundred and forty daily car trips will add to the worst intersection in town. And as far as the housing, that still, I'm still very, have no answers yet about how that's all going to work. And it's important to get this template right if the city enters agreements of this type and to do structural analysis of needs, cost, duration, potential benefits, and so forth. So this goes back to discrepancies between the ordinance and the binding agreement for 10%, or it's not really 10%, it's really 5% if you count the net of demolishing 12 houses. So the ordinance says one thing, and the binding agreement that's in the backup material says another about, you know, whether it's, the binding agreement says that, you know, that within 60 days of vacancy being noticed to the agencies, the owner developer will be permitted to fill vacant units with market rate tenants. And the ordinance says something else, that if the property is demolished or the usage is no longer residential. So there's that. And my earlier questions remain too, about who is going to pay home for the screening and other administrative expenses? And how much is that anticipated to cost? And would the city pay, in this case, the Latchell Housing Authority to do that? Indefinitely. And again, housing specialists have determined that 80% area median income is not where the need is, and going lower requires deep subsidies, and the impact on overall housing is minimal if not negative, while taking resources for more effective efforts. Again, this is probably going to be leased by the bedroom, and so that throws another wrench into the whole equation of providing so-called affordable units. And I just want to say that really, I haven't gotten any answers on any of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Tana. That is our last call on this issue.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there any further questions? Not, we can move to a roll call vote.
Commissioner Ward?
Aye.
Commissioner Chestnut?
Aye.
Commissioner Sacco?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan Walker?
Nay.
Commissioner Areola?
Aye.
Commissioner Hey Santos?
Aye.
Mayor Poe?
Aye. That motion passes 6-1 with Duncan Walker in dissent. Next item, please.
Next item is 200727, ordinance text change to the city's land development code to allow agricultural uses within certain zoning districts. Ordinance number 200727. An ordinance of the City of Gainesville, Florida amending the land development code, Chapter 30 of the City of Gainesville Code of Ordnances, by adding subsistence gardens and urban market farms as permitted uses in certain zoning districts with associated regulations, by amending Section 30-2.1 definitions, by amending Section 30-4.12 permitted uses, by amending Section 30-4.16 permitted uses, by amending Section 30-4.19 permitted uses, by amending Section 30-4.23 permitted uses, by adding Section 30-5.3 urban agriculture to provide associated regulations, providing directions to the codifier, providing a separability clause, providing a repealing clause, and providing an effective date.
Okay, thank you. What do we have with us for this presentation?
All right, we're going to try this again. This is Brittany McMullin again. Can you see my screen?
We see it trying to share. It's black with some words on it.
Oh. Oh, goodness. If the clerk wouldn't mind just pulling it up again, sorry about that.
Sure.
It looked like it was sharing on my end, but apparently still not working. Well, so while that's happening, good evening again, everyone. Brittany McMullin here. We also have Carissa Raskin on the line with us, who has worked on this ordinance as well. This has actually been presented to you before, last year, as a public hearing. And so the commission did provide direction to move forward with this request. And so the city attorney's office has drafted the ordinance, and it is back for first reading tonight. So if you want to go ahead and go to the second slide, Carissa, Ms. Raskin may have a few things to say about the public participation process here with this ordinance. It did have a lot of public participation upfront before it was even brought to the plan board. So Ms. Raskin can inform us on that, and then I can get into the details of the ordinance language.
Wonderful. Ms. Raskin, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and city commissioners. Carissa Raskin, Civic Cooperation Supervisor for the Department of Strategy Planning and Innovation. And as Brittany said, yes, this ordinance had a hefty amount of public participation. It actually was originated by an idea from community members several years ago. I don't even recall the date at this point. It was many years ago. And this is something that has actually had law students from the University of Florida's Environmental Law Clinic work on over the years, and members of our community participate with staff in drafting and revising it. The city also put out a survey to formally solicit feedback on a drafted ordinance. And as you'll see on the bottom right-hand corner of the screen, and if you should choose to, you can click on links to go through what was a website's actually created to have community members have the opportunity to see the various drafts of the ordinance as survey information was coming back in about changes and feedback that community members would like to see. And staff took time and adjudicated comments to every single point of feedback that we received to ensure that this was created as inclusively and holistically as possible. And those comments are really what allowed us to create the amended or revised version of the ordinance, which, as Ms. McMullin said, the attorneys have now put into formal language. So on a staff level, we were pretty proud of this process, and it certainly was a lengthy one, but we believe that it did right by our community. So I was happy to share that information with you and happy to take any questions if there are any.
Thank you for all the effort, Ms. Raskin. I really appreciate it.
Of course.
Yeah, thanks so much, Ms. Raskin. So if you go on to the next slide, we'll start to see the text that is being proposed to be incorporated into the code. So it's slightly different, but with the same type of content that you saw last time. But in writing the ordinance, we were able to sort of simplify the categories that we're proposing here. So these show the definitions of the two categories of uses that would be proposed. Those would be urban market farm and subsistence garden. So starting with the smaller of the two uses, the subsistence garden would be land used for the cultivation of fruits, vegetables, plants, flowers, herbs, or fowl by an individual, organization, business, with the primary purpose of growing the products for consumption or donation, and would not involve the sale of the products. So this would include community gardens, accessory gardens, and education gardens. The urban market farm, by contrast, would be a larger type of category of use which could be involved with the direct-to-consumer sale or wholesale of the items that are grown. This category also contains the option to have chickens on the property with specific requirements for acreage sizes. And so, for example, the language that we came up with with the city attorney's office was that properties at one-half an acre or greater could keep up to 10 chickens for the first one-half acre, with two more chickens for each additional one-half acre, up to a maximum of 24 chickens. So math calculation for you there. And with additional code requirements to regulate that, the use of the chickens on the property. So next slide, please. So overall, this is a look at the categories, the different zoning districts that we have in the city, and what uses would be permitted based on those two definitions that we just talked about. So sort of to summarize, in all of the zoning districts, subsistence gardens would be permitted everywhere, basically. Urban market farms at less than five acres would be permitted in all of the districts as well. Once you get to urban market farms that are five acres or greater, that would require a special use permit, and that process requires going before the city plan board and getting approval for that particular property for that particular use. Next slide, please. So this shows you the outline of the specific use regulations that would go along with these uses. So while we do think it's a good idea to introduce these uses into zoning districts, we would also suggest placing specific use criteria, you know, to sort of moderate the use and be sure that any negatives that might come about from it for neighboring properties would be addressed. So in general standards, like I mentioned, a special use permit would be required for a market farm exceeding five acres in size. The use may be the principal use on the property, or it could be an accessory use as well. Applicable design standards would regulate the design and operation of the urban agricultural use. And so this would be regulated by the zoning district. So this includes provisions for setbacks, gates, fences, walls, signs, parking, and stormwater. It also specifies structures for growing food must not be made of tires, appliances, railroad tires, or railroad ties, sorry, or pressure-treated lumber manufactured prior to 2004. Adequate handwashing facilities must be made and available. The property owner must provide the city with the contact information of the designated manager of the property in case maintenance issues do arise. And lastly, for the maintenance standards, the equipment shouldn't be, should be secured and not be visible from the public right-of-way. Specifics for managing compost and trash. And operations may not include practices that violate existing city code on mosquito breeding grounds. So next slide, please. So with all that said, staff recommends approval of the proposed text change to the city's land development code to allow agricultural uses within the various zoning districts. As I mentioned, this has gone through the plan board process as well as a prior city commission public hearing. And as Ms. Raskin mentioned, it's gone through quite a bit of public participation as well, and happy to finally present to you for first reading this evening, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you both so much for getting us to this point. Commissioner Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. Does this allow aqua farming as well, or is that part of it?
I don't believe so, as the definition talks about, let's see, the growing of fruits, vegetables, plants, flowers, herbs, or fowl. So I don't believe it addresses that.
I mean, that is something that doesn't, is usually not too intrusive. Something I'd like, if you all to consider, at least come and looking at it from first reading to second reading. I don't know, as a commission, but that's something that I don't think has a huge impact on the area that's something to look at. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Sacco?
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Commissioner Hey Santos, to your point, I think in terms of design standards, in, you know, we're saying what's prohibited, we're saying what could be allowed, to stress that that style of agriculture could be allowed. And I've been to quite a few of those farms. They're a lot in the smallest space humanly possible, and it's amazing. So I'd be in support of adding that. I do have one question, and it's a question that's come up recently in my engagement with our neighbors. So I know that in our code, fowl means hens exclusively. However, hen applies to any number of our poultry friends. Is there a way to, and I bring it up because I see it here, is there a way to reword that, to make it clearer that we mean exclusively chicken hens? There tends to be some confusion about that at times. And I don't know if that's a Mr. Persons or...
Yes, it's a good question. I don't know if maybe, did that come up in the conversation at all, Ms. Raskin, with the conversation of fowl, or I'm wondering if maybe Mr. Persons may know?
It didn't come up in the conversations, because we were advised by the city attorney to refer to the language that's already in the code, which there is a specific ordinance around allowance for chickens, and they use the language "fowl," so I think we were just utilizing the language that's already in the code. But I would not be the person to ask about making that type of change.
So I ask because Ms. Raskin's right, there is later a prohibition, and it says which ones are not. But when you're just looking at what's allowed, it says hen. It doesn't tell you what type of hen.
Right.
So you have to then, like, go all the way to prohibited to see it. And I was wondering if there's a way, while we're on the topic, to make that clearer.
Yes, I believe we probably could. The only question is whether or not the title is inclusive of that section, and whether we would have to re-advertise for that change.
Is that his question, Mr. Attorney? If we try to change that definition to make it clearer, just in the definitions portion, do we have to re-advertise the whole thing?
Your title stays the same. You're just trying to define the definition of hen, is that what you're saying?
Of fowl and hen, yeah.
The, I think that there's a table in the sort of specially-regulated use section of the code which deals primarily with fowl, livestock, other types of animals. There's an exemption in the city's existing code for residential property where we allow ten chickens, hens only. And the question, I think the clarification is hen can be used generally to refer to a variety of female fowl. The definition of fowl in the city's land development code includes ostriches and ducks and all sorts of other feathered friends. And obviously, it would be a strange interpretation to say, like, female ostriches were okay because they are listed as a foul. I think that's the clarifying language.
I just wanted to be clearer while we're on the topic of agriculture, because I know plenty of people who keep chicken hens.
Right.
But I know that questions have come up of other varieties. I figured while we're on it, if we could. So are we able to make that change without re-advertising?
I don't think that would require re-advertising. The title is saying, and your sounds like the overall tentative content is saying it's up for clarification.
So he says, okay. You guys now will get to figure out how to make that chicken hens.
Right.
And how that looks like. But yeah, and especially as we go out and give this to the community, I don't want them, you know, to say, like, I can have whatever fowl. Like, fowl is allowed. And it's like, no, no, this is what we mean. So just to not overpromise and to make sure we're very clear in what we tell folks. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So what I'm hearing is strike chicken, I mean, strike fowl, add chicken. Right? Right, strike, strike hens and add, or leave hens and probably do a parrot and chickens. Chicken. And then I don't know where aquaculture would be added. We need to find a place to add. This has to come back to second reading. Yeah, that, yeah. Yeah, I think, I think we could probably add aquaculture just to the, within the definition of the market farm. The definition, okay. Thank you. Commissioner Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we adopt ordinance 200727 on first reading by title only with two changes. The first, that we allow aquaculture farming, and second, that we clarify chicken hens.
Motion second. Commissioner Duncan Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, kind of along the same lines as the...
That, um, Commissioner Hey Santos brought up a little earlier. I was wondering if, uh, hydroponics would be an acceptable use underneath this as well. We're since we're gonna go into the idea of, of, what was it, aquafarming?
Yeah.
Uh, hydroponics as well?
Yes, I believe hydroponics would be included in that as well.
Okay, and, and now, since now, it sounds like we're adding specific language. Are we adding aquafarming?
Y- yes, I would recommend, um, if the commission, uh, is good with adding, uh, um, hydroponics and aquafarming, just put it in there so it's, so there's no question.
Thank you. So would the maker of the motion be willing to add?
Be good there?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, add hydroponics as well to that.
Thank you very much.
So, Adam, it's your turn.
Thank you, sir. The phone number for comment is 1-800-742-1099. We do have a caller on FR1. It is Maureen. Maureen, you have three minutes.
Hello, Commissioner Allen. Um, calling to urge you to vote no on this ordinance once again. It has been misrepresented from the very beginning. It wasn't, uh, community, I asked several times. I could never find any community members that were involved in its inception. It came out of the U.S. School of Law, um, and the Department of Doing got together to create this thing. And then it was foisted on a so-called grassroots group, which, um, was headed by the U.S., uh, staffer and a city staffer. And it was, uh, nobody would answer my questions. It took so long for me to get out of them, whether it applied to home gardens or not, which it does not. It was advertised as applying to help people with their home gardens. It doesn't, uh, uh, by state law, it cannot apply to home gardens. And I've asked over and over again, can this apply to timber and forestry? I have never gotten an answer from staff or from you. And commissioners, I want to, an answer to that before you vote on this. And I think that this whole thing, if you look into it, it does not allow anything substantive. It's not allowed now, and it puts many restrictions, uh, which will be burdenful on people who are subsistence gardening. Um, and I just, I'm, I'm floored at how this has been misrepresented all along. And, and, uh, um, and you all know, the ones, you all know this. Uh, so there's a, an agenda behind this thing, and it is not helping food production in our town. And, um, thank you. Uh, please answer, is this gonna apply to forestry and timber? And, uh, if you look at those, those surveys, you'll find that, um, most of the people thought that they, that it was applying to home gardens. And they thought it was gonna somehow help them. Can you say it, ma'am? Hello?
Yeah, you, Maureen, you have a couple more seconds if you want.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, and thanks for, um, for pushing the, um, transect zoning back. And I thank you, uh, Commissioner Duncan Walker and Commissioner Chestnut for, uh, listening to us most of the time and representing. Thank you. Have a good night. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Please vote no.
Can we answer that? Does this apply to, to forestry or silviculture?
No, it does not.
Uh, Ms. McMullin or Mr. Persons?
She said no.
Oh, she said, okay. I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear. Okay, so it does not. Um, do we have any other callers, Adam?
Mr. Mayor, there's nobody else on the line.
Okay, back to Commissioner Duncan Walker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I, I just had a little...
Well, everyone here has been here longer than I have. And so I'm not sure about the history or the context. If you all can give me a little bit of context, because I, I hear the questions and the concerns there. The issue of forestry, the issue of timber. Can someone provide me with a little bit of context? Perhaps that might be Mr. Persons. It sounds like that issue may have come up before. Has that been something that you're familiar with, Mr. Persons?
Or, or maybe Ms. Raskin, too, since she did the public participation.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not as familiar with that issue coming up. I don't know if, if, uh, Ms. Raskin, um, can speak to that.
I am not familiar with the issue of timber and forestry and civic culture coming up. Um, we did receive several, uh, email inquiries from, uh, Ms. Maureen and replied to, to those inquiries, um, in writing several times. Um, but I do not recall specifically the timber and civic culture question.
Okay, so what Ms. Maureen was asking you about, um, Ms. Raskin, could you kind of give me a little bit of context for that? Or just briefly, tell me what her concerns were that you responded to?
It was mostly around the, the home garden question as to whether or not this ordinance would impact individuals' ability to have gardens at their home. Um, and we indicated that, no, we would be preempted by the state statute, and we could not, um, do so. And there were other comments, um, throughout the, the ordinance process. Um, but as I mentioned, we, uh, in the, in the, um, diagram that you see, we adjudicated to all of the comments that were, um, brought forth by community members. So it was mostly around the home gardens, though. I would have to go back and review all of the, all of the email exchanges.
Okay, all right. And could you tell me just a little bit about your community engagement, please?
Sure. So, um, again, this was something that started before my time at the city. Um, and it did, I believe, come, um, from, uh, uh, community members who had partnered with the Levin School of Law, um, several years ago to create a draft. Um, what, what I did, once I, um, kind of took on this project, was we had, uh, the, it is a grassroots group, the, um, Food Systems Coalition, uh, several just community members who are engaged in food systems work, uh, assist staff in drafting it. There were several meetings where they, um, members of that group came to assist staff and give guidance around what would be a helpful modification, um, to what the law students put together. Once we got the draft to a good point, um, it was then created into a survey so that community members had the ability to comment on each and every component of the language in the drafted ordinance. They were able to drill down to line-by-line feedback, or if they wished to provide more general comments. Um, both were, uh, acceptable. We had the survey open for, I believe, over 30 days. We took all of the commentary back. Um, staff sat down and looked at each comment that came in. We, uh, drafted a response to each of them. Many of the comments were utilized and incorporated into a revised version of the draft, which then the commission heard a presentation on, um, last year, as Ms. McMullin had stated. Um, and that was the, the bulk of the engagement process. It was over the course of several months.
Okay, so over the course of several months, survey I heard, um, all right, all right. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just a, a little light on that, maybe. Um, I know in the process, I, I'd seen some emails from one or two folks, including, uh, Ms. Maureen, I think, who, uh, at some point, there was a concern that, that somehow this had been written by or for wirehouser, and that it would allow wirehouses special, some sorts of special privileges for, uh, for, for tree farming. And I have found no evidence of that anywhere in the process. And I will tell you, uh, most folks know I'm no, no friend of wirehouser. So I, I, I checked that out. I, I could find nothing of the sort. Um, and, a, and this has been going on for a very long time to, to get to this point. Um, so there, there have been, my guess is hundreds of people with input to this over the course of, of the past few years, from all over the city. So that, that, that's the extra information I can put out there about the tree farming specifically.
Okay, uh, so thank you. We will, uh, move to a roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Aye.
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Commissioner Sacco?
Aye.
Mayor Poe?
Aye, that motion passes unanimously. Uh, thank you both, Madam Clerk. Next item, please.
Next item is 200732, Ordinance Comprehensive Plan Amendment, Transportation Mobility Element, Ordinance Number 200732. An ordinance of the City of Gainesville, Florida, amending the comprehensive plan of the City of Gainesville by amending transportation element policy 10 dot 2 dot 1 relating to vacating city right-of-way, providing directions to the city manager, providing a separability clause, providing a repealing clause, and providing an effective date.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Santos?
Move ordinance, I assume this is connected to the item beforehand, yeah. Move ordinance 200732 on first reading by title only.
Second.
Second, that we adopt or propose ordinance on first reading. Uh, Adam, I will turn it over to you.
All righty, sir. Um, there is nobody on the line right now. The number is 1-800-742-1099. One's another five seconds left. And we do have somebody calling yet.
So Adam, my friend just got a job in, uh, marketing with Kellogg's, the cereal company. Uh, so I guess you could say his job is, uh, raising brand awareness. He's, he's in, he's in marketing for Kellogg's, so he's raising brand awareness.
The second time in two weeks. So, so last week, I don't know how you knew it was my birthday. I, I honestly don't, and, and I was touched by it. And I'm thinking to myself, Kellogg's, is he gonna go to a place where he knows that my daughter's a food scientist? Fortunately, you didn't, and it was just a dad joke. But, but I was wondering.
We know all.
It's scary sometimes. All righty. Um, it doesn't look like this caller is going to speak on this issue, so the floor is yours.
Okay, uh, Madam Clerk, we will move to a roll call vote.
Sacco?
Aye.
Commissioner Chestnut?
Aye.
Commissioner Ward? Commissioner Hey Santos?
Aye.
Mayor Poe?
Aye, that motion passes unanimously. On to commission comment. Any commission comment?
I just really quickly wanted to acknowledge that, uh, we just celebrated Tony Jones' 20th work, year work anniversary.
Tony Cunningham, I'm sorry. Tony Jones, you passed 20 like 20 years ago. Yeah, there were black and whites on the TV and... Yeah, I think James Brown was topping the charts. But yeah, Tony, congratulations. Uh, we appreciate that you've been with us, uh, for, for that long. You have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, also congratulate Tony. Um, obviously, um, you know, 20 years is just amazing, um, and welcome to the dais. Uh, we have a lot of fun up here.
All right, y'all. Appreciate the good work. Everybody go in peace, and we are adjourned.